...which consume the oxygen that fish and other aquatic life needs to live. Engineered control structures prohibit garbage and floating debris from entering the receiving water body. Officials sometimes have to close our recreational water bodies due to pollutants which cause human health hazards. But engineered stormwater ponds can help remove hazardous pollutants before discharging into our water bodies. Now that you know about these pollutants, please help Manatee County maintain our natural resources by following these tips. Never dump anything down storm drains or into stormwater ponds. Use fertilizers and pesticides sparingly. Properly dispose of pet waste. Control soil erosion by planting over bare spots in landscape. Sweep driveways and sidewalks instead of using a hose to discharge to the street. Properly dispose of yard waste. Properly dispose of hazardous household chemicals. Direct downspouts away from paved surfaces. And check your car for oil leaks. For more information, go to mymanatee.org/stormwater.
Slow down approaching the roundabout. Look for walkers and cyclists at the crosswalks. Look left toward traffic and yield to traffic in the roundabout as they have the right-of-way. Merge into the roundabout. Exit where you want to go by turning right, and don't forget to use your turn signals.
Today is Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, welcoming you to a regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. It is an absolutely beautiful day today in Manatee County, and we always start our meetings by honoring God and by honoring this great nation. So today, from My Gulf Church, we have Pastor Randy Wilkins, who is going to lead us in prayer, and then after which will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Logan Nicholas, who is a retired United States Air Force veteran who has nine years of service. His awards include two Afghanistan Campaign Medals, an Air Force Commendation Medal, and two Air Force Achievement Medals. He was deployed on two tours in Afghanistan. During those tours, he worked in medical facilities, mainly involved with the intake of medevacs and casevacs, medical administration, and in charge of the first handling of killed in action for the United States NATO and non-NATO forces at Bagram Air Force Base, also in Kabul and Jalalabad. He was impressed that I could pronounce all of that, by the way. He worked alongside British Royal Air Force, the Army of Czech Republic, the Georgian Defense Forces, the Australian Army, Afghan National Army. He says that these are the times in the military of his service of which he is the most proud. So we're honored to have him here today. So we'll start with the prayer, after which he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able at this time, please stand.
Lord, we praise your name for this meeting and for your purpose for it. Our prayer today is that your will will be done through this meeting. Take what we have prepared and multiply our efforts as only you can. Steer our intentions to align with your righteous will. Remind us of your faithful provision when our efforts fail or fall short. May all glory go up to you when we reach the finish line and climb over the benchmarks. Blanket us with your peace today. Keep us physically safe and guard our hearts and minds from pride and selfishness. Keep love at the forefront of our minds today and the guiding light for all we set out to accomplish. We pray all those things in the name of our Lord Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
So before we start today, I did want to have a quick moment of recognition and then a moment of silence for a man named Kyle McCoy, who is a longtime Manatee County employee who died suddenly and unexpectedly over the weekend. Kyle worked for Manatee County Area Transit as a bus operator for 21 years, and he touched the community every day while assisting his passengers. Many people don't think about it, but our transit operators are one of the faces of the county, and they see residents on a daily basis, and oftentimes as they're driving their routes throughout the county, they see problematic situations and things and report them in and ensure that they're part of ensuring that the county runs smoothly beyond just doing their job. Kyle's hard work and dedication was greatly appreciated by his peers and all who knew him. Before his time at Manatee County, he served in the United States Navy as a third-class petty officer. Kyle's passion was working with computers, and he had just recently received his degree with honors for network systems technology. He passed away on Saturday, the 11th, and is survived by his wife Vivian and his daughter Gabriella. He'll be missed greatly, and if you'd please join me for a moment of silence. Thank you, and may God be with his family. All right, Mr. Administrator, if you could please read announcements, changes, updates, last moment updates to today's agenda.
Yes, sir. All updates were added to the update memo.
Okay, all updates made the memo. Commissioners, requests for items to be pulled from consent before we go to the Port Authority. It's just an opportunity to give staff an opportunity to get down here if their item is pulled.
Eight and 19, please.
Commissioner Ballard is pulling eight and 19. Give me just a moment. Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Items 24 and 25.
Eight, 19, 24, 25. Commissioners, any other items to be pulled from consent? All right, hearing none. Next on the list is we are going to temporarily recess this meeting, I should say briefly, and we will open up a Port Authority meeting. So the county commission is in recess.
All right, the Seaport Manatee meeting is now brought to order. This is November 14th, 2023. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Let me borrow it. At this time, we will first of all open up with any public comments that we have. That's first after our call to order number one is any public comments that would be on future agenda items. So if there's on the agenda, this is not the time, but if it's a future agenda that may come before the port, this is your option to come forward. All right, seeing none. Mr. Becaris, we will now take up the consent agenda, correct?
Correct. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
See you talking to the attorney. Whenever I see that, I know I did something wrong.
No, no, it's just a little procedural, procedural matter.
All right.
So Agenda Item Number Three is the consent agenda that's presented for your consideration.
All right. Authority members, do we have anything that you would like to pull from consent at this Anyone? All right. The chair will go ahead and pull Item H, which is the Citrus Suko Agreement from consent. And then we will, at this time, do we have any comments on, I'll open up public comment on consent?
Minus H.
Minus H. Seeing none. All those in favor of passing consent, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion?
Oh, you don't have a motion.
Do you need a motion?
Oh, I need a motion. There we go. We are in a hurry.
Motion to approve consent, minus Item H.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Cruz and our Commissioner Cruz, and a second from Commissioner Van Austinbridge. Any comments from anyone? All right, all those in favor of approving consent, minus H, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Any nays? All right, consent passes unanimously, and then H is, take a look at that. Mr. Becaris, if you would, just go ahead and summarize what we're doing here, and then we'll open that up.
Agenda Item H is a former customer of the port by the name of Citrus Suko. They're a Brazilian-based juice manufacturer. They're a customer of Tropicana, sorry, they are a supplier to Tropicana based in Bradenton, and they have reached an agreement with us to come in at the port to discharge the juice from Brazil and related, let's say, uses of the trucking companies, of course, the fees to the port, which are substantial. So we are recommending that you consider the approval of Agenda H after whatever discussion you might want to have.
All right. Any questions about that from any authority members? All right, and our port is uniquely qualified and equipped to deal with juice customers. Is that correct?
We have in the past, Mr. Chairman. It's a customer that in the past used to call at the port, and for reasons that we're still unaware of, they moved to Tampa. We want them back to be able to shore up the finances of the port because the revenue that they generate does not require any capital investment whatsoever.
All right. Do we have any comments from anyone? I don't have the computer access, so you got to raise your hand when I look over from anyone on the authority. All right.
So I would just comment, I would just comment that I have spoken to Director Becaris at length about this, spoke even over the weekend about it, and I know there were some concerns regarding the agreement from one of the other port customers, but after speaking at length with the director, I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, I'll make, go ahead. Mr. Cruz.
Yeah, I agree. I get it. I can see both sides, but again, I think part of the issue we need to realize is where are the Port Authority, similar to the Board of County Commissioners, where we set policy, and we have a director, arguably one of the best directors of a port in the entire country, who makes day-to-day operational decisions and to date has been very successful. I have no reason to doubt his decisions relative to leases and contracts that are put in place at Port, at Seaport Manatee. So this is his decision more so than it's our decision. I trust his judgment that this is in the best interest of our port and most accretive to the future growth and success of our port. So I'm in favor of it because you're recommending it. I have no reason to doubt you at this point in time.
Well said. Mr. Cruz, I'll go to Commissioner Turner, and I'm also entertaining motions at this time for Letter H.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly with Commissioner Cruz. I mean, and I just want to make the other customer aware that we've been, we've looked at it. It's not that their concerns haven't been reviewed, but yeah, you're the expert in the field, and we trust your judgment, and the port needs that additional revenue in order to do the things that it wants to do, so.
Thank you, Commissioner. Once again, I am entertaining motions.
I'll make a motion to approve Item H.
All right, we've got a motion from Commissioner Cruz, with a second from Commissioner Bearden to approve Item H. At this time, we'll go to public comment before we take the vote. Well, you'll have three minutes to address the board if anyone would like to speak on behalf of Item H, which is the agreement with Citrus Suko. You'll state your name, your county of residence, then you'll have three minutes.
Daniel Blazer, represent World Direct Shipping, Manatee County, and we represent the hunter people that depend on us for a safe working environment and for their livelihood. There's a lot of great things happening at Port Manatee, some of which you might, you might not be aware, we signed an agreement with CSX that's going to give us access to the Northeast via On-Dock Rail, and that, that piece of paper is a true partnership, and we're proud of that.
To do that, you'll need to turn off airplane mode.
Going on a train, not an airplane. And we understand more than anybody that On-Dock Rail requires money. Other stuff requires money, and we want the port to make money, and we want this juice customer to come back. And the reason he left is because he didn't, he needs to think, we want him to come back and want him to stay. We want him to stay. It's better for all the stakeholders, but for them to stay, they got to have a place to park, and they got to have a way to get their stuff out of the port. And that contract doesn't give them that. This contract does not give them that. The berth already has four ships coming in there per week, and I don't know if you guys have seen Ninja Warrior, where they're jumping around obstacles and stuff, but that's what, that's what the juice truck is going to have to do to get out of the container yard. What they need is a dedicated berth, and they need a way to get their stuff out directly out of the port. And in speaking with people on the ground, and in speaking with port staff, we have an idea, the main problem is the width of their rack. It is an eight-lane rack. If we can separate that rack with a Y connector and put four lanes in four lanes, you reduce the width of the rack from 120 feet to 60 feet, and they can operate any berth inside the port. Birth seven, according to port staff, is very underutilized, has direct entrance and exit, and is that perfect width for those four lanes and those four lanes. When we unload our ship, we use two cranes, one on either side. We don't use one giant crane in the middle. And so we can give them that way in and out, they're going to come and stay. If we approve this agreement, the worst thing is to have them come, not be able to get their juice out, get upset, and leave. That's the worst thing, and we don't want that. We want them to stay. And signing that paper does not, does not keep them here. Signing that paper, there's no guarantee that they'll stay, and we want a guarantee that they'll stay. We want to give them a place to work, a place to come in and out of the port. And we need a contract that is going to solve problems, not create problems. And is there any questions about anything that I've said?
We don't do dialogue during this time, but if a Port Authority member wants to comment on it, they will afterwards.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Blazer. Does anyone else want to address the board on Item Number H? You have three minutes. State your name for the record and your county of residence.
Good morning. Andre Dubois, Vice President, Logistech. I'm a Manatee County resident for the past 14 years. Logistech has been partners with this Port Authority for over 20 years. We enjoy the partnership. It's a great relationship. We've had investment of over 18 million in this port. I want the Port Authority to know, the message that was sent was not to prevent Seaport Manatee to have access to additional revenues, okay? We want this business. It's important. The message that I sent yesterday was really clear. It's the, it's the location that is not correct. There needs to be a discussion with all the stakeholders in order to find win-win situation. That's all we're asking, okay? We need the business. I want the juice business as much as anybody else. I've made that clear to Carlos, and I'm making it clear to all of you. We need to have a discussion among all stakeholders so that we can find the win-win situation. That's all I had to say. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes to address the board and state your name, county of residence for the record.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Carlos Diaz, and I'm a Penaltz County resident, and I am the day-to-day operations for World Direct Shipping here in Port Manatee. Now, this idea with Citrus Suko, once again, I want to restate that we are, World Direct Shipping, myself, is 100% on the port's side, increasing revenues and maximizing the assets that the port has. The way this whole deal with Citrus Suko has been conducted has been, to me, reckless and has not been transparent. I found out that this deal was going to happen a week ago when one of the operational people asked me to come down to the berth and told me exactly what was going to happen. Basically, Citrus Suko was going to have rights to berth 14 24/7. The ships aren't going to be there 24/7, but the racks will be there 24/7. Now, first of all, that's an inefficient use of the port, right? Second of all, they also did explain to me that what they're going to do in order to try to mitigate the traffic patterns that Citrus Suko will add, and they think it will not disturb us, is to put a track around the berth, kind of like the Daytona 500. So the juice tanks are going to be circling around the berth where Del Monte and World Direct Shipping will have their containers and their terminal operations, right? Del Monte and World Direct Shipping, where 100,000 containers are coming in and out a year, right? Basically, that's going to disturb our traffic in and out of our, of our terminal. Obviously, forget about the ships. We may have to withdraw ships, withhold ships from the, you know, from, from birthing on time. So there are, again, there are better ways to handle this, and there are better ways to place the juice ship. To put the juice ship in a container terminal is, to me, not sensible and illogical. To me, there's berth nine where they can actually put the juice ship, have their trucks coming in and out with easy entrance and exit to the port and to their juice, and not disturb anybody. There is a way for everybody to play in the same box very friendly, but, and very nicely, but this is not, this is not the way to do it. So I think, I think this, this agenda should be, should be withdrawn, or at least add some further discussions and have further discussion with a lot of the vested parties because not only has Logistech invested 18 million, World Direct Shipping has invested quite a bit of money to have exclusivity, to use Port Manatee exclusively, right? And we're talking about a lot more than 18 million, and I, you know, and I understand that Port Manatee has also come to the party and has also invested, and we appreciate it. Is that it?
Thank you, Carlos. Appreciate it. Mr. Diaz. Do we have anyone else speaking on H? If you would, come forward. You'll have three minutes to address the board. Your name, county of residence, and go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Matthew Nusselrode. I'm the General Manager for Gulf Stevedoring. We service all of the Del Monte-Stavedoring requirements at Port Manatee in Manatee County. I would like to echo the sentiment put forth by Daniel Blazer, Carlos Diaz, and Andre Dubois. We wholly support the port's pending relationship with Citrus Suko and understand that it's a great thing for the community, but we are wholly against the port's plan to put this container, this juice ship in berth 14. My experience, both as an officer in charge of a port in the military and at the ports of LA, Savannah, Tampa, and Manatee, tell me that this plan to cut off the berth with 120-foot structure will significantly impact operations. Port Manatee's container volumes have increased year over year and is currently rivaling Tampa. The container yard is already heavily congested, but we all work together to make it work. Adding this consistent flow of trucks and tight circulation plan and large structure in that berth will negatively impact the terminal. Del Monte and World Direct also routinely overlap with each other when calling births 12 and 14, which are the births directly adjacent to the container terminal. Just last weekend, we had to work around each other and shift cranes so that both vessels could leave on time. I will tell you that from our business model with Del Monte, it is vitally important that that vessel calls on Saturday so that fruit can be delivered on Monday. With this agreement and cutting off berth 14 from World Direct, I can tell you that you will see delays in pro forma, you will see congestion, at least I believe that you will, and I do believe you will see a far-reaching negative impact on the port. As they, as these gentlemen have pointed out, berth seven, eight, and nine are heavily underutilized and provide more than enough length and depth for the Citrus Suko vessels. It seems like the only issue that we have is this 120-foot structure that they want to put up to allow for eight trucks to transit through their ship at a time. If we can come up with an alternative solution to this structure and put this vessel at seven, eight, or nine, I believe everybody will win, and it will be a significantly better option for the port. As this port tries to grow and increase their volumes, as Del Monte grows its commercial business, as World Direct obtains new customers and grows their business, you are going to need that space in the container yard, and you are going to need those berths. That's all that I have.
Thank you, sir. Have anyone else here for Item Number H? You have three minutes to address the board.
For the record, Glenn Jablina, Manatee County. Seems there was a lack of communication with the current customers. Seems there was a lack of communication with, uh, the current customers and these, and these gentlemen right here, so, that's a bad, bad policy. When you, when you, uh, this damn phone. When you ignore existing customers and their, and their, their wants and needs, I mean, this should have been a roundtable discussion with, quite frankly, most of the major players at the port. And according to the testimony I'm hearing from, seems to me reliable sources and experts in their own field, that their, uh, their concerns, not only one weren't addressed, were never brought up in the first place. So, Carlos, you need to rethink this a little bit. This, uh, this board needs to pull the agenda. And, uh, you know, the chair should have been up on this issue to begin with. Thank you.
You'll have three minutes to address the board. State your name and your county of residence.
Good morning. My name is Denise Tuck. I am the Port Manager for Del Monte Fresh Produce, and I am a resident of Manatee County. My stevedore, Matt, spoke very highly of all the different things that we do in the Seaport Manatee. As you know, Del Monte has been a tenant of the port for 35 years. We have grown with the port during that time. They have grown with us, we have grown with them. Our problem now is having a situation where we will have to fight against other tenants for priority birthing. We do not want to have to do that. This past weekend, there was a situation that myself and Carlos Diaz came to an agreement to solve an issue that we know will happen in the future. We don't wanna have to do that. We don't wanna have to constantly battle each other. We all can grow, we can all do good business, and we can all make way for even new business. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this issue before we go to deliberations and vote? All right, seeing none. I did want to, all right, late to the party. All right, state your name, county of residence.
Hello, my name is Steve Abernathy. I'm, uh, President of Gulf Stevedoring, and, uh, I live in Louisiana. The, uh, I, I wanted to echo the sentiments of the other people that have spoken here that we're very much in favor of the juice ship and the whole thing. I think the, 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 the problem here is, is a logistical problem of blocking off the container yard. We, it, it is very congested when the ships are there. There, there is room for growth. You can have more ships. We only have probably five ships a week there. You could have another ship easily. But in this proposal, there is no, um, there's no set times, there's no set schedules. And when these ships get off schedule, it really throws a, a wrench in the whole thing because they have schedules at other ports. So, once we slip schedule by a day or so, then it can't make its schedule in the other ports. And then everything, it takes months to get back on schedule. And so, I think there should be more discussion about this, and, and I think there can be a solution. I just think that the, the current solution is not a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You'll have three minutes. Before you get started, if we have plenty of other people in the audience on this issue, if you would just go ahead and make a queue over here, because I'm kinda playing popcorn and waiting and then people are popping up. So, go ahead and make a queue if you're speaking on this issue. Go ahead, sir.
Good morning, I'm Christian Pando. Uh, I'm the Chipping and Port Director of Del Monte for, all Del Monte. Uh, this agreement is a very good agreement for Manatee. I'll read the agreement. Uh, I'm gonna hire the lawyers of Citrus, Citrus Suko as soon as possible because they're very good. This is a good agreement for them, but not for the rest of the tenants of the, the port. Uh, you have the best people at the port, that's no doubt. Uh, you have good people working for you. Uh, but this agreement need to be reviewed, to have something that works for everybody. Because if you are gonna, uh, disrupting the business of all the other tenants, I don't think it's a good agreement. Just review it. We want more business for Manatee, more business for, for the county, to make more money, grow, give more jobs. That's the only thing we want, and we wanna grow, but the right way. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else commenting on H from our agenda today? All right, seeing none. I think I'll just address some of the things, because I've been doing a little bit of, obviously, I think, the other port of members, I imagine.
Well, if you go to current items, you should be able to see the speaking order.
Oh, yeah.
And then I can just, I'll just click on the names as, as you call them, sir.
All right, we've got three port members on the board. Commissioner Bearden, go ahead.
I was, I was just being a smart aleck, asking if it was plugged in, but occasionally, it's not plugged in, right?
All right, so I'm gonna cha-change mics here. Okay, so, Carlos, can you tell me how much revenue this new customer is gonna bring into the port?
We are estimating, uh, approximately $3 million a year of additional revenue.
And is that gonna require us to, you know, build any type of infrastructure for this customer?
Uh, this customer does not require an infrastructure, uh, which is one of the very attractive aspects. The, the, um, return on invested capital is 100% because there's no capital being invested.
Okay. Well, you've done a really good job developing our port. I mean, it went from nothing to where, where it's at today, which is astonishing to me. Um, is there a reason why, um, we can't use berth six, seven, or eight in this process?
Uh, never say never, right? However, you know, as, uh, the, uh, the public comment, uh, people made is that, uh, the width of the rack has gone from six to eight lanes. And the reason is that they wanna deliver the juice quicker to, uh, Tropicana. And that will reduce the time at birth of the ship, in fact. However, the, because of the width of the rack, it really makes it extremely difficult to have a productive pattern because the other berths are not really wide enough to handle all the traffic. We looked at that, will continue to look at that. And if, if they, an opportunity arises to move them, we will move them. We don't have any fixation on having it there, and nevertheless, this is the one that works at this time.
And I would assume that you've gone down this road from time to time that if there is a holdup, you'd be able to make those adjustments as such in order to make it work for everybody, correct?
Uh, correct. The, you know, we always do that. In other words, you know, ships are supposed to let us know when they're gonna come in. They're supposed to know when they're gonna leave. And then we can fit in another ship behind it or ahead of it. So, port productivity is based on berth turnover. So, that's part of the job, you know, of the port executive staff, to make sure that berth utilization is maximized because the investments in berths today, you know, are easily 30, 40, 50 million dollars just for one berth. So, it's to our best interest and to the port's best interest to do the ship turnover, the berth turnover, to maintain the flow of income resulting from the loading and unloading of the ships.
Okay. Wonderful. And I think it's awesome that, you know, this is running and operating as a business within itself that doesn't cost any of the taxpayer dollars, anything to run this, and you've done a great job, as I said before. Um, but I understand the other party's argument as well. However, you know, we're a growing port. And so, as we grow, obviously, it's in your hands to make the adjustments as such so that we can please all customers in the future, so, um... But I think $3 million in revenue each year is pretty significant. And if we're having to make a business decision here, uh, I think you're making the right move, so, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bearden and Commissioner Van Ostenbridge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carlos, my first question is, I thought this cus, this new ship was associated with Del Monte. Is that the case?
No, this is Citrus Suko, Brazilian-based and Florida-based manufacturer of, uh, orange juice.
Okay. What I've heard in public comment and what it sounds like, the, I mean, I heard about racks, I heard about Y connectors, um, berth assignments, scheduling, trains, sort of railcar priorities on the rail. It's kinda, it kinda sounds like a turf war, and, and folks often don't like change, and the port is growing, and that's a good thing. Uh, and everyone's gonna have to, to adapt. It's your job, obviously, to manage the expectations of, of existing customers while bringing in new customers. Sounds like you have some fences to mend with existing customers, so I would encourage you to do that. But Y connectors and berth assignments and scheduling is beyond the role of this board. Um, I don't feel that that's, it's appropriate for us to weigh in on those things. So, I'm just gonna defer to you and say it sounds like you have some unhappy customers, and I hope you'll get things right. Thank you, sir. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Van Ostenbridge, Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, uh, what, what Chairman, well, not Chairman, not this moment. Uh, what Commissioner Van Ostenbridge said, we, this is outside the scope of, of my knowledge. I have no idea what half of what was just said there relative to certain racks and certain sizes. At, at the end of the day, we only have three employees between our two jobs. We got the county administrator, county attorney, where we're, we're wearing our board county commissioner hat, and we have you wearing our port authority hat. And we trust you're all gonna do your job, and our only recourse is to have you stop doing that job. You know that, and you have a vested interest in this port. And if we start undermining you and questioning your decisions, when it comes to every contract, that's going to hinder your ability to do your job to the best of your ability. So, I, I don't wanna start a trend that we're going to hyperanalyze every lease and every contract and every agreement with you because that, that's gonna make your job harder, which is going to make this port worse. And it's going to result in us getting rid of you because you don't do your job, because you're scared to do your job, because you think we're gonna second-guess you because a few people come up with a complaint. So, I don't understand that the pros are cons, but you do, and I'm confident you assessed all of those. And I'm confident if you could have found a way to maximize revenue and maximize people's utilization, you would have done so. So, I trust this is the best agreement we could have gotten in your ability. I'm not going to second-guess you and micromanage the Executive Director of Seaport Manatee.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Turner.
Yeah, Carlos, we have a, a lot of face, so my comments echo that as well. And I think your big customers echo the same thing, that we have great staff. Is there, is there a timeframe restraint on executing this new contract?
Uh, there is, Commissioner, and I think that, uh, I'm glad Citrus Suko is not here to see how we make the sausage because I certainly wouldn't wanna scare them off. They could easily stay in Tampa and keep the money in Tampa, keep the $3 million, you know, dollars in Tampa. Tampa would love them to do that. They would love, you know, us to make them wonder if we can accommodate them or not. So, um, they're probably watching this meeting, you know, hoping that, uh, that we will make it easy for them to keep them up there. As you said, it's our job to grow the port. And certainly, if, if it wasn't because, you know, some of our berths are underutilized and some of, you know, we're working with our partners, uh, Del Monte, uh, Logistech, Gulf Stevedoring, to bring in new business. Up until now, there hasn't been new business that we could get our arms around. So, this is an opportunity. And again, we will always look, if we can, to make their job as easy and efficient as possible and to relocate those racks, if at all possible, at our expense without any problem. So, uh, it, it isn't a static situation. If we in the future, or they can find a way, and Citrus Suko to move those racks somewhere else, delighted to do that, if Citrus Suko agrees, uh, because they have, you know, they're, they're, they're have a huge investment in their facility. And as you know, more and more, the Florida crop of oranges has gone down, and as such, Tropicana, among others, needs this, uh, flow of orange juice coming in, you know, to be able to maintain their, their business.
You know, I would like your large customers to know, that's one thing that we are really aware of on the board. Del Monte, WDS, Logistech, like, those names, Calm Clears, is probably the top three. WDS in particular is probably one of the, the entrepreneurial stories of the, of recent history. They've, you know, they've grown from nothing to three ships. And so, we're really aware of the importance of these customers, for sure. And so, essentially, what you're saying is you can work with them on logistical issues as we go away. It's not absolutely set in stone.
We have, and we plan to.
Yeah.
Um, literally, there's no self-interest by the port to put a rack, you know, again, not trying to get too technical, to put this contraption in a place that in any way impedes, you know, the efficient flow. However, uh, if we now start, let's say, vacillating with Citrus Suko, they say, you know what? Let me just stay in Tampa, you know? I, I don't want, uh, to have to face a situation that is uncomfortable. And so, you know, we lose that employment, and we lose those jobs, and we lose that revenue. So, you know, that's what we're trying to, to do, both, uh, let's say, adjust the racket we can, and at the same time, bring in this $3 million because, you know, up until now, uh, this is a brand-new, um, customer, and we don't have anybody else that can bring in even nearly that amount of money.
Yeah. What I'd like to state to you, your big customers, Del Monte, Logistech, and WDS, we're not discounting that relationship at all. We really realize how important you are to the port, and we are tasking Carlos to, to mend those fences like, um, Commissioner Kevin said, so... Sir Kevin, Sir Kevin. So, I, I want you to know you have been heard, we did see the emails. So, you know, whatever decisions made here is, is not discounting your relationships.
Correct. Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Anything else from the board? Yeah, um, so Carlos, on the, uh, on the juice ships, when a juice ship comes in, is there a lot of, how much, how much usage of, say, stevedores does a juice ship require? A lot, or?
Uh, no, not a great deal. The juice ship requires a, essentially, a, this rack, which is essentially a way to discharge the juice by hoses from the ship to, uh, food-grade tanker trucks, like you see in set of fuel of tanker trucks. So, it's, um, not heavy on stevedoring, it's heavier on the truck to deliver the juice in time to, uh, Tropicana, among other facilities.
And then what about on, uh, crane operation? Does it take a lot of crane operation to set up and to?
Does, does not require cranes.
Doesn't require crane to do that? Okay. I, I think that, you know, we'll have our, the vote here in just a moment, but, but I do think that we're gonna see that it's in the best interest, it's in your best interest and this port authority's best interest, and to, uh, continue to work together diligently to make every customer happy. And obviously, sometimes there's gonna be conflicts, you know? And, uh, as far as sometimes two different companies don't want to work side by side or to, uh, compete for some of the same resources or space. But it seems like in this situation, you know, our role and your role is to do a little bit of almost playing the referee and figuring out the best solution for everyone. So, I appreciate, and then one other question. Am I correct, the yearly, our yearly revenue somewhere around 30 million each year?
Well, it, um, it was getting near that.
Yeah.
It dropped because some of our, you know, through the pandemic, it's some of our container customers and break bulk customers and bulk customers have reduced a little bit the throughput. So, um, this would bump us up to around, for next year, around 30 million with the, with the $3 million from Citrus Suko. Otherwise, we're on 27, 26.
So, this contract could, you know, represent over 10% growth in revenue from, from this one contract?
And particularly attractive is really the, that the, that the return on capital, because there's no capital investment, is 100%, so it's clean cash flow, which helps us really help the customers who are here.
Right.
Because every, every capital investment we make for them, uh, you know, requires significant cash flow. And, you know, they can't pay for it themselves, they look to us to help them build facilities, and we do. and we do. Just a container yard, a container acre is $1.6 million. Right now, you know, that kind of money, you know, is necessary to be able to help World Direct Shipping and Del Monte, you know, growing, because if we stay where we are with container yard area, because we don't have the money, it doesn't help anybody.
Yeah, all right. Thank you, Mr. Becaris, I appreciate that. Yeah, I appreciate the board and what they've said, just some great comments and points made. I've also spent a little bit of time behind the scenes just working potential solutions. And I think as we move forward, there'll be more, I'm hopeful that there'll be more motivation to make some of those solutions come to pass. And I do have a lot of trust in Mr. Becaris to make that happen. With that, no one on the board, I'll take the vote. All those in favor of adopting the agreement with Citrus Suko, item H, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. Madam Clerk passes seven to zero. Do we have any other Executive Director comments at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman, none at this time, thank you.
All right, any Commissioner comments? With that, this meeting in the Port Authority is adjourned.
Welcome back. We're on item number one in the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. As those who are attending the Port Authority meeting exit, please remember that we are still in session. So we'll start with item number one under awards, and that is presentation of the November Employee of the Month Award to Rebecca Woodward, who I believe is Transit. Do we have anyone from Transit here or possibly Rebecca Woodward here? Ah, there they are. Come on down.
Kevin tripped somebody, come on. So I don't want to do much of the talking today. I was going to reiterate Chad Butso from Public Works wanted to reintroduce the Transit leadership team. As I did at the long vote key meeting, but one more on the opportunity. Three individuals I wanted to recognize real quick. Chris Diannantis right here, Chris helped hold down the fort during our transition time in leadership in Transit. Benita Zar, who has been with us for a very long time, many of you know her, and she's got that passionate desire to serve, especially in that pair of Transit, but she stepped up and is in that number-two role within the Transit Division right now. And Kevin Hoyt is our new Transit Manager from the area, very familiar, hails from the New York area, but has been in Florida for quite a long time, and I will turn it over to him.
Good morning. It's a great day at Manatee County, but it's even a better month for Rebecca Woodward. I'm so proud to have known Rebecca. When I first started, she came to me and just, she let me know, like, what she's studying. She's taken upon a lot of classes on her own time to study, like, federal, local, state guidelines. And she's just a wonderful person. She works hard each and every day, and I'm just proud and honored that she's Employee of the Month. Anyone else?
Benita, the Operations Chief for Manatee County Area Transit, knew a little bit more about Rebecca. Rebecca has no problem assisting where needed. We utilize Rebecca a lot with our training team. She assists with new hires, especially when they're learning more about the pair of Transit operations and the techniques with our buses. Rebecca's also a part of our first-end team, where she assists with response and recovery during major disasters like a hurricanes, she'll assist there. As Kevin was mentioning, she also does a lot of the, takes the initiative to do a lot of training that will help her, given her the knowledge and understanding of the public transit industry. And she's looking for ways to help her in the safety and security portion of transportation. Rebecca also has a passion and is very empathetic with the type of personnel and clientele that we transport. A lot of the transportation that we're doing is with disabled, special needs, and our elderly population. Rebecca has no problem stepping up to the table and just, you know, putting her all into what she is doing to assist them. And she wants to give them a safe and friendly environment where she feels like, you know, they're her own and they're a part of her family. And we here at Manatee County and our team in the back, we just want to take this opportunity to congratulate Rebecca for, you know, this is an honor for her, you know, to receive this achievement. And we really want to thank her for her dedication and all that she has given us and the good customer service that she provides as a Manatee County employee.
Wow.
So to live up to that, you're next. So on behalf, so on behalf of Manatee County, to make it official, we want to say congratulations on being the November Employee of the Month.
Thank you very much.
Rebecca, we'd like to hear from you.
That may be it, but.
Wow, I'm so touched and I'm so thankful to be a part of Manatee County. We're over in Transit, we are such a wonderful operation. If anybody has a chance to ride any of our buses, we welcome you and thank you.
A natural-born salesperson, I love it. Commissioner Ballard, you're on the board, ma'am.
Ms. Woodward, I just want to thank you so much for the work that you do, just hearing about the extra training that you take on to make sure that you're doing the very best that you can, doing the disaster response, and also just the attitude that you seem to put forward and the empathy that you have for the people that you're transporting and the challenges that they have is really just touching. And it sounds like you are the perfect person to do the job that you're doing, and it sounds like I wish we had 20 more of you. So thank you very much, and it sounds like this is very well-deserved.
Well, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you so much. I said earlier that for many of our residents, Transit may be the only, the only person, the only county employee that they come into any kind of contact or regular contact with, and that essentially makes you the face of Manatee County to all of those residents. And as I said as well, as Transit operators drive around the county, they get into those routines and they know how things are supposed to look, whether it's at someone's house or in front of someone's business, and they oftentimes spot things that are out of the normal and irregular and report those. And at times, it's even resulted in saving lives. And so, anyway, I just want to thank you for all that you do for Manatee County, ma'am. Thank you. All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, our next item, item number two, proclamations, adoption and presentation of proclamation designating November 16, 2023, as Children's Grief Awareness Day in Manatee County. And Commissioner Ballard will present that item, a last-minute decision. And who is here to, oh, you're already right up front, wonderful. And while we're doing that, we'll very quickly entertain motions on proclamations. Motion by Commissioner Thatcher to approve, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Commissioner Ballard.
So I think that this is a really important proclamation. I'm really glad that you all are here today. I've done a little bit of work with Blue Butterfly in the past, and I think that what you do for those kids who have lost a parent or a really close loved one is really amazing and it really fills a gap, because obviously grief doesn't, it cuts across all socioeconomic bounds, cuts across every sector of society. So we really appreciate the work that you do for kids who are struggling with grief. So with that, we will go forward with our proclamation. Whereas around the country, the month of November is recognized as Children's Grief Awareness Month, with November 16 as the day of recognition. And whereas, 1 in 11 children in the state of Florida will experience the death of a parent or sibling by the time they turn 18, with that more than doubling by the time they turn 25. And whereas, in Manatee County, there are 2,540 children who will grieve the death of a parent by the time they turn 18. And whereas, research shows that providing grief support counseling early after a death can help children develop coping skills, understand and identify feelings, find ways to honor and remember their special person who died, and more. And whereas, no child has to grieve alone. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that November 16, 2023, shall be known, designated, and set aside as Children's Grief Awareness Day in Manatee County, Florida, adopted with a quorum present and voting this 14th day of November, 2023, and that's signed by our Board of County Commissioners Chair, Kevin Van Ostenbridge, and attested to by our Clerk of the Circuit Court, Angelina Colaniso. With that, I will turn it over. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you. Hello, I am Carley Weiss. I am a counselor at Blue Butterfly Family Grief Center. I don't have much to say, because the proclamation says pretty much it all, and Amanda, you did a great job explaining it. I love to hear about the work you've done with Blue Butterfly. Thank you so much. And thank you, everybody here. I just want to say thank you on behalf of the staff at Blue Butterfly. We are a nonprofit, free, community-based service that offers grief support to children and their families in Manatee County. So thank you so much on behalf of us at Blue Butterfly and the children of Manatee County as well.
Thank you, Carley.
My name is Sean Allison, and I work Tidewell Foundation. And these services are free and they're very important to the entire community. And I want to thank the Board of County Commissioners and Manatee County for supporting Tidewell Foundation. Everything that we do through Community Grief is free to the community because of the $5 million that we raise every year and donate, or not donate, but extend to services like Community Grief, Blue Butterfly, and other full-life services for people in Manatee County. So I want to thank you for all that, all that you do, and we appreciate this proclamation very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys very much. Thank you.
I'll just make a quick statement on behalf of the board. It's organizations like this that are sort of like unsung heroes. I mean, how many people in this room even knew the organization existed until today? And like, three people, and they're doing, well, doing tremendous work. And I hope that when folks need or know kids who need your services, I hope that this helps to get you to gain exposure so that, you know, if there's any kids out there, unfortunately, who do need your services, that they know of them and they're able to contact you and be helped. And you're doing really tremendous work in this county, very quietly, without, you know, other than us speaking up now, really without any recognition. And so thank you for everything that you're doing for our county. And Mr. Allison, I'm glad to see that you're still serving Manatee County. I know you're not, this guy ran the YMCA for like something years, and now he's moved on to this great organization and another sort of unsung hero in the county who's constantly serving our residents. So thank you both so much for all that you're doing. All right. We will move on then to the fun of citizen com, oh, wait, yeah, we'll do citizen comments on future agenda items first, and then we'll jump into items pulled from consent. So citizen comment on future agenda items. So the way citizen comment works is if you have an item that is on today's agenda that you wish to speak on, then you'll just, if it's on consent, when we call citizen comment on the consent agenda, you'll speak then. If it's a standalone item, then you'll wait for us to call that item, and when we are holding that item, we will hold a citizen comment period during that specific item. If there's something you'd like to address the board regarding that's not on today's agenda, that's going to be on a future agenda, or that you would like to see placed on a future agenda, then we have a 30-minute period now where we open it up to citizen comments on future agenda items. So we'll do that now. We'll do citizen comment on future agenda items now. If there is anyone who would like to come forward to address the board on a future agenda item, I do have one person signed up, it's Mr. Robert McDonald. Mr. McDonald, sir, all right? So this is future agenda items, and then I'll repeat this 100 times, but just so everyone hears it the first time around, when you reach the podium, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you'll have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. My name is Robert McDonald, and I have been a Manatee County resident since 1985, I'm happy to say. And I am here today to talk about a problem we have in Manatee County that was created, unfortunately, back in 2004 by the adoption of 0430, which requires public safety access to motorized gates throughout the community. Any community, any entity that requires access by, has a motorized gate, is required to provide a means to get into the property. The problem is, the choice has been this. This is my gate old garage door clicker that I've had since my old garage door was installed when I bought the house. It is also the master key to Manatee County. Every community in this county I can get into, any business that's got a motorized gate, and there are some other implications that I'm not going to bring up here, that this thing will give me access to. What we want is instead for the county to either mandate or allow the use of this box called Click to Enter. This technology is developed to work in the public safety sector. Manatee County has several frequencies that are allocated for the public safety use, for their police radios, fire, so on, etc. This box is programmed to work on those frequencies only, and those frequencies that are chosen by the county to use. Any other use of that frequency to transmit on is a federal offense. So I can't go to Walmart and buy one of these and transmit and open this gate. We have got a massive onslaught of crime that's going on in our communities, from everything, from trespassing to burglary. And in our own community, last Saturday night, we had a group of teenagers enter with their clicker and take their vehicle and speed back and forth behind, past two old women who were walking around just trying to have a nice night out, walking around the neighborhood in the nice weather. We can't have this kind of stuff. And I'm going to ask the county to either replace or amend 0430 to allow the use of the Click to Enter device. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. I'll just make one quick, we don't do that, that's disruption of the meeting. I'll just make one quick statement. I had a lengthy meeting with the sheriff last week, and crime is down significantly in Manatee County. Mr. Gibbelina, first and last name, county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Glenn Gibbelina, for the record, Manatee County, 46 years. So, you know, public call-in, we still don't have that, can't bring our coffee in here anymore, but I want to follow the rabbit hole of the money. So future agenda, federal monies, we had $78 million of federal monies, and a promise was made to our veterans that $15 million would be set aside for services for our veterans and housing. You took $6 million of that and you paid for the dirt. That's all you did. The other $9 million could have went to other ones. So let's look at the numbers here. So the option B, that Amanda Ballard motioned to reappropriate $1.5 million of federal funds, passed seven to zero. For the same amount of money, we could have eliminated all homeless veterans in Manatee County by the numbers, and I'm a facts and numbers guy, that's what I do. I fact-check everything. So let's say you can get a studio for $1,500 a month, times 12 months is $720,000, times two years is $1.4 million. For that, you could get every homeless veteran off the streets into housing for two years until tunnels to towers are built. So please tell me again how much this board supports our local homeless veterans. And the taxpayers, we support it, but you don't. That money was misappropriated, it could have used better. Let me ask you something. So my understanding that for the next two years, it's okay for our 80 that you know about, and really, if you look at the hard numbers and the at-risk, experts in the nonprofits will tell you we're up over 200, and that freight train's coming down the road, I can guarantee you that, the way we are going. So you'd rather see our veterans homeless for two years, struggling, rather than put them a roof over their head right now with the? them a roof over their head right now with the one-point-five million that was misappropriated for office design? I don't understand that. Mike, you could have started your own VASH voucher. You could have had eighty VASH vouchers with that money, get them off the street this month, and you could have been a hero. And you guys, two veterans, voted seven-zero to divert those federal funds that were earmarked for our veterans. It's unbelievable that the misappropriation of funds for self-serving interest and leaving our veterans out to dry for the next two years is unacceptable. That's my public service announcement.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am? Please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on a future agenda item.
How do I get these to you?
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the Manatee County Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Stephanie Peterson, and I'm a disabled United States Marine Corps Combat Veteran, Veteran Advocate, and Mother. I'm here to bring forth concerns regarding a decision made on May twenty-third. On that day, a motion was approved unanimously to move one-point-five-million dollars from the Veteran Homeless Project and added to the already fifty-one-million dollars dedicated for office design. Commissioner Ballard, during the deliberations, expressed, quote, "I'm in favor of option B here. My understanding is that this is a project that is moving forward in a different way, and those funds are not needed at this point, so we can use those uncommitted funds towards our other projects that we've proposed." This statement raises crucial questions. If Commissioner Ballard believes that the funds earmarked for the Veteran Homeless Project are not needed, I would like to know on what basis she makes that claim. What types of programs and services are currently available for homeless veterans in Manatee County that would lead her to conclude that no further assistance is necessary? As a concerned citizen, it is our right and our responsibility to seek transparency on decisions that directly impact the welfare of our veterans. It's important to note that at the time Commissioner Ballard made the statement, tunnels to tower had not been solidified as an alternative project. This raises concerns about the foresight and thorough consideration that went into the decision-making process. If the alternative project was not firmly in place, how could Commissioner Ballard confidently assert that the funds were not needed? Homelessness among veterans is a complex issue that requires ongoing attention and a multifaceted approach. Rather than assuming that existing programs are sufficient, it is crucial for our commissioners to stay informed about the dynamic needs of the veteran community. I urge Commissioner Ballard to provide clarity on the existing support systems for homeless veterans that led her to believe that the allocation of funds would be redirected without detriment. Our veterans deserve nothing less than our full commitment to their well-being and success as they reintegrate into civilian life. I request that Commissioner Ballard, in the spirit of transparency and accountability, shares the specifics of the programs and services currently in place for homeless veterans that prompted her to support the reallocation of funds. I'd like to direct my attention to Commissioners Bearden and Mike Ron. How can you sleep at night knowing that you made the decisions to not fully stand for the well-being of our veterans? As perfect public servants entrusted with the responsibility to represent the best interests of our community, it is essential to assure that the decisions made align with our values. Veterans who have sacrificed so much for our nation deserve unequivocal support. Redirecting funds away from a project dedicated to addressing veteran homelessness sends a distressing message about our community's commitment to those who have served. I implore Commissioners Bearden and Ron to reflect on the impact their decisions--
Thank you, ma'am.
--and consider long-term consequences.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Sure. So, Andrea Griffin, Manatee County, activist. So, my message for future agenda is do better. Do better. I prayed before I came up here, I've been praying for the last twenty-four hours, on how I was going to address some of my major concerns with this board. And so, when you guys were all sitting here on this side of the lectern, we fought for the people. We, the people of Manatee County, that's what we fought for back here. We put you guys in these places for your backbone, integrity, and thick skin, to stand against the developers of this county. We know we need them to help you guys get elected, but at what point is this nonsense going to stop? We are not bought and sold in Manatee County, or not. If you ever picked up the phone, and a developer was on there, and he was screaming in your ear, and you changed your vote because of it, you are the swamp that you are saying that you're trying to drain. Donald Trump is under indictment, so we are not bought and paid for, under indictment for fighting for each and every one of us, so we don't have to be bought and paid for, so we can be here free. All I'm going to say to each and every one of you is do better, because I've been around the block a time or two, and I can see when there's been sneaky stuff going on here. And I'll be addressing that later in this meeting. God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and address the board on a future agenda item? Ma'am, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board.
Carol Phelps, Mayaka City. First thing I want to ask about is, we've mentioned this before, when people bring up a subject on future agenda items that they want to see on a future agenda, that means that we would like to see it on a future agenda. And I think I've talked about this before, that nobody's keeping track and saying, okay, these are the things that the citizens wanted to talk about or see on a future agenda, and we're not doing that. So, I think we should be keeping track of what citizens are bringing as what they want to see on future agenda items. Secondly, of course, I'm all in favor of bringing back our call-ins. I think that I love it when this room is filled with people. I think that that's not a bad thing. It's people participating, and it's people wanting to be educated and informed. So, when you see a full room out here, you're putting on a good show, because people want to be involved. Two of our commissioners in the last-- oh, let me go back to one more. On a future agenda item, possibly for the last three years, I have been asking for the formation of a Rural Citizens and Land Citizens Advisory Committee. Now, I'll give you two examples why this is important, especially as our growth is going farther out east. I invite all of you to take a drive down Seventy and look at the, here we go, the little yellow sign by the side of the road. I would like to see each and every one of our county commissioners pull off of Seventy and scan that QR code in that little yellow sign on the side of the road. Let's see how many of you make it out. It's not working. So, that's another thing, that is why we have to address some of our rural issues a little bit differently than in other places. Okay? If I'm walking my dog, I'm going to see a little yellow sign, and I could just take my cellphone and QR-code it. But I challenge every commissioner, post a picture of you pulling your car on the side of the road off of Seventy and reading that sign. And Godspeed, y'all, because you're going to get killed. So, another issue that would be addressed by our rural citizens, things, there is a difference. We have a very diverse county. We have an issue coming up with food trucks. Now, I don't know what predicated the need to have more government involved with our food trucks, but if you look at what is coming down with this, first off, why are you messing with food trucks? Secondly, it's a little bit different. Again, if you put in this licensing, whatever you want to call it, I believe that it requires the food trucks to be at or near a commercial establishment with private property permissions, this doesn't work out in the rural area. Our food trucks have permission to be on private property that is not developed, that there's nothing there. So, Rural Citizens Committee--
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Yep. When I was a candidate before I became a county commissioner, and I would come to speak at the board, Ms. Phelps, I would always make that known at the podium for reasons of transparency, so that people knew that I would be a transparent commissioner as well. Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board regarding future agenda items? Anyone on future agenda items? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close citizen comment on future agenda items. And we do have some commissioners on the board who would like to speak about what they heard during citizen comment, Commissioners Turner, Van Austinbridge, Ballard, and Satcher. Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, I just wanted to address the safety issue and the crime and with the clicker. So, I've been in real estate a really long time. If our clicker worked in every community, we would be so elated so that we didn't have to stop at the security gate. So, by coincidence, maybe the gentleman that presented his, the code in his clicker is the same as what it is for emergency services, but every community is not, does not have that. There is a code for emergency services for Manatee County and Sarasota County, but that's programmed into the clicker. So, every resident that lives in a gated community does not have access to every community. I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board, and I was going to speak to the issue of, well, it was phrased several different ways, but ultimately, it was fifteen-million dollars for veterans. So, we received, I think, ninety-eight million in ARP funds, ninety-seven, seventy-eight? I'm sorry, seventy-eight million in ARP funds, this is three years ago. And we started to allocate that money. We made, it was a very transparent process. It was, I don't know how many meetings we had, too many. Commissioner Cruz says too many. We had lots of meetings on how to allocate those funds and what they should be used for, and ultimately, the board came to the consensus that we wanted to use the money for essentially capital projects within the county, because we felt that the federal government had essentially borrowed the money or was printing the money, and that future generations were going to end up paying for this money. And we didn't necessarily agree with that, but it is your money, and here it is, so your grandkids are going to, you know, pay for it one way or another. So, we decided to invest on sort of legacy projects or sort of forever projects, things that would be enjoyed by future generations who are actually paying the bill, is what we decided. And so, we finally ironed that out, and one of the things we narrowed down to was veteran homelessness, veteran housing. It started out potentially using the empty space above the courthouse across the street. It moved to several different, trying to find the best location and the best way to do it. Eventually, tunnels to towers came along, and they offered to do a public-private partnership. In the end, the facility that they built was larger than anything that we could, is going to be larger than anything that we could have built. It was near transit, it was ideal location, and it made sense. And it also was, will house more homeless veterans than we have in Manatee County. And so, we felt there was room for growth there as well. It met, it actually exceeded our needs. It didn't just meet our needs, it exceeded our needs. And so, we made the decision to go with a public-private partnership, and our contribution to that was six-million dollars. The other, the remainder of the money, of course, was put back into the general fund, and I'm sure will be gobbled up by inflation on a multitude of other projects in the future. But that's where the money is. There's no misappropriation of funds, not by any means. As far as simply taking, it also kept this government from, we're trying to help with affordable housing, but at the same time, we're not wanting to cross the line of sort of socialism. I mean, we don't want to cross the line of taking one person's money and then giving it to another person to provide for their daily basic needs. We're trying to make partnerships with organizations like Tunnels to Towers, where we make one investment, which would be that six-million dollars, and then the project is able to sustain itself going forward from that point. And we felt that that was the most appropriate way to be a good steward of other people's tax dollars. And so, that's what we did. I would sort of, and people are upset because we didn't spend the whole fifteen, but I would sort of compare that to a road project. I mean, if we can find a way to build a road, a fifty-million-dollar road for thirty-million dollars, we're not simply going to spend the other thirty on the same road, just, you know, adding bells and whistles and things, when we've achieved our goal, and, you know, there's no reason to just spend the money to spend the money. That's what the people before us did, and that's why we're here, to be completely honest. And then, as far as, there's a lot of, there are some examples put out there about services offered. There's different roles for different levels of government. The VA offers an awful lot of services, and they offer them here in Manatee County, and we don't want to be duplicative of those services. We felt that our role is to form a Community and Veteran Services Department and essentially take folks, find folks and locate folks who need those services and connect them with the provider. And so, we've taken that on as our role, to connect local residents, local veterans, with the providers of the services that they needed, not to duplicate the services. And our CVS department does a fantastic job of that, and we actually had a meeting yesterday with the administrator about how we can, you know, always improve and always do a better job of that. It's kind of ironic that it came forward today. So, anyway, I just wanted to speak on the veteran issue and that money as well. Commissioner Ballard?
Thank you. So, I think that Commissioner Van Austinbridge, you said a lot of what I wanted to say on this issue. It is important to note that along with our six-million-dollar investment, we have a twenty-five-million-dollar investment from tunnels to towers to make this project what it needs to be. So, that's a total thirty, thirty-one-million-dollar investment for homeless veterans in Manatee County. I've always been committed to tunnels to towers. I knew it was going to come forward, and that's why I was very confident in May, saying, let's reallocate some of these funds. There were also, in the original calculations of what we were going to do for these, with these funds, so there was fifteen million for a conceptual project in the jail. We had no idea what that was going to look like, how much it was going to cost to make the jail into a facility. Turned out that it was pretty cost prohibitive, and that we wouldn't be able to do nearly what tunnels to towers can do for our veterans for a much lower cost. It just makes zero sense to try to say that the fifteen million for a conceptual project is the same as the six million for a real-life project with a private investment of twenty-five million more dollars. That, it's crazy to compare that. There were also eight million dollars that was originally allocated for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four COVID response. So, if we were to say that we couldn't touch those funds, and we couldn't make any changes to the original allocations of those funds, we would be spending eight million dollars of your kids' and grandkids' taxpayer dollars on COVID response. So, we'd be buying more masks, buying PPE, hiring people to wipe down the podium still. And if you think that that's a good use of taxpayer funds, and that this board can't reallocate those funds according to the needs of the community today, I think that that's disingenuous at best. I've had conversations with Mr. Gibellina about this. I'm always willing to engage on the issue, and I have engaged on the issue, but unfortunately, he continues to be disingenuous. What else do we have here? I think that's it. I think I'm good.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Satcher, you're the last on the board, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the things that I like to know is that, and I'm always hopeful that people that we vote for or work with, that they're looking out for people's best interest. And having that security or knowledge goes a long way for me. And so, I want to just catch everyone up that hasn't, that isn't in these meetings day after day, week after week. First of all, originally, the same as everyone was waiting for a contractor to, you know, work on their house after, directly after COVID, the way there was this huge backlog, there weren't enough workers, there weren't enough supplies, there weren't enough contractors. Well, governments ran into the exact same issue. So, all this money came down from the feds, we all had a crappy decision, because we know good and well it was bad policy and was going to lead to inflation, but here you are, you're one little county out of thousands in the United States, and we have a duty to our taxpayers to do the best we can with that money, so we start trying to allocate it. Problem was, there's no contractors to take on the jobs, and the amount of time it takes to get the design done on these jobs, the engineering, and then someone to actually show up and do the work was completely cost prohibitive. Also, we had conversations, the first idea that I think had been, honestly, I bet, had been in the incubator for a long time, was to put it across the street here downtown. We could do this project, fifteen million, rehab this facility for veterans. Well, and the reason why I think that was in a long time is because the person that brought it to us has worked for the county for literally decades and has a heart for veterans, okay? And the commissioners before us hadn't done anything on this issue that I am aware of. We heard about the issue, and we said we'll act on it. Problem was, when we went-- Problem was, when we went to veterans' organizations, they said that was not a good fit. It was not a good place. The money was actually going to be well over the 15 that we first were hoping for, thinking. And we couldn't get a contractor to agree to even do that job. And once again, the veterans' organizations themselves turned down the offer. They did not want that facility. So we went back to the drawing board, said, well, we've got this land. It's, you know, we're moving out of there eventually. It's worth a lot of money. I mean, this, it's nice, in a great location. What about that? That same organization, Tunnels to Towers, loved the idea. I know they loved the idea because I was driving home last week, and I heard their CEO being interviewed, and he was talking how excited he was about new land and projects in Florida. He's talking about our project that we stepped up and voted for. So coming back to, I'll just use family as an example. If I had a teenager and I'm about to buy them a $10,000 used car that's got well over 100,000 miles on it, and, you know, Aunt Mildred says, you know what? I'm going to buy your kid a brand-new safe car with zero miles, right? I would take that car, if there's no strings attached, I would take that car, give it to my teenager, right? And then I would be smart with the money that I had left over to do other things that helped the family move forward. And that is simply the situation here. We are getting well over what we ever could have expected or dreamed for, for our investment and what we're doing, and we're also doing other great things. And I do want to point out, if you're going to call someone out and say that they're not doing enough for others, you're barking up the wrong tree, you're going the wrong direction with Commissioner Ballard. She's done more in her short time on this board than I've seen anyone else do for helping the homeless. She's got other projects that she's spearheading. Each project on the commission, I can't go out with two other commissioners and say, hey, let's go talk about this and do this together, because every meeting under sunshine law, we have to notice and have all you available here to come to. So that's not an option. So someone has to do that particular project. And our homeless initiatives, she's been taking the lead on, and we appreciate it. And I think that the public at large, when they know and hear the actual facts, appreciate the same thing. Sorry for the long speech, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sir.
That's all right, sir. I'd be very wary of Aunt Mildred's strings, though. You never know. You'll be over the house helping all the time. All right. So why don't we then jump into consent? We usually take a 10:30 recess, so let's, we can get consent accomplished before then, though. So it's consent agenda minus item eight, 19, 24, and 25. We'll have, entertain motions, and then we will, there are 19 people to speak on consent? Oh, minus, minus eight, 19, 24, and 25. We'll see what we get. You know what? Let's take our recess now. And, and then we will return and take up consent. So we're in recess for 10 minutes.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. And we're moving right along with our regular meeting here today. We're actually going to jump ahead to item number 84 because young, where are we here? Yeah, he's, yeah, he's waiting and got to put him to work. So we're going to appoint Kerry Knight as the Director of Property Management. We have a motion on the floor.
We do.
Well, I wasn't entertaining motions at the time, so we don't have a motion on the floor. We're going to bring forward Kerry Knight as Director of Property Management, item number 84.
Brian Parnell, Deputy County Administrator. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Clegg, Mr. Bishop. I'm here this morning to introduce our prospective Director of Property Management, Mr. Kerry Knight. Mr. Knight comes to Manatee County with a diverse background in leadership, project management, and entrepreneurship, having worked in the private sector, business ownership, and most recently as the Director of Project Management for Monroe County for the past eight years. He's been a, he has a Bachelor's of Science in Electrical Engineering from Iowa State University and a Master's of Business Administration from Louisiana State University. He is also a project management professional and certified lean practitioner. Mr. Knight served in Monroe County as the Logistics Section Chief during Hurricane Irma and as the Deputy Operations Section Chief during the pandemic. He's an active member of the International City County Management Association and National Association of Counties. He recently earned a Master's Certificate for High Performance Leadership Program developed by the National Association of Counties. Mr. Kerry Knight.
Hi, Kerry Knight. Commissioners, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Clegg, any questions or anything you'd like to ask of me?
I'd just like to make a statement. Logistics in Monroe County has to be a pretty entertaining, challenging job. That's, that's the keys, if I'm correct, right?
One road in, one road out, yes.
It simplifies matters to some extent, but it probably complicates them as well.
Well, we landed a lot of military aircraft in the Marathon Airport after Irma to bring in critical supplies for those that decided to stay.
All right, good to have that skill set on board.
Quick comment.
Yeah, Mr. Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I really like your, your resume and everything except for you went to LSU and we're both Gators. You've got two Gators up here, so.
Well, it, it was during the pandemic. And, and they were one of the few programs that were 100% online, so, but.
Tough weekend to be brought forward in front of two Gators, though.
Well, I, I will forever bleed Cardinal in gold, Iowa State as my primary.
There you go, Cyclones, all right. All right, we'll entertain motions and then we'll have public comment.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion, motion to approve by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the appointment of Mr., and I, Knight, yes, Mr. Knight, to Director of Property Management? He does seem overqualified, yeah. All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time and we'll conduct the, oh, we can, we can cast our votes on your screens now. Madam Clerk, the item passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Knight, welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, if I may add, I'd also like to bring up and recognize our acting interim Director for Property Management, Mr. Carmine D'Amelio. Mr. D'Amelio stepped in to fill this role back in June, so he's been shouldering the load for six months now as the, as the Director for Property Management. So we appreciate your service, Carmine. And Mr. D'Amelio will go back to his role as Deputy Director for Parks and County Grounds with Property Management. So, thank you, sir. And I'd like to just present you with this property management ace coin.
Commissioners, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Clegg, thank you very much. You know, when a, when a coach assembles a team, they put, they, he or she strategically puts players in positions to be successful. And in this case, Kerry is put in a position to make us more successful. So he's got my support, he's got the department's support, administration's support. And I also want to recognize Deputy Director, my counterpart, Tom Yager, he was along on this ride with me, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you all, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, here's the plan. Well, at some point, I got to make a plan. This is, this is quite an agenda here. So, item number 88, discussion of Lorraine Road and Players Drive intersection. I know, and I'm not going to call it right now, but I'm going to at least let them know what the plan is. We will do that at 1:30 when we return from lunch. That'll be a time certain. Yeah, lunch is in 45 minutes. So, so first of all.
Unfortunately, guys, if we stick on this calendar, it'll be the end of the day.
Yeah, as it is right now, you're looking at four or five o'clock, so you're welcome. And it'll enable us to make it through all of these consent items, and then I will pull you as soon as we come back from lunch. So, all right, then we are going to go to consent. So consent minus items number eight, 19, 24, and 25. Consent minus eight, 19, 24, and 25. We'll entertain motions at this time. The motion by Commissioner Ron to approve, seconded by Commissioner Cruz. We'll open consent up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board?
Mr. Chair, we do establish order in here. People can't hear.
The meeting is still in session, folks. Sorry, so consent minus eight, 19, 24, and 25. Public comment, sir, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board on today's consent agenda, minus items eight, 19, 24, and 25.
So for the record, Glenn Gibbina, I'll be talking on three items, five, 87, and 90, so I'll take three minutes on each. So number five is outside counsel for a federal lawsuit. Now, I looked into this case, and it appears to be a code enforcement case that was brought against this property owner. There could be no negotiations, no settlement, and he appealed it to the federal court. So now we have to have outside counsel at 350 bucks an hour, and God knows what that's going to take, but this tells me two things. It tells me that the current laws on the books apparently are not strong enough to handle a federal appeal. This is going to be very, very, very expensive for the citizens. Another thing I bring up is, is that anytime you try, that you can't negotiate, there's a failure on someone's part. We're talking about a $200,000 lien on his property that can be either reduced or minimized or worked out. I mean, you know, every time we do outside counsel, it's about billable hours. That's all they care about. Look at the dam. We won a million dollars, legal fees were 900,000. It's crazy. So I would, I would urge this board to move forward. The second project I want to talk about is the Nest. Right, and I'm talking about agenda items, right? So you can restart my clock there if you want. This project is a home run. Mark and his team are leaders in the community for affordable housing and has consistently shown that over.
It's literally number 86. It's on regular agenda.
Right, I'm talking about regular.
You can't talk about it.
Talking about consent.
This is consent.
Anything on consent?
This is consent.
It's not consent.
It's on the regular.
So 90 is on consent? Can I talk about 90? No. Well, when can I talk about them?
When it comes up.
Okay.
86 is on presentation schedule, so it is.
Probably after lunch, all right.
Yep.
Would anyone else like to come forward to address the board on today's consent agenda, minus items eight, 19, 24, and 25? Consent. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment on consent. We have a motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Turner, and Mr. China Smith is listed for consent. Are you here today, sir? Oh, you're going to talk about Robbins Apartments? Okay, we have you listed in the wrong place. Good to see you, though. All right, so no one on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. And we'll start moving through the items that were pulled from the consent agenda, starting with item number eight, which is, I'll introduce the item, approval of Manatee County Public Library System Circulation Policy. It was removed by Commissioner Ballard, so we'll turn the floor over to her. Ma'am?
Thank you, Chair. So I, I actually, I, I removed this item for a couple of reasons. One is to give a little bit of recognition to our, to our library staff. So I had asked, I had asked library staff to kind of work, work with us to try to give parents a little bit more control and choice over, over the things that their kids were able to access within the library system and while still making sure that the library remained a free and open place with all viewpoints represented. And so that's kind of a, an interesting line to walk. I know that our librarians are very committed to intellectual freedom, which is a, which is a really good thing, but I really wanted to make sure that, that parents who were concerned about their kids having access to inappropriate materials had a mechanism to, to provide a little bit more control over, over what those kids were able to access in the library system. And so I, I thought it was a good thing to, to highlight the, the great, I think, compromise that, that we've reached here and just to explain a little bit more. And I think the other, the other issue that I think has gotten a little bit more attention is the all-access pass from, from the school district. That has now been moved to, to an age-restricted pass automatically. I've gotten some questions about whether parents could sign at the school when they're, when they're signing up at the beginning of the year to have, to have that moved to a typical adult-style pass rather than a parent having to specifically come to the library to make that change. So I was wondering if that's something that we could address as well.
Hi, everyone. Tammy Parrott, Library Services. It's good to see you all again. Yes, that is exactly right. They can make that change at the school or they can make it at the public library.
Someone is on the board.
I am.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, how is he even going to honestly pull this? It was what it was. Here's my, here's my, sorry, I don't have a problem with it at all. We're getting all these emails. The reality is people act like we're modifying this in some way that's going to prevent people and children from using things. It, it mirrors our own parent choice card. Like, we're, we're not making this more restrictive. It's the normal card that we offer to parents for their, their kids. It's the exact same, like, the, the exact same videos, the exact same checkout, the exact, identical. This isn't any more restrictive version, like, people are kind of implying it is per se. My only, my only concern with this, and again, I wasn't concerned enough to pull it, but it was pulled, is I feel like we're superseding another authority here by unilaterally changing an interlocal, and, and this is more of a broader thing than this. This is a, we have a library card, and, and we determine what we do with our library cards, whether it's the, the parent's choice or just the general library card. That's the county library card. In my mind, the all-access is effectively a one-way reciprocal, reciprocal card, similar to like Sarasota using our libraries vice versa. This is essentially the school board's library card. The school board said, I want my own library card via all-access, they can use their ID, and this as what we're, the school board members going to allow our kids to have, and we're, we're superseding it. We're saying, no, we're restricting your library card. I, I feel like this should be the school board's decision because, again, this is all-access. The rest of it's fine, but the school board had a work session. I watched it, you know, I don't know who else watched it, but they had this discussion and, and it was basically, two of them were on one side. One, one school board member wanted all-access shut down entirely, like, get rid of it, make parents go to the library and do it. One school board member wanted opt-in instead of opt-out to effectively get rid of it, to make parent, if a parent's going to go opt-in, they might as well just get a library card. And two were on board with full open access, and then you had the inevitable one in the middle, which is kind of how that school board's set up right now. So instead of them making a decision, because that wasn't a voting meeting, it's almost like they kicked over us and said, you guys make this decision for us because we can't decide and we don't want to get yelled at over here, so you change, you, 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 the Board of County Commissioners, unilaterally change our interlocal agreement for our all-access pass. I would much prefer having this school board, whose all-access pass is, make this decision, vote on this decision, they had a work session on it, and then come back to us and say, this is what we, the school board, would like you to do with our interlocal. I will happily agree to anything that school board wants, it's their decision. Their arguments were, they're pulling books out of their library, they're afraid their students are going to come to our library and use it, and they're somehow implicated if the student uses an all-access pass. This is their decision, not our decision. That's my only problem with this. I don't have a problem with the structure, I don't have a problem with the outcome, I have a problem with the process because I don't want any other taxing authorities or independent authorities thinking that we're going to unilaterally supersede their authority on their behalf. That's my only problem with this, I, I think this is a, should be a school board decision, and we will honor their decision. That, that's it.
Thank you, sir. All right, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding item number eight on today's agenda? Item number eight. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. There's no one on the board for discussion. The motion was by Ballard to approve, the second is by Satcher. We can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Next item pulled from consent was item number 19. I'll introduce the item. It was pulled by Commissioner Ballard, I'll hand it over to her after the introduction. Authorization to Advertise Request for Proposal, which is an RFP number 23-R082884-SAM, Solid Waste Franchise Hollers for Manatee County. Commissioner Ballard.
So as I was preparing for this meeting, I, I was looking over the, the previous contracts, the, the First Amendment and then the Second Amendment, and then I also looked at the, at our, at our ordinance that we have here in the county on franchise agreements with authorized collectors for collection service, which is section 2-16-22. Generally, I think that overall people have been happy with the service that they have been receiving, and I'm a little bit concerned about where we're going to end up if we go out for the full RFP. I, according to our ordinance, we have the ability, so we're at 15 years with our current agreement. So started in 2008, was amended in 2016, and then now in 2023, we have amended again to take us out to 15, so we're at 15 years now. Our new agreement takes us out to 17 years. But according to our ordinance, here's what we can do. This is much smaller than I thought it was, sorry. Okay. I really should just bring this up. Hold on, I'm going to have to pull it up because I, I cannot see it on my phone, I'm getting old.
Is the ordinance the procurement policy?
No, it is not. Yeah, so it's a lot, we have fun here. Okay, 2-16-22. Okay. Such franchise agreement shall be exclusive, and the term may be for up to 15 years, provided, however, that such agreement may provide for renewal for up to an additional 15-year period following a full public hearing, during which the authorized collector's performance and all terms and conditions of the agreement may be reviewed, altered, or amended by the county. So just, I, obviously, I'm not in the county attorney's office, but on its face, this looks to me like we have the ability to take this agreement that we have currently, adjust it to whatever our needs are for the next 12, 13 years, and, and keep it going. So my proposal would be to table this for today and to have the county attorney look into it a little bit further and make sure that my, my inclination of, of our ability here is, is correct, and, and see if we have the ability to continue on with, with our agreements that we have currently and adjusting them as, as the needs of the community are today.
Thank you, ma'am. Turner and Satcher are on the board. Commissioner Turner.
Yeah, I'm kind of glad this was brought to our attention and that Amanda pulled it off. You know, on, on the surface, it was, it was on the consent and you kind of brushed over it, but at the end of the day, constituents are getting choked out with inflation, so the concern if this goes out, RFP forbid, it's a high likelihood that these, it'll be an increased expense. So I guess if we're, if we're extending the existing contract, it seems like we have a good relationship with the existing contract. So I guess my question to you guys would be, is it procurement policy? Is it fairness to the private vendors? That's the concern, because on the surface, it looks like if, if, if that's the concern, we're kind of negating the concern of increased fees to our constituents that are already getting choked out with inflation. So maybe you can, what's, is the, is the push for the RFP out of our policy, because I don't know that piece? Procurement policy?
Good morning, Commissioners, County Administrator, County Attorney. So we were oper, we are operating off of an October 2020 legal response that provided that said that we could not renew the agreement for an additional term. So that's the only reason why, and then we brought back the extension to you guys for that amendment number two for approval, to extend it for the two years with the intention to give us time to issue the request for proposal. That being said, it is not a procurement policy or any guidance under procurement. Again, we were operating under the legal opinion from the county attorney's office.
So with, with Amanda bringing this ordinance to our attention, I mean, in your guys' opinion, would that, would that reduce our risk for increasing fees to our residents?
So what I might be able to provide is that.
You could make a promise of a specific dollar amount for a 10-year extension.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying that, obviously, because you can't do that, but if we're putting it out for bid in these times, I think there's absolutely no way that these fees aren't going to go up. And perhaps the other way of looking at it, if legally we can pursue the extension, it's, it seems to me we're mitigating at least the risk of a real hike.
Jake, you mind if I answer or at least chime in, because?
No, no, forget it.
There are four of you. There, there are four of you who weren't here during this, this process the last time. Commissioner Satcher and Ba and I, and I don't remember if Cruz was on board with that or not, but we, we pushed hard. We wanted an extension. It was literally in front of our faces that if we left the, if we opened up for a new contract, there were requirements that came in as a result of, like it or not, the, the current administrate, federal, federal requirements under DOT, under Buttigieg, that required us to purchase specific vehicles that were propane-powered and, I, I don't know, they ran on fresh air, right? And, but it costs a lot more. And so as, as a result of that, it was going to cost, it was, the, the cost was going to be absorbed, $500,000 per truck, each holler needed 85 trucks, this is from two years ago, but those were the general numbers. If we could extend the contract, it would have saved us exorbitant amounts of money to have, to have extended the contract, but we were told that we couldn't. But to be honest, now we're operating in an extension that we were told we couldn't have. I don't necessarily want to have the whole debate again, but, I mean, Satcher was on the board at one point, took himself off, I was surprised. I figured he was, he was like rabidly wanted the extension last time, and I'm sure he still does, as do I.
No, he'll chime in at the last minute here, don't worry.
Yeah, he'll, when we're done, then he'll hit his button. But, I mean, I'm sure with James and I, you're going to find support for an extension all day long because it's going to save a ton of money, and inflation is killing us and regulations are killing us, and, you know, people are, like you said, people are feeling it.
I would like to start a motion that we explore the extension. You know, if that ordinance is correct, I think it mitigates our risk of a, of a rate hike, so I'd like to, however we word that, start the motion.
If, if somebody would make a motion along the lines of like, instruct staff to pursue a long-term extension for solid waste collection, I would second that.
I've been here, because this is, this is a highly litigious area.
Sure.
There's a lot of money involved, and I would advise against making a motion today. You don't need to. If you want us to go back and look at this and report back to the board, we'll certainly do that.
So with all due respect, sir. So, with all due respect, sir, policymakers on this board have been down this rabbit hole before with solid waste. I am not walking away from this without giving specific direction to staff and yourself on what we want. Because I am sick and tired of this specific issue coming back before this board and not being what we asked for, and it is litigious, and it is a lot of money.
Well, I'm standing by my legal advice.
That's fine. I would still like for someone to make a motion to direct staff to...
I'd like to make the motion.
Long-term contract.
You can word it.
I would like for someone to make a motion that says, direct staff to make, to pursue and draft a long-term extension for solid waste collection with the existing haulers.
I start the motion.
I'll second that.
So, a motion by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding an extension to the existing solid waste contracts? Sir, first and last name, county of residence, you have three minutes.
For the record, Glenn Giblina. So, we're talking about an extension for services. So, here's my problem. Unjust enrichment by the Utilities Department. So, when I get my electric bill, I pay for the electric I use. When I get my water bill, I pay for the water I use. But when I get my garbage bill, I get the same flat rate everyone else does. I'm very conservative. I compost, I mulch, maybe, maybe every other week, I go out with a 30-gallon bag to the garbage. My garbage guys stop twice a month. Unlike most of you guys up there, some of you got five kids, 10 garbage cans, twice a week, right? And you're paying, so I'm subsidizing your garbage, and that's unjust enrichment through this. So, why am I getting charged the same fee that all you are using way more garbage, more resources at the landfill, and that truck has only got to stop at my house twice a month? And they got to stop at your house twice a week? That needs to be adjusted. The second thing, I pay my garbage bill in advance, but because of the increase, I was $4 short. You know what my new bill said? $5 late fee on a $4 bill, right? It's 125% interest. Most companies say it's, you know, $5 or 10%, whatever is less. Not you guys. You wouldn't care if I was 25 cents late. You charged me $5. That's a bad policy. Those are mafia rates. You guys need to, you know, and you use my money all year, because I pay it once a year. I try to pay it all upfront, and I fall a little bit behind, you hammer me. Unjust enrichment. In fact, I should be able to opt out of garbage, because I'll take my bag over to 7-Eleven and throw in their dumpster every other week, for the record.
I'd like to comment.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to comment. One quick comment, one quick comment, Kevin.
And a lot of other, a lot of folks feel the same way about the school system, because they don't have children in the system, but we're a society, and that's how we operate. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the motion on the floor? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. Commissioner Turner, I have two other commissioners on the board ahead of you, sir, so you have to put yourself on. Commissioner Cruz, Satcher, and Turner.
Yeah, first, I'll just respond to Glenn, since I'm already on the board, I wasn't good. Everyone pays garbage. I mean, it's just what it is. We have a lot of things like that. I mean, it's just, I mean, we can't pick and choose. We actually had a long discussion about at least getting closer to what you're asking for, because right now, part of the problem with our existing garbage, and in theory, depending on how a long-term extension goes, is we have unlimited yard pickup, we have the once-a-year big dumpster you can get dropped off, unlimited bulk pickup. That's where everyone's subsidizing, because I haven't used any of those things ever in the history of my time here in Manatee County. But we're all paying for that. That's something we, as a board, discussed, and all kind of agreed, hey, we need to make those à la carte and lower the base rate for everybody, which does get you closer to what you're looking for, because then it's just pure garbage and recycling pickup, and everyone pays their own way, so the slum lords can get their dumpster if they want it, and the landscape companies can get their unlimited yard if they want. So, we are working towards that to the extent we can finalize a contract that was previously discussed. As for the rest, I guess my question is, you know, if we're going to direct you to pursue a long-term extension again, what's our timing on this? Because I know some of these take a long time to go through, and this current extension runs through '25, right? It was a two-year extension that started September, October? October 1st, so fiscal, we're going on fiscal years. So, we have until '25. What's our realistic time? Because we had a contract, it expired, we extended it for one year, that expired, we extended for one year, expired, extended for one year, expired, ran out of extensions. That's when we came into the last round and had multiple work sessions on this earlier this year, to come up with a permanent solution, which we then negotiated a two-year extension to allow us time to rebid out to find a long term. And now it's like we're trying to do another extension. A long-term extension isn't an extension. A long-term extension is a contract. Extensions are six months, one year. Long-term extensions are acknowledging to our existing waste hauler that you are the only person we're even negotiating with, so we're going to give you a competitive negotiating advantage, because you know we're not competing your bid against other people's bid, because we're extending it to you, but it doesn't give them any obligation to extend based on current rates. It's opened up for discussion, and that discussion could be rates, it could be service provided, it could be trucks and equipment. So, basically, what we're doing is making a motion to direct you to negotiate a single source, a long-term contract with a single hauler, and eliminate other potential competition from creating efficiencies in terms of lower prices. I don't know, because I'm asking, I'm asking, because I'm okay with starting that discussion, but what's our realistic threshold? Because at some point, if those, if that extension discussion doesn't go well, if it's going the wrong direction, if they come back and say, I want to double my rates because of inflation, I need new trucks, at some point, we're going to have to, you know, pull the cord and stop that, and open up a real bid process if these aren't going. What's our real timeline? Because if we have until September 30, 2025, we're running out of time.
Christian Collins, Commissioners, Mr. Bishop, Mr. Clegg, if we make no changes to the existing contract and work out an extension, we can pretty much run right up on that contract extension time and have a smooth transition. If we want to pick out changes in this contract, we have to have about a 12- to 14-month transition period, meaning I would have to have a contract in Jacob's lap by probably June, July of next year.
With somebody, for a long term.
Correct.
So, if we, I mean, if we're going to direct staff to pursue, do we want to set a timeline to this? Pursue in the next 90 days, best effort pursue, but, you know, so that if that fails, this is open-ended? I mean, are we going to continue pursuing this extension all the way up until next May, and then say, oh, it didn't work, or this is super expensive, we really need to reach out to the other options? Then we say, oh, there's no time, and now they really have us over a barrel?
What if we ask them to sit us down individually in 90 days for a briefing on where we are in the process, and then if any of us is unhappy, we bring it to the board?
Just based on what I've heard in briefings and work sessions over the last year with all of you, I have a hard time believing that we're not going to make any changes to this contract.
Oh, you're making changes to the contract.
100% making changes. I don't, I think we all agreed to those changes last time. The only real sticky point was the once or twice a week, but everyone agreed on the landscape stuff, the bulk stuff. I mean, those are changes that were, at least I'm going to expect us to make for the sake of people like Glenn.
RFP on the street, probably two months.
So, should we add to the motion?
No, we could just tell Evan, he needs to sit us all down individually in 90 days, and tell us where we are.
I'm okay.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Satcher, you're next on the board, sir. You're getting your extension, it sounds like.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just want to, once again, go back to a little bit of the history. From everything I've heard behind the scenes, once we go, if we go to an RFP, a request for proposal, brand-new contracts compared to brand-new rates that are around the state, from what I am told, everyone will pay more. Whether you're putting out one bag of garbage or well over that, everyone's rates are going to go much higher than what they are now. And that's not, I mean, it's not in my personal best interest, any of our personal best interests that live in Manatee County, and it's also, you know, it's not in our taxpayer, constituents' best interest. So, we really want to focus on affordability, and if in this instance, we have an opportunity to put affordability above bureaucracy, then I am all for it, and I hope we can work it out. And I know you guys are sharp, and so I hope that we can move forward with a good plan that keeps things manageable and reasonable for our taxpayers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, thank you. No one else is on the board for discussion, and we've held public comment. The motion to approve is by Commissioner Turner, the second is by Commissioner Satcher. We can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right, we're going to move on to item number 24, which, did you pull this? I pulled it. Which was pulled by Commissioner Ron. I'll introduce the item. Execution of Agreement Number 23-R083329-CD for Investment Grade Energy Performance Audit for Guaranteed Energy, Water, and Wastewater Performance Savings Contract for Advanced Metering Infrastructure. That's a lot. The item was pulled by Commissioner Ron, so I'll turn the floor over to him, sir.
Chair, I'd like to find out if we can open 24 and 25 at the same time, since we have public works and...
I would love to.
...up here.
We'll also open item number 25, which is Execution of Agreement Number 23-R081706-CD for Investment Grade Energy Performance Audit for Guaranteed Energy, Water, and Wastewater Performance Savings Contract for Lena Road Landfill Methane Gas. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I don't know who I'm going to address, Evan, or Jake, or somebody. Real quick question on both of them. I know we're using Johnson Controls. That'll be the contractor for the work being both done on the meters and the gas at the landfill, or the propane gas, where we're collecting the gas. My question as one is, on the meters, can you tell us, you know, we're looking for efficiencies, correct, on the meters? And when we go to this type of meter process, where it's going to be basically automated, correct, where they're going to, we can see them from where we're at, or whatever, so we won't need really meter readers anymore. Can you tell me what you anticipate the efficiency rate will go up, and how that will affect the reduction potentially in water rates? Because if we're going to have better efficiency, then of course, costs should come down. And what is the timeline, overall timeline, to replace all of them within the county?
So, Evan Piluchowski, Deputy County Administrator. The rates is a difficult question to answer at this point of the process. The reason why we want to pursue an energy audit is to really look at what sort of savings there could be available if we pursue this advanced metering infrastructure. Based upon some anecdotal, back-of-the-envelope analysis, really what we're looking at is being able to replace our infrastructure in a way that could pay for itself. Our meters are extensive. We have a lot of infrastructure out there, and by doing it in a way with the advanced metering infrastructure, a lot of that information is sent through cellular signals, where we can send a far smaller number of meter readers out into the field. We won't be able to get rid of everybody, because there's still going to be some meter installations that we need to do, there'll be some manual backup readings that we'll need to do. So, we'll need to repurpose a lot of those folks that are meter readers today, but it is a difficult position to hire. But I don't have a firm number of how many millions of dollars we could save. By moving forward with this energy audit, we would be able to answer that question, though.
And then, how fast do you think the energy audit is going to be completed?
The energy audit itself, do you...
Hi, Katie Gilmore, Utilities Department. I believe we're looking at about a year or so for each of these. It should be in the contract, there's a schedule. So, it'll take them about a year to go through everything. Johnson will come back to us and show us if there is a savings, if the projects are viable, and at that point, we would decide to move forward and do the project or not.
Okay. And does Johnson Controls also, would they be the ones, once we get to that point, would they be the ones replacing the meters, or do they use a third-party or...
They will use a subcontractor, yes.
Okay, all right. And then, real quick, on the methane gas collection, we talked about before, this is a great idea, anyway. I mean, methane gases, we need to capture it. The question, a quick question I have is, we're splitting this with Johnson Controls, correct? So, they're going to build the facility, all that kind of stuff, and then we will get an anticipated income from the collection of the gas once it gets converted or whatever. Is that correct?
Correct. There'll be a revenue-sharing portion of this.
Do we have just an anticipated idea, what do you think the revenue sharing would be on our part?
We should have a better feeling come January. This process, the initial process is going to be about three months. I've heard numbers anywhere from $1 million to $5 million, so I can't, don't write that down anywhere, I'm just...
Yeah, I know, I know, anticipation, anticipated numbers, sorry. Thank you very much. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I talked to Evan, I think it was, did I talk to Evan about this? I think it was you that I talked to, maybe it was Jake, I talked to, maybe it was Bishop. I talked to someone about this at one point, because I didn't, I wasn't thrilled with the company that was proposed to be, we're voting on to award the contract. Do we, you know, obviously, not just me, but the whole board has really been pushing for local, local, local as much as possible, whether they have a local, like a strong local presence, whether they're based locally. And then, what is local? It could be from local to regional. And obviously, we're not going to take a company that's incapable of doing a job simply because they're local, and we're not going to grossly overpay, but we've been pushing for some sort of a local preference to some extent on when we award these contracts. It's not a small contract. But in addition to that, because we had a lengthy conversation, in addition to that, and I'm not going to say that everything I find on the internet is 100% true, but it wasn't hard to look this company up on the internet and find some pretty gross violations in their past. Is that something that we look at in the procurement process?
It is, yes, sir. So, we go through the, we go through our due diligence, and we look at the minimum qualifications. If they've met the minimum qualifications, all the requirements that we put in the solicitation, at that point, they'll move forward for the evaluation. So, based on what was provided to us in the proposal, they met all of the minimum qualifications, so therefore, we moved them forward to the evaluation committee for evaluation.
Okay. I'm just going to, what I found fairly easily was a $22,000 fine in 2006 in Florida. It was DEP that fined them for a hazardous waste violation. In 2018, which really isn't all that long ago, in New York, the New York Attorney General filed a suit against them for violating the terms of the contract, and they were ultimately rewarded $341,000. And in 2016, July 11th, 2016, competition-related offenses, a violation of the Foreign Corruption Practices Act. SEC investigation found that a wholly-owned Chinese subsidiary of Johnson Controls used sham vendors essentially to make improper payments of approximately $4.9 million to employees of a Chinese government-owned shipyard, and ship owners, and others, to obtain business and to personally enrich themselves. The Johnson Controls was fined $14.3 million by the SEC in 2016. These are red flags to me. They're concerns to me. Is there a sense of, I mean, we're talking about methane gas at the landfill, is there a sense of urgency here? If I'm uncomfortable, which I am, approving this, is there a sense of urgency if we were to, and maybe I need to turn to the attorney on this, if we want to continue this, or if we just simply want to vote it down and put it back out on the street? What are my options here?
Mr. Chairman, the board always has the option of rejecting something and putting things back out on the street. We build that into our procurement documents, and I assume this is following the same form we've used in other instances, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, that is an option.
Okay. I mean, I've said my piece. I'm not going to just sit here and berate these guys. I'm not really comfortable with them. If the motion is to approve, I'm going to vote no. If someone makes a motion to deny, I'll second it, but I mostly emcee these things, these meetings. I don't make motions, so that's where I am on the subject. I don't see anyone else on the board for discussion. Commissioner Cruz is on the board for discussion, sir.
I was trying to figure out which one to do. There's two of them on my screen. Yeah. Look, I mean, yeah, that's where I was going to go. I mean, I can point to some very big companies here in Manatee County that get a lot of violations endlessly, and pay fines endlessly, but we still work with them. Why? Because everybody in certain industries are going to get fined, I bet you. First off, we're talking about methane gas collection. It's not like we're like, hmm, which of the 4,000 companies that do this should we pick? What is it, like, four? I mean, five, five, okay. Jake says five. Five options. I guarantee the other four have some violations as well. Same thing when we do debris pickup after hurricanes. All of them have violations. First off, if you're dealing with government, you're going to get fined for stuff, you're going to get sued for things. I understand some of those sound bad, but I don't have the legal in front of me to see, okay, what was the context of some of these? But I'm guessing the other ones aren't squeaky clean. I'm also guessing Jake and our procurement team look at things outside of pure numbers. You're not just... outside of pure numbers. You're not just looking at an Excel spreadsheet. You're looking to see if there's gross violations, misconduct, RICO Act violations, things. You're not, you're not putting us in touch with, with the proverbial mob as discussed earlier, you know, to, to do something because they were $4 cheaper. You're, you're looking at the, the overall qualitative and quantitative aspects of a contract, and, and you factor that in when you pick Johnson Controls. So, you know, there is some timeline here because there's tax credits, and that's what makes this viable in its first place. That's why all these companies came falling out of the woodworks to come to us, because, what was it, 2024, end of 2024, that they had to like have shovel in the ground, and there's a lot of permitting and process to go up. So there may be a, a few days, but there's not, let's spend the next six, nine, 12 months finding somebody else. It's going to run out that tax credit, and then we're going to lose the whole opportunity. So I hear what you're saying. I don't dismiss what you're saying. It's, it's, I wish it wasn't. But I don't think you're going to find anything substantially better. I trust procurement that they assessed all aspects. I'm guessing everyone's going to have something that somebody can pull off the internet, not just for this one, but for a lot of the stuff that we do. So I'm okay with it. Johnson Controls is a very reputable company. They do stuff all over the country, if not all over the world. A lot of other municipalities are perfectly fine dealing with them. Pulling three to five things over the course of a two-decade search doesn't persuade me from not moving forward this. It's too important. This is something I've been, I've been looking forward to, having come back and moved forward from Manatee County since it, we first started discussing it. So I'll, when it comes up, I'll make the motion to, to move this forward however it goes.
And, and to be clear, I, I support what we're trying to do here. I just, I mean, it's just, all you have to do is pull up like violationtracker.com, right? It's like all over the place. No, I did not, because they weren't awarded. You know, I mean, I pulled up the one that I was voting on today. My job is to, to vote today, so that's, that's what I looked up. Commissioner Bearden, you're next on the board, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, I, I definitely have some major concerns as well. That being said, I want to make a motion to deny execution of agreement number 23-R08-3329CD for investment-grade energy performance audit.
I'll second that motion. If you click it on your screen, sir, and then I'll second it. Okay. No one is on the board for discussion, so we will go to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the motion on the floor?
Jack May, Manatee County. Good to see everybody this morning. The reason this came up on my radar was just the, the size of the contract. I, I think the, the methane gas, the, that item is going to be much smaller than the meters. The meters could possibly be, you know, $100 million worth of, of work, and that takes a lot of money to recap or recoup those kinds of costs. The thing that I, I, I found that was, was interesting, because you're right, everybody has issues and fines and, and those kind of things. But when I looked at, since 2000, these guys have had $364 million worth of those fines. That equals about a year. They're at $15,826,87, excuse me, $15,826,087 a year is what they're averaging in fines. So all I'm saying is that I think that, that probably there needs to be more discussion, more discussion between the selection committee. No strategy, no detailed investigation based on very subjective impressions. Bigger must be better is how I took this. And we all know that bigger isn't necessarily better. Sometimes it is. But I think that this is, is large enough, and like I say, that's what captured my interest on this, was just the size of the opportunity here. If, if you read everything in the RFQs, between the two, I mean, it could be, you know, 150 million bucks. And that's, that's a lot of money. And I think for that kind of money, we need to maybe engage a, a little better discussion and look at the people that we're talking to. Maybe we, I don't know what the point difference, I'm sure that they're, they use a point system, I am assuming, in order to decide who's who. I would, I would say for this large of, of an opportunity, that it just seems like we're putting all of our eggs in, in one basket. And so I would like to see more than one basket and the possibility of, of entertaining more than one contractor. These guys are from Ireland. You know, it's one thing to be local, it's one thing to be regional, it's one thing to be in the state, one thing to be in the southeast. But for Pete's sake, they're from Ireland. They've got a worse accent than I do. So, you know, these are just some of the other things that I just think we need to be engaged with. For me, I'm looking for cost savings everywhere I can get them, whether it's in my trash pickup or in the meters that they put on my house. So from a tax-paying, long-term citizen, I'm going to quit.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board on item, items 24 or 25 on today's agenda? Anyone on 24 or 25? Yes, sir.
For the record, Glen Gilina. I didn't know we were talking about 25. So 25 is the water meters. Here's my concern is that we're probably-
24 is water meters, 25 is-
Okay, we're holding them both together, sir. Go ahead.
Right. So, so we're talking about putting electronic meters in residential areas, right? Okay. Here's a problem I have. They're going to outsource it. They're going to outsource it to who? I think there's an opportunity here to get, get ahold of our local plumbers and say, look, we got a big contract coming up here, and you're going to be changing out 100,000 meters probably over the next decade. Every time we outsource, especially from a foreign corporation, you don't know who they're bringing in. I think, I think those changing out the meters, if the county does not have the capacity to do it, probably they don't, they need to outsource it. They should outsource it locally. If they don't have an office in Manatee County and doing business in Manatee County, and we're awarding multimillion-dollar contracts, the folks that are doing that should be from Manatee County, and all those revenues from labor and paychecks and all the other sources should stay within our county. This outsourcing from another corporation, not even in the U.S., I think we can do better. I think we need to go with local installers. I mean, it's, it's, it's a big job. You got to freeze both ends. You got to pull the meter out. You got to put the new one in. Got to do a check on the electronics. I mean, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a 15-minute job. And I think all, all that work could be done locally by people from MTC, plumbers that we already got in town. So for the record, that's my two cents.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else, anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board regarding items 24 or 25 on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one, we're going to close public comment on this item. Commissioners Turner and Ron are on the board for comment. Commissioner Turner.
Yeah, I'd just like to say, like the port, you know, you guys are an exceptional team. So any decision made here is no reflection on our confidence in you. Absolutely. You know what I'd like to, you know, this process, especially with larger projects like this, I'd like to see them not, you know, they cannot get kicked. I think this is a very large organization for a vendor, so there's going to be potshots. I mean, there's just absolutely no way. In, in the same thing, legitimate concern comes up. I wish that there was a way for us to come up with a procedure that we are presenting these concerns sooner so that we're not doing this. It's on the dais, and we've got to stall the process. So maybe there's a way altogether that we can, we can flush these things out a little bit earlier rather than we're punting the project. But whatever's decided here today is, you know, the board will be unanimous. I don't mean to speak for them, but you're a great team.
Thank you, sir. Well said. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A real quick question. If this gets denied today, how long does the process take to restart this whole thing? My only concern is the tax credits that come up next year. Because that's what, you know, that's why everybody's here. That's why everybody's wanting to do all this work, is because of tax credits. So how long does a process take again? And do we have, is there a possibility that tax credits could expire before you bring back a new contract to the board?
Very highly. We, we are pushing the limit right now with this project, meaning a shovel has to be in the ground by, I think it was August of 2024. It's, it's, what's actually 3% of the project has to be completed by the end of 2024, which means mobilization, shovels in the ground, things like that. So that's a very short timeframe from the time a contract's approved to the time we get that tax credit. That tax credit is 30% of the construction cost. If we own it, government sends us a 30% check, whatever that cost is. If the contractor owns it, they send them the check, and then we offset some negotiations with the, with the contract. But if, if it doesn't go, I would say very soon here, it's, that, that tax credit's out the window, just in my opinion.
That all, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I'm still going to just flat-out disagree with this denial. This was a long conversation when it first came up. There was multiple briefings on this during this process. You know, we all agree this is a great opportunity. As you're hearing, this is, I mean, this works because of the tax credits. This isn't like, let's keep kicking this down the road until we find perfect. You're not going, we're, we're, we're passing up good to look for perfect. We don't find perfect. I mean, it, it's odd, because we just approved, moving forward with an extension with a company that probably you could find violations online if you wanted to. That's a very big company, also not local, and I'm sure there are plenty of violations with that company. Great company. I fully support them, but there'll be violations if someone chose to look in that particular one. We approved bonds for permits way out east for the company. Lots of violations, lots of fines. We still approve their bonds. This one, we seem to do a deep dive research into whether or not they had fines and violations on like all of the other procurement we do, which nobody ever seems to bring that up, even though they are, they do exist. There's five options in the world for this. This is one of them. So now we're narrowing it down to four, all of which I'm presuming, or at least a, a chunk of them, also put in for this opportunity. So we've seen them before, and this was chosen as the best one. So that means we're probably going to have spending more money or getting less benefits to use somebody else based upon a qualitative aspect that was already assessed, probably similar to the other people. And what's going to happen is, this is going to take months to rebid out based upon procurement processes and rules and regulations. By the time we get to this, it'll be next summer, hit recess, maybe we get it done. Then they have to mobilize and get permits to try to get something done before they lose the tax credits. And if they lose the tax credits, they're going to walk, because it's no longer viable, and there's lots of other municipalities trying to do this exact same thing. There's only so much manpower. I think we're trying to find perfect. We're not going to find perfect. And in the process, we're going to blow the entire opportunity up in its entirety. And then ultimately, we'll have to have a discussion of, do we, as a county, want to pick up the shortfall from the tax credits to keep moving this forward, because there is some validity to it. But it's going to be on the taxpayer dollar, because we're trying to play games with somebody. I, I believe in Johnson Controls. I don't think you're going to find anybody better. What you're going to find is we lose the entire opportunity. So I'm going to vote no on this denial, and hopefully it dies, and I'll make the motion to approve so we can move these two great opportunities forward.
Commissioner Thatcher, you're on the board, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, at just a overhead view, when we're talking about these tax credits and 30%, you know, if I, if I build a home, the government doesn't pay me 30% back for it. There's a whole lot of things that the federal government is not spending cash money to do. But looks like they're real interested in this. Makes me question if the whole deal actually makes money or not, because we're talking about taxpayer dollars, you know, and then we're talking about a company that's got violations that they've worked out with China. I don't know. This just reeks of, of Green New Deal to me. It reeks of a federal program that makes something that is inefficient and does not work for the, the American taxpayer, but they subsidize it by printing money, which is wrong. At the same time, while they're turning down pipelines that would be able to provide in us to use our own natural resources. But this one doesn't make money on its own. It's, it takes the government to subsidize it. So I'm not excited about this. I'll be voting with the motion to deny. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz.
I'm just going to, this has nothing to do with this. It just has to do with the comments made. And, yes, that, that's great. That, that's true. There's lots of subsidies for lots of things, whether it's from growing corn and soybeans to buying an EV vehicle, but they're printing the money. They're offering this as an opportunity to get these types of programs in place. We have the methane gas. We've had this discussion. We had a long discussion, and ultimately, we voted in favor of moving forward with this procurement in the first place. At the end of the day, it's accretive to the taxpayers of Manatee County. It's effectively free money for the taxpayers of Manatee County. We're talking about trying to trim down trash costs and water rates. Know how you do that? You create free revenue streams from methane gas that's burning off doing nothing. We're monetizing something we already have with a contract. And in doing so, it allows us to lower Glenn's tax, or trash bill and lower Jack's water bill through this. If we decline this because of some perception that our policies and our politics, we're, we're, we'll die on that hill and we'll kill something because it's Green New Deal, or California likes it, or China, and we lose that money, now you go talk to the Glens and the Jaxx, we're going to explain how their rates are going to be higher. But we stood, we stood firm on not building a plant to capture our methane and come up with more efficient water meters. It, it's ridiculous. It's, it's a bad argument to make. There's lots of good arguments to make on this. That is not one of them. Unless you want to go tell all the citizens in Manatee County, you're going to cost them more money to stand on your personal principles.
Over the life of the company, they have 35, almost $36 million in labor violation fines as well.
I think Manatee County has that, too.
Doubt that. Commissioner Ron, you're on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quick, if this, the tax credits were to expire, and we're going to build this on our own at this point, how much more is going to cost the taxpayers in light of being able to use those tax credits that we have? Because we, we've all agreed that having, capturing this methane gas is, is a great thing to do, and it's what we want to do. And you see other counties doing it, and they're benefiting from it. My concern is just, these tax credits again are, I mean, I understand it might be free money or whatever, but it's still a tax credit. I mean, I love them when IRS gives me a tax credit back. But, so I'm just concerned about what the cost would be if we did this on our own without those tax credits for either the meters or, I mean, or for the methane gas.
Again, Christian Collins, Deputy Director of Utilities. If, if we did not involve a contractor, Manatee County decided we were going to build this facility ourselves, it's probably a 40, 50 million dollar facility. Johnson Controls is the, the current winning company now, is basically telling us, they're going to come in, Manatee County doesn't pay a penny out of pocket for the entire life of the contract, and we will give you a revenue source every year till the end of that contract, which is potentially 40, 40, 50 years right now. And on top of that, if we get it in the ground within the next year, it's a 30% tax credit off of that, whatever that 40, 50 million dollars is. I mean, it's significant money, and it's significant money that Manatee County does not have to pay. And in, in light of them coming on our site and doing this project, we still have quite a bit of oversight. It's just not our county utility staff letting this company come in here and do stuff. We have an engineer of record who is highly skilled in these gas projects, SCS engineering, who's, or solid waste engineer of record, who will be heavily involved in overseeing this entire project, permitting, compliance, and all aspects there.
Yeah, it seems to me that we, you know, we want to do this dance, but we don't, do we want to do it with this devil? I mean, realistically, I mean, is, you know, and if we stop this process now, we're just going to be behind eight ball even further down the road, correct?
Or you wait, more cost goes up.
Yep. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Bishop, you'd like to weigh in, sir?
Yeah, Jake, well, there was multiple submittals, correct?
Yes, sir.
You have the ability to go to number two?
Yes.
Without putting it back out on the street?
Yes.
You could have said that 20 minutes ago.
Yeah. Yep, that, that would have been very helpful.
That's what I'm here for.
Can we bring it back, can we bring it back to the next meeting, or as opposed to doing this on the fly?
I'll defer to Jake on that, if we can bring it back to December 12.
We can most certainly give it a shot, yes.
So what will you have to do, Jake? You'll have to sit down with them and negotiate agreements, basically.
Correct.
And that's where, that's why they can't do it today, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do, we need to-
And the motion would allow for that, I think.
We need to move forward with the motion on the floor to deny, then?
24.
Yeah, what they do-
Well, we-
We have 24 now.
We need to clarify that motion when you're ready, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Ron is back on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Quick question, Jake. Between number one and number two, what was the point difference between how you scored them?
So the evaluation committee scored them for the renewable natural gas. It had number one at an 88.67, and then number two was 72.
Oh, Jesus Christ.
Would you like AMI, too?
Huge drop. So close.
Number three was 70.33.
So almost the same as two. So number one was substantially and meaningfully higher than everybody else.
Yeah, when you, when you don't pay your employees, you defraud people, and you work with the Chinese, you can get an advantage and a leg up on the American companies working hard. It's amazing.
They don't even care about the taxpayers.
Hey, Jack, hey, Jake, sorry. Just for our information, who sits on our evaluation committee?
So this committee was Christian Collins, Catherine Gilmore, and Bill Bowers.
Okay. We don't have anyone else on the board for discussion. We have held public comment. There's a motion on the floor to deny item number 24. We can move, the motion was by Bearden, seconded by Van Austin Bridge. We can cast our votes at this time.
Wait, Mr. Chairman, before you do that, I think Commissioner Bearden's intention was a motion to deny both. Is that correct, sir?
Yeah, but I'm holding them individually, 24 and then 25.
Okay.
We're conducting the vote.
I didn't, I didn't get to vote yet.
We're conducting the vote now. Commissioner Ron, how do you vote, sir?
I vote no.
Commissioner Ron votes no. So the item passes by a vote of four to two with Commissioner-
Where's Cruz?
Wait, four to three, I apologize. I apologize. It passes by a vote of four to three with Commissioner Ron, Turner, and Cruz in opposition. We'll entertain motions on item number 25 at this time.
Motion to deny?
Motion to deny by Commissioner Bearden, number 25, seconded by Van Austinbridge. If we could pull that up. We have held public comment. There's no one on the board for discussion, so as soon as it's on our screens, we can cast our votes. Got it. Okay, we can cast our votes now. And the same result, it passes by a motion of four to three with Commissioners Ron, Turner, and Cruz in opposition. It is 11:44. We're going to recess. We have to be at Kiwanis, so we're gonna recess this meeting until 1:30 for lunch. We're in recess. Okay, welcome back, everyone, after lunch in our regular meeting. Mr. County Administrator, I'll go to you first, because there's a little bit of housekeeping we needed to do after we denied 24 and 25, items 24 and 25.
Yes, sir. Would you please make a motion, sir, to direct staff to negotiate in good faith with the second bidder for items 24 and 25?
I need a so moved.
So moved.
Second. So a motion by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Van Austinbridge, to direct staff to move forward with the second place bidder in the procurement of items 24 and 25. We'll open this up to public comment. Anyone from the public like to come forward to address the board regarding the motion on the floor? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time, and I think we can do a voice vote. No one's on the board for discussion. Giving you a second. That's okay. We'll do a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
All right. Madam Clerk, it passes by a vote of six to one with Commissioner Cruz in opposition. Motion was made by Commissioner Ballard, it was seconded by Commissioner Van Austinbridge. Yes, ma'am. All right, then, as promised, we're gonna jump ahead to a Public Works item, which is a discussion item. Mr. Butzo is here from Public Works. I'll introduce the item. It's discussion on Lorraine Road at Players Drive intersection. Mr. Butzo?
Good afternoon, Board. And I am here roughly 11 months, almost to the day, from a time that maybe some confusion started with this project, and I was part of the, a little bit of that confusion. So Lorraine and Players, it's a major intersection on Lorraine Road, already a four-lane road, highly traveled road, increased recently with the opening of Lorraine Road south to Fruitville Road, was slated in our capital improvement project for signalization. Along about December of last year, December 6, 2022, to be exact, change order came to the board to add funds for design efforts, and ultimately, unknown, incorrectly presented, represented by me at that meeting, said that was all that we were doing. At that meeting, the scope was transformed from a traffic signal to a roundabout at that time. And then we have been at approximately at the 50% plan stage. At this point, we had a neighborhood meeting in September, so we have roughly equal 50% plans on a traffic signal improvement and a roundabout improvement on this particular intersection. We had that neighborhood meeting in late September, the heaviest and largest attended meeting that we've had of any CIP meeting in the past year of several that we've had. So a lot of public involvement, a lot of passionate people on both sides, and we're here to discuss the pros and the cons, and either a recommendation and/or the procedure. Technically, as it sits in the, in the CIP, the project is slated as a roundabout, with a full total budget of $4.7 million. As an introduction to the, to the item, the current estimate of where we left off at roughly the 50% plans for the traffic signal is in about the 1.4, 1.5 million dollar range to construct. Other funds were spent on design getting to that effort as well. There had been concerns along this area longstanding before even the project was added to the capital improvement project of noise concerns for many properties on the west side of Lorraine Road due to the increased traffic on Lorraine Road as well. So that is not something that is in that lower cost of 1.4, 1.5 million dollars right now.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, Commissioner Cruz, you're on the board for discussion. Go ahead, sir.
So it started as a light at one point, and then it became a roundabout somewhere along the way, and now it's presently in the CIP as a roundabout, based upon that change was about 12 months ago, or?
Yes, sir. It was at the December 6th board meeting last year.
Okay, so about 12 months ago, it switched from a light to a roundabout. Where do you all, where's your team? Because, again, my complaint internally, and I've met with people on both sides, long meetings to discuss both sides of this, but I've told both of them straight up, I'm not a traffic engineer. I never claimed to be a traffic engineer. I don't know the difference between a street light and a roundabout, other than the fact of how to drive around them or through them. I can't say which one's better. I feel like this is outside the scope of a policy decision. This is an operational decision. We have operational staff that are specialized in this. We hire some of the smartest people in the country to come work in Manatee County, because they know which one's better. Why did that change a year ago, and where does your team stand today relative to the light versus roundabout discussion? I know it's in the CIP. I'm not asking you to stand behind whoever the CIP is. I just wanna know where your staff is, because sometimes CIP things change, not because you guys think it's the best idea, but because somebody up on this board, or a majority of this board, asked it to be changed. That doesn't necessarily mean you agree with the change. You just do it because that was policy. So why did it change from the light to roundabout? What led to that, and where do you all stand today on it?
It was definitely a high desire, high priority of the previous district commissioner to make that option. Speed management along Lorraine Road was the major effort, and the intention of why a roundabout would do additional benefits than just the access management of a traffic signal. When you ask about our current position on that, we have come a long way, like many people within Manatee County, about just the general opinion of roundabouts. We, including my staff, Scott and Clark, were very negative on that multi-lane roundabouts up until the, call it the reasonable success of the 64 roundabouts, the Rye Road and the Greyhawk Pope roundabout. Since then, we have definitely come around that even the multi-lane roundabouts can be successful. That said, when I apply it to this specific location, you only can, you can only hang your hat on the total statistical analysis that say a roundabout will physically eliminate the severe accidents. That said, at this location, I don't have a large accident history here of anything. So is there, is it really preventing something that's already happened, or it's there? It would end up being the only roundabout that is on this entire corridor. In many of the other places where we've successfully entered in the process of implementing roundabouts, we usually will have a series of them as they go along. Proposals on Erie Road, I have at least two of them working in tandem at proper spacings. On 64, there's at least three being put in by the state between Lorraine and Greyhawk Pope, and then there's three more proposed to go further east within their capital improvement plan. We're coordinating on the, when the widening of Bornside Road goes from two to four-lane roads, at least two between 70 and 64, another one down at Masters, so more of a combination, so it's driver expectation. This is a roundabout series of controlled roadway. Does it have to be that way? Absolutely not. It doesn't have to be that way. In this case, because of the idea that there's not a significant accident history at this location, the primary reason of justifying the warrant was to provide safe and reasonable access for intersection control for the turning movements from the side streets. Both projects would absolutely serve that well. If I come down to my, also my responsibility is to try to serve up as many projects can serve the people in the area, we have looked at other things, and potentially with the lower cost of a traffic signal here, there could be two to maybe three, depending on how much savings there was, could be four additional interim traffic signals that could be installed at other intersections that aren't currently funded, but would be thoroughly justified in the area. So those are the things, when I come, when you pin me down for an opinion, I have to state what my assumption or my worldview is on when I give you the answer. Both projects will absolutely work and serve this intersection. What is the best for the moment? Is money your priority? Is total safety long-term your priority? Happy people your priority? I can give an answer for every one, but I gotta have a worldview to give an opinion.
You sound like you're up here.
Good job, Chad.
That was a really good no answer to my question. All right. So why did we do streetlights? Are they smart lights, or just regular? Well, it doesn't matter. On the other side of Country Club, I mean, we have, we have streetlights going in, not roundabouts on the-
Oh, I'm sorry, traffic signal. Those are terminology, sir.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Why did we do that instead of roundabouts on the Lakewood Ranch side?
Those, at the time, when they was, were entered into the CIP, they're almost timed about the same way, or a whisker earlier than where Players was. So that predated any of our opinion that a roundabout on a four-lane road was probably a good idea. So we, at that time, when our mannerisms, when we proposed signal, intersection control, we were only focused on traffic signals if it was a four-lane road.
Okay.
Now we, now we absolutely review both as an option.
So you, as a collective board or a group, don't have a preference between one or the other? You're basically just saying, in theory, roundabouts are safer. I mean, there's studies to that effect, but are they meaningfully safer in light of an intersection that isn't necessarily a, like, the Greyhawk intersection was incredibly dangerous. I mean, we literally had multiple people die. I live there, and we had multiple occasions of actual fatalities. You don't really have that here. You got some bang-ups. So to you, it almost looks like it's coming down to a dollar amount, and best bang for a buck relative to, can we do two or three lights throughout the area as opposed to one roundabout?
It is hard to ignore, you know, when I see the difference in the cost on this particular project.
And I can kind of guess where you're leaning without you leaning, forcing you to lean that direction. Okay, good enough.
Thank you, sir. So Commissioner Turner and Mr. Bishop are next on the board. Mr. Bishop, do you need to go before Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate with Chad, we had a traffic light.
We had a traffic light in the CIP. He was asked by a former commissioner to look at the options. He did. I had a discussion as early as this morning with Clark and Scott, Scott May, who said the traffic signal is the best option here, because it would, there is no other roundabout on this particular road. Also, the cost difference Chad alluded to, we could benefit greatly by reallocating the savings for other priorities in Commissioner Turner's district.
Okay. And Commissioner Turner, you are the district commissioner. No pressure, but I'm Wes Bradenton. I don't really have a dog in this hunt, so I consider you sort of, it's unincorporated, so I consider you sort of the mayor of Lakewood Ranch, so I'm gonna follow your lead on this, sir.
Well, I really think, what are the-
Well, I really think, what are the regrets, man? I'm just kidding. But you, Richard, should be ashamed because you're a roundabout people in the front row. What happened? I do want to allow, I do want to allow citizen comments before I chime in, just so that you have a chance to present your case. Without trying to discourage, you know, people coming up and speaking and being heard, just, I do want you to realize there's three members of this board that sit on the MPO, so we're very familiar with statistics and things like that. Secondly, those emails have been hitting all of us and a lot of emails. Roundabout folks, I know you feel like Nancy Haza's group is a whole lot more organized, so she's more heard. Not so. We've looked at your statistics and of course, we're familiar with them because overall the county favors roundabouts for those reasons. So I don't want you to feel that there's a disservice because you feel the room's full of red, you've been heard, and we hear all the cases. What I would ask out of respect of everyone's time in the room is let's not duplicate or reinforce this message over and over again, because that's been done via email and everything. So I'd like to give you guys a chance to present, and then at the end, as Commissioner of your district, I'll, I'll chime in if that's all.
All right. So we don't have any other commissioners on the board at this time. Two people signed up. We'll start with those folks. Richard Garrett signed up and Grant Pies. And I know it's redundant for the two of you, but please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and then you'll have up to three minutes. And as Commissioner Turner said, for those folks who are, you know, as you, as you come up, you don't have to take the full three minutes to duplicate what the person in front of you said, but just make sure you get across to us which position you hold, and anything new, of course, please add. So, sir, first and last name, county of residence, you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Richard Garrett. I am a Manatee resident. I'm also an avid cyclist with over 7,000 miles so far year to date. I ride Lorraine Road many times. We heard the mention of the MPO. I am on three different citizens committees. One of them is the Bike Ped Committee, the Citizens Traffic Safety Committee, which I'm missing this afternoon, as well as the Vision Zero Committee, of which I'm a co-chair. I am also on the board of the Florida Bike Association, which is truly an honor, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and share my thoughts with you. Member of several of the bike clubs in town, representing over 1,500 cyclists. I ride with most clubs, and I believe cycling is a major draw to Manatee County from the Visitors Bureau in my discussions with them. It is my educated opinion that the roundabout as currently designed will not be safe or comfortable for vulnerable users and thus not consistent with the objectives of complete streets and Vision Zero, which I believe this commission has approved as one of their objectives. The number of cyclists on the road has increased far more rapidly than expected, and it is important that we endorse mobility for all users, creating comfortable, safe, destination-based bike infrastructure, working coherently with automotive traffic. In other words, share the road. Thus, I support the intelligent traffic light solution, which is less expensive and safer for vulnerable users. I'm not in favor of the roundabout primarily because in looking at the design, drivers, when they're entering the roundabout, are looking to the left. They are not going to look at me as a cyclist merging in from the right. And therefore, while roundabouts are safer in most cases, improperly designed roundabouts do not protect the vulnerable users. And because of the lack of right of way, I believe this roundabout would not serve that purpose of being comfortable and safe for vulnerable users. The National Cooperative Highway Research Program Report 1043, A Guide for Roundabouts, emphasizes that slower roundabout speeds are likely, are the key for safety for driving, walking, and cycling. We all agree that we want to have safe, comfortable routes. The research report says that 30 miles an hour is a maximum entry speed. Keep in mind, Lorraine is over 40, and the maximum is not appropriate at this location because it is a residential area and Lorraine is a very popular cycling route. With slower roundabout speeds such as 15 miles an hour entry and 20 mile an hour entrance, the research report states that there'd be much better motorist yielding to vulnerable users, as well as the severity of the crashes would be much less. Off, the off-road cyclo, cyclo, I'm sorry, excuse me, the off-road sidewalk option is totally unacceptable as it requires going very slow, stopping due to right angle turns, sharing the sidewalk with pedestrians, waiting to cross the crossing gaps, and poor motorist yielding at crossings, which we see as a major problem on the legacy trail.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Pies, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. My name is Grant Pies. I'm a...
Just kidding. Go ahead.
I was fast.
You were quicker to react than the previous guy, though.
I'm a Manatee County resident. I'd like to discuss the design of the roundabout and how it does comply with the FDOT design requirements. The opponents on social media and elsewhere, I'm sure in the emails, they've argued that the space just isn't large enough for a roundabout. That's based on their own measurements, though, not an engineer's measurements. I have a design here.
Yep, keep going, we'll get it up.
Okay. Their, their argument is mistakenly based on a two-by-two roundabout. That's a larger roundabout. That's obviously not what was supposed to go in there, was never what was supposed to go in. And instead, they're, they've designed a two-by-one roundabout. And this roundabout, after the engineers and the planners have looked at the space and the traffic flow pattern, that's what they've settled on. And the FDOT and the National Highway Guide, they all talk about this type of roundabout and how it's best suited for this type of intersection where you have a larger flow of traffic along Lorraine and you have more lanes. And on the crossroad at Players Drive, you have just a single lane and less traffic flow. So the engineers have looked at this and they've decided that this, this design is the best, and this is the design that was, is supposed to go in there and would fit in that intersection. And also, the opponents have argued that the roundabout is somehow flawed because it's offset on, it's closer to Country Club East. That too, in the National Highway Guide, they mentioned that an offset actually isn't a flaw, and the engineers are encouraged to use their own judgment whether to offset a roundabout based on several things like the size of the intersection, as well as the way the lanes enter and exit the traffic circle. So we can see that the, the design has been set out by the engineers. As Commissioner Cruz, you mentioned that they're the ones that we should rely on as to what's best in this intersection. And they've determined that there's actually space enough for this. So any arguments for a lack of space or an offset are just erroneous, and we shouldn't replace their judgment with the judgment of just a small group of residents. I'd like to further point out that I found a list of 23 roundabouts that are set to be installed in Manatee County. And actually, almost 20% of those are replacing traffic lights. And so they're ripping out the traffic light and they're putting in a roundabout at 20% of these intersections. And the fact is, you're never going to find a roundabout being replaced by a traffic light. It just doesn't happen. That's because they're more efficient, they're safer, and that's the way to go at this intersection. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right, those are the only two that, and well timed, they were the only two that signed up. So then we'll just sort of open this up to the audience, so in a kind of orderly fashion, no pushing and shoving. So anyone who would like to come forward to address the board at this time. Let me just form a little queue of two or three people in line there so we can just kind of keep things going. Yes, sir. So remember, when you approach the podium, state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board.
My name is Charles Faber. I reside in Manatee County, Country Club East. Among the reasons the anti-roundabout contingent opposes the roundabout option are the increased construction costs. The simplistic approach of focusing only on the startup cost falls far short of a true and accurate cost-benefit analysis. Utilizing the National Cooperative Highway Research Program, Roundabouts: An Informational Guide, in Chapter 2.2.7, in quotation marks. Although the initial construction costs may be more, a roundabout can have less operating and maintenance cost than a traffic signal, and the service life of a roundabout is significantly longer, approximately 25 years versus 10 years for a typical light. Roundabouts also provide a lot of savings due to the reduction in crashes. Recently, the state of Michigan, which completed the most comprehensive review of roundabouts versus traffic lights in the last decade, determined that roundabouts reduce traffic delays by 63%, the annualized fuel savings per vehicle was 69%. But interestingly, that converting an existing intersection to a roundabout generally resulted in benefits six times greater than the cost of the conversion. As an important aside, I feel compelled to add that. As an otolaryngologist and head and neck surgeon for 46 years, I have witnessed devastating injuries caused by automobile accidents. Red light intersections are particularly horrible due to the high impact and speed involved versus the low impact speed crashes around the bouts. This has been documented by multiple studies and those of the Insurance Institute of the Highway Safety. Imagine telling the parents of a 21-year-old college student that their daughter had just died in an intersection collision when she was only stopped at a light. The loss of a young life is devastating, not only for the family directly involved, but also for the community as a whole. Knowing that such a tragedy could have been avoided by implementing a roundabout intensifies the grief and regret felt by everyone involved. Personally, the emotional impact of witnessing a preventable death at a red light has caused a heavy burden for everybody involved. I know it has for me. Saving lives, in my opinion, trumps all the other arguments presented here today. I beseech you to vote to save lives, prevent horrifying injuries, when we all have a well-proven safer alternative. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Don't be shy, folks. And you can, like I said, you can form a, you want to start forming like a queue behind him of three or four people, kind of helps things move along. First and last name, county of residence, sir, and you have three minutes to address the board.
David Wiegand, I reside in, sorry, David Wiegand, I reside in Manatee County. In 2015, Florida ranked as the number one state in the country with the most intersection-related traffic fatalities. The great majority of these accidents occur when an aggressive or inattentive driver runs a red light, striking T-bone style another vehicle operating with the right of way. Two such T-bone accidents have occurred in our area over the last month alone. The first at the traffic light controlled intersection at Lorraine and Masters on October 11th, and the other at the intersection at Lorraine and Players on October 28th. I have pictures here of those wreckage for the commissioners to review. These are the type of intersection accidents that carry the greatest potential for death and serious injuries. In response to Florida leadership's call for action to reduce fatalities associated with intersection-related crashes, the FDOT developed an Intersection Control Evaluation, or ICE, manual. Section 2.3 of the manual requires the evaluation of certain alternative intersection designs whenever a signalized system is proposed. Per section 2.2, the specified alternative intersection types to be evaluated include a roundabout, a crossover-based design, or a U-turn-based design. For the dictates of the ICE manual, the proposed traffic light was reevaluated, and it was determined that a modern roundabout was the better mechanism for reducing serious intersection collisions while significantly increasing traffic capacity. All commissioners agreed with that during a meeting held on December 6, 1922. Funds were redirected to that effort, and planning for the project has been underway for the last year. Yet we find, we find ourselves here today revisiting that decision. The opposition doesn't want it and proposes a smart traffic light as an alternative design. But there are two glaring problems with this. First is that smart traffic lights are not among the alternative intersection types identified in the manual to be evaluated, and for good reason. Because number two, it makes absolutely no sense to consider a signalized intersection as an alternative to a signalized intersection, as it does nothing to address or ameliorate the risks of dangerous T-bone-type accidents at signalized intersections that have driven this call to action. I am not unaware of the fact that there are power brokers wielding significant influence and pressure that have entered into this fray and have aligned themselves with the interest of the opposition in promoting the smart traffic light option and suggesting the possibility of certain enticements and incentives in exchange for abandoning the roundabout proposal you have previously and wisely decided upon. Your decision in this matter, however, must be consistent with the overriding call to action and guidance provided to you in resolving this issue. The faithful execution of that guidance, consistent with your duties, prompts only one viable alternative, and that's the roundabout. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Please state your first and last name, your county of residence.
David Stephen, I live in Manatee County. I just want to, I was going to say other things, but most, if it's been said, I just want to make a couple points, maybe by way of correction. A lot of what was written, and I read all this stuff, that's just one of those things I do, talked about whether roundabouts were better or worse, or which way to go on this sort of thing. My sense, having read it, most of that stuff is that the conclusions that these studies reach are generally based on what I call run-of-the-mill roundabouts. That's where you got an intersection with one road going north-south and one east-west, or sort of 90-degree corners or whatever. And those conclusions may be right for those, but that's not what we're dealing with here. Lorraine is a two-lane road, north and south. It has a very free flow of traffic. Players is basically an entry road to Country Club East and Country Club West. It has gates very close to Lorraine. Those gates work sometimes, they're manned, not most of the time. And we already have issues with traffic backing up when those gates don't work in all directions. And I suspect that if we put in a roundabout, you're only going to make that situation worse because cars will get stuck on Lorraine because they can't get into Country Club East or Country Club West because the gates aren't working properly, and they may get stuck going out because the traffic on Lorraine is undoubtedly much heavier and will be forever. So I simply ask that when, if you're tempted to look at studies, then make sure the studies are relevant to the decisions you need to make. And in this case, I'm not entirely sure that they are. I'll make one other point, and I think, I'm not a surgeon or any of those, and I'm not a power broker, so I simply want to do the right thing here. I've done a lot of traveling around the world, and I'm sure many of you have as well. One of the things you'll find, particularly in the UK, but also in France, is that there are hundreds, I think thousands of roundabouts, and they were built at a time when there wasn't much traffic anywhere. As traffic has increased and increased, what you find is in anything that result, anything resembling anything other than a rural area, those roundabouts now have lights at them, and they have for years. And the lights keep getting put in because roundabouts only work up to a certain point. The reality here is that the traffic on Lorraine is going to get heavier and heavier and heavier as development takes place north of 64 and south of University. It's already very heavy, and there will come a time, and it won't be long from now, before you're going to have to put lights in at this intersection because nobody's ever going to get out of Players in either direction. So be careful with this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. First and last name, your county of residence, sir, and you have up to three minutes. You don't have to use the whole three minutes.
I understand fully. David Goldheim, resident of Manatee County. I support the proposed roundabout because traffic studies, contrary to the previous speaker, reduce both serious accidents and fatal accidents. They increase traffic capacity, they reduce noise and emissions associated with stop-and-go traffic, particularly heavy trucks, and this is going to preserve the quality of life for those Country Club residents who live close to Lorraine Road. The roundabout does not pose a significant danger to pedestrians and cyclists. In fact, statistics would prove that roundabouts reduce accidents for pedestrians and cyclists by 10 to 40%. And the pedestrian flashing lights that would go into this roundabout will assure that drivers yield the right of way by slowing down. In addition to that, the slower traffic entering a roundabout is going to advantage cyclists. I'd also like to mention the fact that there's been concern about cross-traffic for golf carts, pedestrians, and automobiles. carts, pedestrians, and automobiles at this intersection. The fact of the matter is that golf carts from Country Club East are prohibited from accessing the Country Club Players gate and aren't equipped with transponders that could grant these access, even if they tried. Further, only a hundred Country Club East residents can access the Country Club Players gate in their cars because they have been issued transponders. Very few pedestrians cross Lorraine Road at the present time. And by Country Club policy, golf carts and other drivers are required to cross Lorraine Road at a traffic light. There's a traffic light at Masters, there's a traffic light at Greenbrook that gives a break in traffic that would advantage cyclists to cross Lorraine at a Players Drive roundabout. So I want to point out that in, that there's another serious problem. The Country Club gate at Players Drive is very short to Lorraine Road. With a traffic light, three, two or three cars can get through that intersection before the light turns red, and, and no more can go through. So that's going to stack traffic up inside the Country Club. A roundabout will create a flow of traffic that will alleviate that. The county's engineers and other traffic professionals have proposed a modern roundabout for this intersection that's been developed from and complies with national and Florida DOT design guidelines, results in improved safety and traffic flows, reduces the speed on Lorraine Road, a critical advantage, and reduces noise and air pollution. I would urge you to vote for a roundabout. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Next speaker. First and the last name, county of residence.
Good afternoon. My name is John Cole. I reside in Manatee County, and I live in Country Club East, and I'm for the roundabout. The opposite, opposition claims that a roundabout at Lorraine and Players will overwhelm the Country Club East gate and cause backups of vehicles all the way out to Lorraine Road. In my ten years living in Country Club East, I've never seen a backup from the residents' lane at the Players' gate that spills onto Lorraine Road. That is because this lane is transponder-operated and efficiently processes up to ten vehicles per minute. However, on occasion, the visitor lane does get backed up due to the manual process of entry. We believe between the two options of traffic light versus roundabout is actually the traffic light that has the potential to make the backup situation at the visitors' lane even worse, and here's why. With the traffic light option, there will be a queue of southbound traffic on Lorraine Road waiting to turn left into the Players' gate entrance. That queue will continue to grow as is being held back by a red light, and upon receiving a green left-hand turn arrow, will spill out into the gate area. It is these surges of potentially large amounts of vehicles in a short period of time that can create and exacerbate possible backups. In contrast, the roundabout option will allow traffic to flow continuously, at a slow speed through and into the Country Club East gate, where residents will continue to use the right lane and visitors the left lane. This will allow the visitors to be processed at a steady rate minimizing backups. If in a rare event a backup still occurs, the driver will have the option, upon seeing a line of cars to continue around the roundabout, exit back onto Lorraine heading south, and enter the community through the Masters' gate just a few minutes away. The opposition also complains that the roundabout will reduce the number of entrance and exit lanes to Country Club East from two to one, and that this will somehow contribute to congestion. This is not correct. Roundabouts eliminate the need for left-hand turns, so naturally, we will no longer need the second lane, the left lane, when exiting Country Club East through Players' gate since all the traffic will be right-turning into the roundabout. Here's a diagram. Here, that shows the single entry and exit lanes of the Country Club East Players' gate with the roundabout. County engineer Derek O'Sullivan explains in his September twenty-eighth email that these single right-turn entry and exit lanes will actually reduce wait times and help expedite the flow of traffic. He points out in his design schematic that the single entrance lane into the Country Club East gate thereafter widens to assure the continuity of both our visitors' and residents' entry lanes. And to the extent that there is any concern regarding the width of that entrance lane, he will make every effort to widen it. And you can see here his mock-up of what's shown in Brad Skallop's area of where that mock, of that, of that width would be.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
First and last name, your county of residence, and you'll be cut off at three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Mike Seifert. I am a resident of Manatee County. I'm also the president of the Country Club East. I'm also the president of the Country Club East Homeowners Association, which has thirteen-hundred-and-fifty-two homes. Roundabouts are not inherently good or bad, okay? It all depends where you're going to put them. And in this location, at the intersectional Lorraine and Players with two large gated communities on either side of the busy road, it's just not a good fit for a roundabout. You've heard all the reasons why, you know, both pro and con, and I'm not going to repeat the majority of them. However, the nut, the primary reason the Country Club East Board of Directors voted unanimously in support of the traffic light had to do with safety. And the reason for that is currently, we have a lot of golf carts, a lot of bicyclists, and a number of pedestrians that try to cross between Country Club East and Country Club. And one of the speakers said, oh, well, golf carts can't get in anyway. Currently, that's true, but there's a reason for that. And if you dig into it, the reason is, Country Club doesn't want golf carts trying to cross Lorraine where there's no light. And currently, there's no light, so currently, for safety reasons, we don't allow golf carts to cross back and forth. A light would solve that problem. There's another issue for golf carts in particular that is a legal issue, okay? Currently, as the other speaker said, golf carts are required to cross Lorraine at Masters and go down Masters, and then typically turn into the Ravelston Gate to get into Country Club East. The problem with that is, that's illegal by your own rules, because golf carts are not allowed to travel on roads where the speed limit's above thirty miles an hour, and Masters is thirty-five. There had been a request a while back to lower the speed limit at Masters to thirty so golf carts could traverse that. That was turned down. So today, what we're doing is technically illegal. Putting a traffic light at Lorraine and Players solves that problem as well. Not to mention, as we've already talked about, the cost differential, it just makes good fiscal sense as well. So I would encourage everybody to consider the facts and vote in favor of a smart traffic light at Lorraine and Players. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Cindy Matthews. I'm a resident of Manatee County. I just ask you all to please keep in mind one key issue with a roundabout. It does require operators, drivers, to move through them properly. If you've ever traveled on Cattlemen through UTC, you know, a lot of times, we do have a lot of tourists, we have a lot of seasonal residents, we have a lot of new drivers, and we have a lot of older drivers. And not everyone truly understands how to maneuver through a traffic circle properly. And especially on Lorraine, where it is a system of traffic lights for so long, I worry that it would be an even steeper learning curve potentially for a lot of the drivers in the area. Thanks.
Sir?
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's John Archer, and I'm from Manatee County. You may gather by my accent, I'm from the other side of the pond. I'd like to give you
Thought you were a Texan, for sure.
...few of my experiences as a resident of United Kingdom for six months of the year. As you will have already gathered, United Kingdom and a lot of Europe have had roundabouts for years, absolutely years. I'm a cyclist in Britain. I find roundabouts way safer than any other form of activity. The accident figures prove that, have done for years. The point a previous speaker made about putting traffic lights on roundabouts, a big city like Milton Keynes has got hundreds of roundabouts, I can think of two roundabouts there that have had traffic lights put on, and they're really multi-access roundabouts. I don't think that would ever apply to this particular roundabout. To me, it's a no-brainer that you have to put a roundabout in here. Cost-wise, in the long term, it's clearly better and safer. It has to be. I just think there is no doubt about it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ma'am?
Good afternoon. My name is Ledmila Cole, and I reside in Manatee County. The opposition proposes installing a smart traffic light with all the sensors, cameras, monitors, and predictive real-time algorithms. Unfortunately, the reality is not that simple, nor is it that smart. These systems are very costly to maintain, with regular system upgrades, replacements of parts, and repairs needed, all these requiring highly-trained and highly-paid personnel. To operate properly, they require a constant connection to a cloud-based database, which is problematic when there are outages and server glitches. They activate based upon a threshold number of vehicles detected waiting in line, but they are notorious for undercounting those vehicles when the spaces between them are small. For example, two cars close together may be counted as one car. As a result, when the light turns green for that very limited time, vehicles often speed through to assure they're not caught by the fast-approaching red light, and sometimes even run those red lights thereby actually creating a traffic hazard. And lastly, a smart traffic light still works on the concept of red, yellow, and green. The reality is, people do and will continue to run red lights at high speeds, causing severe and potentially deadly accidents. My husband and I have two teenage daughters, one is driving, and the other soon will be. Safety and speed calming on Lorraine is most important to us. A roundabout is the best option for both of those goals. The opposition argues we need a smart traffic light since a roundabout is not appropriate due to uneven traffic patterns that won't allow the cars waiting at both community gates to exit at peak-traffic times of the day. This is simply not the case, and here's why. Traffic flows through a roundabout, allowing cars to enter and exit, creating space for waiting cars to make their way in. There are traffic lights already up and down Lorraine Road, as we've mentioned, at University, at Masters, at Greenbrook, and State Road Seventy. These intersections stop traffic flow and create gaps in the flow to allow cars to enter the roundabout. Vehicles entering the roundabout must give way to pedestrians crossing, which will also create pauses in the traffic flow to allow cars to enter in. And finally, since traffic in the roundabout must be dramatically slowed due to the circular configuration, cars trying to enter will have plenty of opportunity to do so safely. Smart traffic lights sound good in theory, but roundabouts are proven to be superior in practice. With a roundabout, we can accomplish all of the safety goals without the need for all the sophisticated technology, associated problems, and associated expenses that come with smart traffic light systems. Thank you.
Neil Stringer, resident of Manatee County. I've only been living down here about nine, ten months full-time, and I've been driving for over fifty years of my life in New York City, in New Jersey, and all over. And I have very little experience with roundabouts, except here. What I can tell you is my experience. I know how to yield my right-of-way when someone else has the right-of-way. I can tell you from my experience, I do not see that happening. So I propose, what is going to happen, and what you will be confronted with, is a massive amount of children, more likely children, getting into accidents because they just didn't do the right thing at the right time. Do I think traffic circles are deadly? No. I know how to use them. Do I think it would save time in a properly-constructed traffic circle? Sure. But do I think little kids are little kids, and do I think older people who don't have the senses and the experience and the ability to see and hear have the ability to give up control of their vehicle for a set amount of time to allow somebody else to proceed legally in front of them? No. Therefore, I assume that a traffic circle, no matter how well it is theoretically proposed to be constructed, and how much it's going to cost, I predict there are going to be a lot of accidents, a lot of kids getting hit, and more kids dying as a result. And thank God, all my kids are grown, but if they come down here to visit grandpa and grandma, they're not going by themselves to the traffic circle. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hi there. First and last name, county of residence.
Hi, I'm Jeff Schellinger, resident of Manatee County. I am flummoxed that we are here today. I thought eleven months ago we would have this resolved. I live in Country Club East, and originally, a traffic light was designed and planned there. And unbeknownst to the people in Country Club East, all of a sudden, it became a roundabout. I don't know how that became possible. I believe the designers were just told, "Design something here," but there was no planning involved. I know you're putting a lot of roundabouts in the county, but you're also putting traffic lights in, I assume. Our intersection is about management of the intersection and traffic flow. We want to do both, but we also want to be safe. I know when we move to Country Club East, we can get out of there safely. Can't do that anymore. If we put a roundabout in, I will tell you, it'll be very difficult to get out, especially making a left turn, out of Country Club East. We currently have two lanes in and two lanes out. This roundabout plan shows we're going to cut fifty percent of our entrance and exit to one lane. It's going to cause backups onto Country, onto Lorraine Road, especially if you're a resident and want to come in. It's going to be very difficult. Then there's cost. You all talk about being good stewards of our finances. County documents now show this roundabout approaching five million dollars. That's a significant amount of money. More than a traffic light several times, taking long to construct, causing great inconvenience to our residents. I'd like you to consider a smart traffic light. Put the money to good use somewhere else, please.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am?
Hi, I'm Nancy Haas. I'm a team leader for the Country Club East Residents Roundabout Committee, and you've seen a lot of pictures, and I'm from Manatee County. And I brought a few of my friends. You'll see a lot of pictures here of the roundabout. I'm going to show you one of the approved design for the intersection, and I want you to know that this is, we are not opposed to roundabouts in general. We're opposed to this roundabout. This roundabout is misplaced in this area. I don't have to go through the history with you of how this happened and how we received no notice of the change, and here we are today fighting something that had already been approved by the county. So let me just give you a few quick facts. I know you've received a lot of information from everyone, and especially the speakers, so let me just add to that, that we are one community. We are Country Club East and Country Club, separated by a four-lane highway. Basically, our residents and the residents of Country Club cross Lorraine Road constantly on a daily basis to take advantage of the amenities, the three golf courses, the dining, the pickleball, the tennis, whatever. That causes a safety concern today without any traffic considerate, or without any alternatives. A smart traffic light would allow for people, the traffic to stop, to allow these pedestrians, these students who get off their school buses and have to cross the street to get home. We have two mil, small elementary schools within a mile or two of this intersection. They ride their bikes, they cross Lorraine. So a smart traffic light would stop traffic to allow that. Yielding to pedestrians may be the law, but it's not happening. In a roundabout, you don't yield, and there are pedestrians that take their lives in their hands. Also, the issue of the golf carts, that roundabouts are known not to be built for golf carts in consideration. The cyclists, we have the four cycle groups, you've talked to, you've heard from them. You've also heard from the president of the Velo, Sarasota-Manatee, the Velo Cycle Group, and the Sarasota-Manatee groups, expressing their severe concerns. and the Sarasota-Manatee Groups, expressing their severe concerns, significant concerns about the safety for cyclists on this roundabout. They use the Lorraine Road constantly. Trucks have difficulty maneuvering roundabouts. They will go up on the curve. We've had a trucking company take a look at that. They will go up on the curve, but they can't see from their cab pedestrians and students who are walking along the side, because they're focusing on not hitting the car that's pulling in front of them. This is the main entrance for Country Club East. There are over 44,000 people who, residents alone, who entered this entrance in one month. That does not include guests or vendors. Currently, it's a two-lane entrance, in and out, for both Country Club East and Country Club. If you break this down to one entrance, you will reduce the amount of traffic that can come in, not only without traffic congestion and clogged, but if you have an emergency and an emergency first responder has to get in, there is nowhere for them to go. And if you're on the other end, waiting for that emergency traffic, your emergency responder, you're going to have a problem. Okay? The backups are significant. They do happen, the congestion, any day during the week, you will see backups on Lorraine Road. We are totally opposed to this roundabout, and we urge you to vote for a traffic light.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you'll have a maximum of three minutes.
Judy Schelg. I live in Manatee County. I quote from the Manatee County website. "What do county commissioners do? The board is a legislative branch and governing body of Manatee County government. The board legislates policy to protect our health, welfare, safety, and quality of life of Manatee County residents. The motto of Lakewood Ranch is to create a great place to live, work, and play. Because of the speeding traffic and the chaos at the intersection of Players and Lorraine that has worsened with time, we, along with our neighbors that have Lorraine Road running directly behind our homes, sadly cannot identify with this motto any longer. It has ruined our quality of life and the joy of the backyards of our homes. I understand that road safety at Players is a priority. It affects all of us living in CC and CCE that use the gates at Players, and it affects all of us that travel Lorraine Road daily, our neighbors, including some neighbors in CCE. We hear the loud noise in the mornings, starting at 6:00 a.m., vibrating our windows of our homes. This is affecting those of us that live on Lorraine Road, our daily lives, our health, physically and mentally, as well as property values." This information is from EPA Environmental Website. "The level of road noise comes from three things: volume of traffic, speed of traffic, numbers of trucks in the flow. The mental health of residents living along busy roads is greatly affected by road noise. Also, physical issues can present by exposure to pollution. We had to disconnect our CO2 alarm when we have our lanai doors open. For those of us living directly by these EPA-stated issues, we agree with the findings of Public Works that a roundabout is the best option to improve the Lorraine Road issues. The speeding will continue. A smart light would remain green if not triggered. A roundabout is proven to be safer and will lessen pollution and noise. A roundabout is for the greater good of our entire community. It will calm Lorraine Road. We respectfully ask you to fulfill your role as commissioners and protect our health, welfare, safety, and our quality of life, as stated on the Manatee County website, by going forward with the recommendation of the roundabout. Please calm Lorraine Road for the greater good and the future of our entire community. I thank you."
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. First and last name, your county of residence.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for allowing us to give our opinions. My name is Judy Hamer. I live in Country Club West in Presidio, which backs up directly to Lorraine Road. Lorraine Road from Greenbrook to Masters is a racetrack. I want to tell you, if you, if you, hello? If you try and go 40 miles an hour, you are going to get run over. There is just no question. The noise and pollution, air pollution, is excruciating. I'm going to repeat a little bit about what some other people have said. The Florida Department of Transportation has said that there are 90% fewer crashes with a roundabout as compared to the red light. There are 75% fewer injuries with a roundabout compared to the red light. I have here an unfortunate situation where three, six people were just killed two days ago in Houston because someone ran a red light. I can see, because of where we live and how I can see the traffic running, that people will speed to get through that, that yellow light or that red light. It will, it will cause more speeding and more problems than, than the roundabout. Also, the Florida Department of Transportation says that a red light with traffic stopped and idling is an environmental issue as well. Also, the cost. You say that it costs initially more to put a roundabout in? Yes, it does. But as another speaker said, the upkeep, the, if the power goes out, then we have to have police or somebody there to direct traffic. And another thing I would like to say is, how much is a life worth? If it's a little more of an initial investment, so be it. How much is one life worth? If a roundabout is safer, and the Florida Department of Highway Transportation and the Insurance Institute for Highway Safety both agree and say the same thing. And I just would like to close and say, there is a reason why the roundabouts are becoming so popular. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ma'am?
My name is Hannah Johansson. I live in Manatee County. As was mentioned, CCE contains 1,352 homes. For the 2020 census, there is an average of 2.6 people per home. Given the likelihood that two of these are adults, this yields an estimated adult population of 2,704 people. The anti-roundabout group claims they represent the majority of CCE, but this is not correct. Assuming their number of supporters reflected in the 386 letters of support, of which they have repeatedly reminded this commission, that represents less than 14% of the adult population in CCE. The anti-roundabout group also claims that a survey of CCE residents taken back in May 2022 showed an overwhelming support for a traffic light. Again, this is not quite correct. The survey was commissioned by the CCE's H.O.A. to evaluate the feeling of residents on this issue. The survey was conducted by Survey Monkey via email. Only 47% of households even responded. Of those that did respond, only 54% preferred a traffic light. This equates to an overall support for a traffic light of only 25%. Despite this limited support for the traffic light option, each member of our H.O.A. Board of Directors, all of whom are admitted supporters of a traffic light, recently voted that the traffic light option was in the best interest of all CCE residents. And this brings me to the main reason why I'm here today. We taxpayers have voted for you to be our representatives in resolving issues such as the one before you. Your decisions should not be based on which group shout the loudest or has the most members, especially where, as here, the anti-roundabout group claims are largely based on arguments that lack factual support and are based upon worries that one contributed to the result of safety studies and statistics. We are counting on you, in consultation with you expert engineers, to be our voice of reason, knowledge, and expertise to dispassionately evaluate which of the two alternatives will provide the most efficient and safe option. The community involved is also not limited to CCE and the Country Club, but to many thousands of other people who travel through this intersection. You must do what is right for all of us. It is for this reason that I support the proposed roundabout, which your safety engineers have concluded would result in a more efficient, safer, and eco-friendly benefit over what would be expected with a traffic light. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Sir? And if there's anyone else who would like to speak after him, please stage queue up behind him. Sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Steve Dipsonner. I'm a resident of Country Club East and Manatee County. I'll be very brief. There's no reason, really, to repeat things that other people said. Two points. One being that pollution came up. Addressing pollution, I would simply say that most new cars that are gas, like I just recently purchased a new vehicle, when I stop at a red light or I stop at a stop sign, my engine shuts off, and there is no pollution at that point. Then there were hybrid cars, of course, that shut off at intersections, red lights and stop signs. And of course, last but not least, there are more and more electric vehicles as time goes on. So pollution is just going to become less and less and less over time, as we no longer have fossil-fuel cars and mostly, if not totally, electric cars. In terms of T-bone accidents, I'd simply say that most new cars now come with a lot of safety features, including collision avoidance. So when you get into a situation at an intersection or any place else where cars are coming close together, whether you're alert or not, or thinking about it or not, whether you're drinking coffee or texting or not, your brakes are applied, and those accidents, more and more each days, are not happening. And I'll end on that note. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board? Okay. Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment at this time. No one's on the board for discussion. Commissioner Turner, can I turn the floor over to you? This is sort of your item.
Yeah. I was so looking forward to pulling this off the rack so I could put my foot in this. There's no way I can please everybody on this, obviously. I do want you to know, both sides have been heard, even though the roundabout people don't have their own T-shirts. But in all seriousness, this, it is weighed out, and as Chad politically correctly said, worldview, there's, there's some observations here. The technicalities of design, the statistics, all of these things are valid. Roundabout, let me say this. I'm pro-roundabout. I went to school in England. It's roundabouts everywhere there for a high-density city like I was in. It got me to the pub way faster at 17 years old, which was really important. But definitely pro-roundabout. I think overall, the county, and even though you're calling out Rex Jensen, he's pro-roundabout too. Some of the argument for the roundabout is the contiguous. So what I want you guys to know is, like Commissioner Cruz said, as you've sat in here today, we rely on the experts, the Port Authority to make decisions. We do lean on our staff because they're doing an enormous amount of due diligence. They work really hard on these cases for us. And so, you know, if they're saying a certain thing, regardless of everything that you presented, they've weighed out all of those same things to come to some conclusions. So here's, here's what I want to say. The traffic flow argument, which I agree with, roundabouts do increase traffic flow, and we do have a growing population. Very important for this growth. That being said, in this particular case, like on 64 was used as an example, and that's where I live too. There's two contiguous roundabouts to keep the flow going. In this particular case, and, and we've reviewed it, we've got signals on either side of this roundabout. So the traffic flow argument is watered down because we have signals on either side of this roundabout. The safety concerns, and, oh, we're saving lives and everything, and of course, we want, we're not negating any safety. There are concerns with a roundabout. It's not a design flaw, flaw rather, with pedestrian safety. It is driver habit, in this particular case. At the moment, there's an escalation of incidents with cyclists. We have representation in here for cyclists right now. It's not England. We can't use that as an example here because it's drilled in your head, it's law, it's, you know, you stop. Here, it's optional. You know, you can accelerate and everything. So at MPO, we are seeing that safety piece, you know, an increasing little bit of a problem because of our driving habits, not because of a roundabout. So really, that makes sense. Lakewood Ranch is structured. It touts lifestyle. It touts an active lifestyle. At 1,500-plus members, the cycling community has a voice in this because they do actually use this route a lot. So, you know, it is a concern. We're offering lifestyle, and if they don't feel safe, that's a concern as a commissioner. So, so a bigger view, I want you to understand, we're not sitting out here trying to lean one way or another, and just because there's more red shirts in the room doesn't mean that that's swinging a vote, or because Rex Jensen speaks up. We've got to weigh everything. So let's go through the rest of it, as I see it. There are unique attributes to, to this particular intersection. The cyclist, the golf cart thing, although that's an argument on either side, and pedestrian safety. The contiguous thing I just brought up, active lifestyle, design, we can, you know, we can argue all day, and we can argue all day about the technicalities of either side. When we do look at the budget, and we are stewards of taxpayers' money, there's a $3 million swing. So we can talk about, you know, operating expenses and everything else, but $3 million, we can't wash that out with operating expenses. So I think you can tell where this is going. There's a lot of noise complaint on the west side. You know, this is a really unusual argument because Lorraine runs left and south, and vast majority on the east want signal, vast majority on the right wants a roundabout, which is really unusual. But at the end of the day, on the west side, they do not have sound mitigation at all. On the east side, you do, you have the wall. So what I'm proposing, we've got a $3 million swing. We can, we can appease a little bit more than just this argument with that money. The, the sound mitigation, the wall, is around $600,000, so we can get specific with Chad in a minute if we want. We can easily roll this in. And then, on the west side, we're getting sound mitigation with the wall that matches up with the other side. The other thing is, we do have, we've got, we have four other intersections in, speaking of safety hazards and safety concerns, we have four other intersections that we could probably cure a safety concern that one of them did at a school with the remaining money. So if we look at a bigger view, it really is a toss, 50/50, say, let's say it's a 50/50 on this, but we've got other things to, that we can address. This particular intersection does have unique attributes that lean more towards the signal, I'm sorry to say. So I can't keep everybody happy. But Chad, maybe you can come up and you can say, if you could give me a little more description on the other things that we're trying to, what we want to try and propose is, we're not allocating this money to something completely different to public safety and signals. We want to try and resolve another complaint, which is the noise, as part of the solution and part of the direction that we go. So maybe Rex Jensen has stepped up. He can get us the sound, the sound barrier wall cheaper than we can do it. Is that accurate?
That is the indication that we have. We have never included one in a construction bid, so the only numbers I have to go on are just flat, reaching out to a local vendor that has one. So I do not have historically-proven prices that we can follow.
So I did present it to Rex, and he said he can do it for significantly less. What I want you guys to understand is, the cost thing, as stewards of taxpayer money, is more significant than $3 million because we haven't acquired the land yet. With, the land acquisition isn't even in these, in this money. So there's a lot of things that we can reappropriate in Lakewood Ranch and serve a greater cause. These four intersections, can you just give me a quick update on these four intersections, where they are?
Things that were proposed within the, the most recent, just-adopted 2024 CIP budget. We had a number of locations within Lakewood Ranch that were proposed for intersection control, some as roundabouts, some as traffic signals. We've re-reviewed many of those locations with the developing needs that are in the area. One that is always proposed as a traffic signal was at the intersection of 44th Avenue and Wood Fern. It is adjacent to the elementary school that I cannot remember the name of off the top of my head, but that one has been asked for numerous times by many parents and certainly the school board. The other two locations are also on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. They're at the intersection- The other two locations are also on Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. They're at the intersections of where Wood Fern actually hits Lakewood Ranch Boulevard and Gatewood. They are other thoroughfares that cross between State Road 64 and 44th Avenue. Those are those points of where most of the internal neighborhoods dump out and then make their connection over to Lakewood Ranch Boulevard. The fourth potential location is in that very growing need over at the, the expansion and success at Premier Sports at Post Road and Rangeland Boulevard. We're getting close to where the new library and the additional amenities that would be, being installed over there.
Yeah. So the other concern, if we're talking safety, and we are truly concerned as citizens about safety, is during construction, do you think it's safer? It's, it's not safe during construction of these projects. The traffic light, traffic signal will take about six months. Worst case scenario with a roundabout is 18 months. It's three times the disruption on that road and it's a busy road. So this is another consideration on the macro view of this particular thing. On Lake, on, on Lorraine Road itself, it's, the roundabout's the only one in eight miles. There's no other roundabouts slated all the way down to Fruitville as far as I know, right? It's, well, it's traffic lights now. So it would be an anomaly on this stretch. And in this particular case, we, you know, not like other cases, we've got a state road and a main thoroughfare. We just have entrances into each community and obviously there's an argument for both cases on, on that piece. But the interruption is, is pretty significant too. It's, it's three times the timeframe.
That's definitely shown. We've all watched what went on with the construction of the Ry Road at 64 and then what went on better at White Eagle, I mean Greyhawk Pope and to watch that intersection go a lot better. We anticipate you go through as much rigmarole as you can to keep your north-south alignments open as much as you can, always at least one lane in each direction, but may not always be two at the time during construction of a roundabout. And then on the side lanes, the side streets probably will go through closures that have months in their time periods, not at the same time, but probably multiple months of closure during points of construction.
I think pretty easy. Is there anybody else on the board wanting to?
Yeah, we have Cruz, Bearden, and Satcher on the board. You're doing great.
You can keep going if you want.
All right. Thank you, sir. Then we'll go to Commissioner Cruz. Sir?
Yeah. We, we've listened to everyone, but we've been listening to everybody. And I said this from the start, I'm not a traffic engineer. I honestly don't really care which way we go. I mean, I use that road a fair bit. I live up on State Road 64. I take Lorraine and Lakewood Ranch Boulevard down University for things. And I used to bike on it all the time with the village idiots back when I used to have free time to bike. But again, I'm focused on what our experts are saying and where our budget says. And I'm not saying the budget's the be-all and-end-all. I mean, there's, if something's significantly more beneficial and it costs a little more money and it saves a life or two, then by all means, we're not just going for the low cost. I mean, low cost, we just put a couple of speed bumps in and call it a day for 50 bucks. But, you know, we're, we're trying to make rational decisions based upon our staff. And I listen to everybody and honestly, I heard from both sides. I heard almost equally from both sides, clearly more from the, the red shirt people. But, but I did hear from both sides. I met with both sides. And it's easy to make arguments from both sides. I could sit here and argue whichever one you want. And I don't 100% agree with or believe 100% of what I've heard from the streetlight people. And I also, well, I, I understand where some of the roundabout people are coming from. Roundabouts, I know that they're safer, they're better, but you don't see a roundabout in front of every intersection. I mean, there, there are streetlights going in. As somebody pointed out, this, this is a time and place for both. It's becoming more common for the, for the, the roundabout option to be utilized, which 10 years ago, you just never saw. It was unheard of. I mean, it was a punchline to European vacation. It wasn't a use of, of funds for, for capital improvement. But you're seeing it more, but not 100%. That's why I asked about the Lakewood Ranch side. Why do we put streetlights in? You gave an answer for it. But I, I've heard both. But at the end of the day, my, my staff is saying that all things being equal, they're perfectly fine with a streetlight. My finance people are basically implying we can do it for a third of the cost. It's going to be quicker to, to put in. It's going to be more efficient to do. I don't see a meaningful difference from either side. So rather than just sit here forever discuss this, I'm voting for a streetlight.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate everybody coming up and giving us your opinions, just like everybody else on the board. I've, I've heard both sides. And I'm definitely in favor of the circles, the traffic circles. However, in this case... What's that? Oh, definitely in favor of the traffic circles. However, in, in this case, it's, it's a, it's a little bit different. I drive down Lorraine almost every day. I go to church on Sunday. So I see the viewpoint of the streetlights because I see the bike, the people riding the bikes, the golf carts crossing, as well as the people crossing, pedestrians crossing as well. But by no means am I against traffic circles. I actually like them. However, in this case, I think it's a better fit based on finances and based on the current situation of the particular road, that I'm going to be more in favor of a traffic light. So I have to say, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. No one else is on the board? We have, we have held public comment. I was hoping the district commissioner would make a motion. Entertaining motions. Oh, hold on. Satcher has slipped in.
He's too late.
He was on, he was on a while. Did he take himself off?
He did. Takes himself off. And then he likes to jump on the last second.
The last-minute man comes in.
Commissioner Satcher?
Just since we're about to vote, I'll just go ahead and say, I mean, I think it's the same. They're safer and better. I think there's times where we as a board probably need to provide cover for each other. This may not be that time, but we should look for opportunities like that in the future where somebody may have the toughest vote and, you know, and the rest of us might need to, you know, take some slings and arrows on their behalf. I don't think that's the situation at all, but I just say that now because there'll be more, plenty more votes in the future as we move forward and continue to take Manatee County to great places. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right. Commissioner Turner?
You know, I was hoping that Cruz would take the heat as the at-large, but no, I'm just kidding.
Paying you the big bucks.
I would like to, I would like to make a motion to move forward with signal at this location.
All right. So a motion by Commissioner Turner to move forward with a traffic signal this location. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. Go ahead and click the buttons on your screens real quick, just for the sake of efficiency. We have held public comment. There are no additional commissioners on the board for discussion, so we can cast our votes now. Motion by Turner, seconded by Bearden for the traffic signal. And the results are unanimous, seven to zero in support. All right. And we're going to take a five-minute recess. All right. Welcome back, everyone. We are on to, we're going to jump around a little bit and go to item number 86, 86. Yes, 86 on today's agenda. It's a development services item. Approval of gap funding loan request for the Nest at Robbins Apartments LLC for a 182-unit affordable housing development located at 2303 First Street East Bradenton, Florida, and the principal amount of $3.5 million in execution of an affordable housing project loan term letter. It is located in District 2. Who is here from staff?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Mr. Clay, Mr. Bishop, thank you guys for having me today. Rowena Young Gopee, Affordable Housing Development Coordinator, Development Services. Do you want to put that? Earlier this year, the Board unanimously agreed not to do, continue any further gap funding. However, the last gap funding that was in the pipeline was for the Nest at Robbins Apartments. So we are here today to bring that forward for loan approval. Do you want to go ahead and put that first, please? So just for a little bit of background, the timeline does show from, we've been working with Mr. Van Groff since 2021. We have provided a, awarded the designation in '21. In '22, the developer requested addition, some funds from us in the form of a gap loan. The final site plan application was submitted also in 2022, and the Board provided an approval for the land use restriction agreement. They have received their final site plan and they're actually ready to go. They're ready to build. So we've worked with PRAG to provide a recommendation after we received a credit underwriting report from First Housing, and staff is in support of this project going forward. The request for $3.5 million, which equals out to about $19,000 per unit, 184 units at 80% and below, and 100% affordable. 50 years is the affordability period. And for the proposed terms and the structure of the gap loan, we're looking at 1.75, and this is just based on what we've done in the past, 50% or 50% of the current IRS midterm rate, which is currently 4.69 for the month of November. And that may change based on when we bring the funding applications documents back to be executed. The county mortgage position is subordinate first in line to the senior lender, Synovus Bank. And again, the affordability period is 50 years. The development is located within the Southwest TIF at 2303 First Street East Bradenton in District 2. Let's skip over on those. The development is scheduled currently to develop 34 studio apartments, 74 one-bedroom and 74 two-bedroom apartments for a total of 182. These are the recommendations from PRAG, who's our financial advisors. The application provides an equity of 3.9 million dollars, or part of the recommendation is that if they cannot provide the equity of 3.9, that we as the county would provide the loan to them if it's approved at the 85% of their complete development. That in turn will make sure that we receive a complete project at that time. And staff is in full support. The motion that we're asking for on the board today is to approve the gap loan for the Nest at Robbins Apartments and to authorize a county administrator to execute the affordable housing project term, loan-term letter with the Nest Apartments. And that is in a draw format today, just in case the Board has any questions on those. And we do have the developer here to provide any additional information.
All right. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Bearden?
So how much did you say? Can you go back to the interest? I kind of missed that part. So how much in interest will we be making off this loan? So, how much in interest will we be making off this loan?
So, annual interest is about eighty-two thousand.
Okay.
And that's based on a half of the federal rate.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you, sir. Any additional questions for staff? All right, then we'll entertain motions at this time. We have a motion by Commissioner Satcher to approve, seconded by Commissioner Ron. Does anyone need to hear from the applicant at this time?
No.
Okay. In that case, we'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the motion on the floor? We have a brave soul coming forward.
How come he doesn't have a black t-shirt on?
He has a red shirt on, which seems to be the theme of the speakers today.
Oh, no, no, no.
Sir, if you're here to talk about a roundabout.
I'm not doing any roundabouts, or, or do you call them street circles, wherever they are? It's not me.
First and last name and your county of residence, please.
My name is Mo Campbell, Orange County. I actually run One Stop Cares. It's a nonprofit, five oh one C three, that supports the One Stop Housing communities. I'm currently at Robbins Apartments. We partner with Goodwill for our life coach program. The Robbins is owning studio apartments currently, so this project is very meaningful to us because it'll be one bedrooms and two bedrooms as well, and can continue to support the community and provide those essential wraparound services that are so important. So, I'm all for it.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yep, not all three minutes either.
We appreciate that. And thirty seconds. Sir, first and last name, county of residence, three minutes.
Good afternoon, county commissioners. My name is Stefan Barron. I'm a resident of Sarasota County. I manage the new projects, the development at One Stop Housing, including the Nest. One Stop Housing has a very established track record on providing quality workforce housing for over thirty years. I wanted to voice my support regarding the approval of the gap funding for the Nest project. As you all know, many local residents in Mayotte County are struggling with finding housing that they can afford. This trend, it will get worse before it gets better. The shortage of affordable housing is not only affecting our local residents, but it's also affecting our local businesses and the ability to retain staff. The Nest development provides a solution to the lack of affordable housing units in Mayotte County. The Nest will provide over a hundred-and-eighty new apartments to our Mayotte County residents who need it the most, which is our local workforce. These are newly built, well-designed, and affordable apartments that our workforce desperately needs. Once this project is completed, approximately five-hundred Mayotte County residents will call the Nest their home. With that said, I'm asking for the Board of County Commissioners for your support regarding the approval of the gap funding for the Nest project. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, thank you. First and last name, county of residence.
China Smith, AKA the People's Champ, Sarasota, nine-four-one all day, every day. And I say that with respect. I'm just truly grateful to have this opportunity to represent us tribe, our strong One Stop Housing, and it's like Stefan said, we definitely, it's a need, a cry for, for assistance for the apartments, the additional, and so we're just truly grateful and thank you for accepting our offer, because you know, like I said, so many, for, I do something to head the security, and this, to be able to have the opportunity to see One Stop Housing over the years, being, being able to enhance people, give people a second chance. Right now, we're dealing with people that needs hope, they're losing, you know, that are struggling and can't find a place. There are good people working, but they're, they're not, they're not able to have a photo, a place they can afford and call their home, and we have the opportunity, and we've been blessed, truly blessed, to be able to help provide those opportunities, and again, teaming up with the city, to teaming up with you guys, it will help establish even more. So, it's a great opportunity, and we thank you for allowing the teamwork to make the dream work, and allowing us to continue to fulfill the needs for the missing gaps of people that's looking, lack of home, lack of stability, and it's a blessing to be here. And I wanna thank you again, you guys, for accepting us and approving it, so appreciate it. God bless.
Yes, sir. Mr. Smith, Mr. Smith, before you go anywhere, are you still at Police Athletic League? You still working there?
Right now, yes. You know, I work with the kids, knocking out negativity is one of my special, yes, sir, I'm still there.
Okay, so we, I've been working with the mayor and a lot of good future plans for Police Athletic League coming, so we should get lunch sometime and talk about that. For those of you don't know, China Smith has been over twenty years probably running the boxing program at the Police Athletic League and mentoring our youth in that neighborhood and, and true hometown hero. So, anyway, thank you for coming forward today, and I wanna make sure I recognize you for that as well.
I appreciate it, and, and when you guys started off with the prayer, I know I was at home, because right now, I say, if you sneeze, I'll bless you. We had a position right now, this is a need, you know, and then again, thank you for allowing us to have the opportunity, and what Mark does and our team, we're a small group, but we affect a lot of people.
Absolutely.
And we take the numbers, and Ms. Marie says, I call her the goat. When people wake up and run obstacles away, we run to the, so we come up with a solution. And just looking at the cup half-full instead of half-empty, it gives people hope and opportunity to know that their God is real, and we're real, and we won't stop and can't stop. That's one of my sisters, Stephanie, of our tribe. I love you, thank you, guys. The People's Champ, all day, every day.
Sir, thank you, China. Well, it's a tough act to follow, sir.
You betcha. But I noticed you got a red tie on today.
I do have a red tie on.
That's right.
I don't know the significance, but yeah, oh.
You weren't with the other group?
With the roundabouts, oh, okay, must be my roundabout statement, yeah.
Rick Urquhart, I'm from Manatee County, also with the Sheriff's Office for the last thirty years. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your support for the Sheriff's Office this year, particularly funding the homeless unit, the Resource Assistance Program, which is in part why I'm here. I've worked with Mr. Van Groff for several years, collaborating on other things, and I just want you to know that they've been a humen, humongous, or whatever word I'm looking for, resource for the Sheriff's Office and the homeless program. Many times, we're trying to get transitionally homeless placed, make a phone call to his staff, which is very caring, they understand people's plight, they provide a safe, clean environment. Since they've taken over some of the properties, the crime has actually gone down there through work with the Sheriff's Office, and obviously, you see the head of security sitting behind me here, I wouldn't wanna tangle with him either on his worst day. So, they're just tremendous asset to our community and a great help for us, so any support that you give them would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Yes, sir, first and last name, county of residence, please.
Mark Van Groff, Sarasota. So, thank you very much for, for hearing us out. I think, I think when you look at, we, we've got about four thousand units that we currently manage today. We've been around for almost forty years, so we're kind of a proven entity. The, the loan's not going someplace that's to an unproven. I want, just to show, we, we did Robbins Apartments, which is two-hundred-and-forty units, right there, right next to this property, which is the vacant, next to where we're building the Nest, we had, we went in the last five years, we took it only, we only went up about twenty to twenty-five dollars a year for the last five years, even with all the rising costs, and we've been able to do that effectively. Across our entire portfolio, we did probably over the last five years, a hundred dollars, maybe a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars a month in total is an increase over that five-year period. Robbins Apartments, the two-hundred-and-forty apartments, not only did the crime, actually the stat that I have, went down to by eighty, eighty-five, eighty-nine percent since we took over within the first year, and that was obviously through the help with law enforcement, they've been a phenomenal partner with us in that, but we were dictated, we had Alora, we were told that in the, under the Alora, we have to keep rents at sixty percent, a forty percent of the property is sixty percent. Today, today, a hundred percent of that property is at fifty-two percent. That's, that's what our rental rates are at fifty-two, not because we have to, but because we do it as a philanthropic mission going forward. We hope that this whole property will be, the new property will be under eighty percent of AMI, we hope to do better, but you know, that's kind of the threshold, we always try to strive better, just because there's folks that are really out there and can really use the help. So, I really appreciate the consideration. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board? All right, we're gonna close public comment at this time. The speaking order is Ballard, Ron, and Turner. Commissioner Ballard?
Well, thank you all so much for, for coming out, and this, this project will be in my district, as Robbins Apartments already is. In my career before being elected, I worked a lot with families in crisis, and I, I actually saw several families successfully, or several people successfully move into Robbins Apartments, and it was a great place for them as they were kind of rebuilding their lives, and I, I think that this will, will do the same thing for many people in Manatee County who, who desperately need that affordable housing. The one question that I actually had, Mr. Van Groff, I think you, you mostly answered it, so you know, the whole property will be at eighty percent and below of AMI, which in Manatee County is still a pretty high salary, you know, seventy-four thousand dollars a year. So, I'm glad to hear that, that you are hoping to serve people who are, who are at much lower incomes as well, and that, that eighty percent is, is really truly just a ceiling, and that it's not all gonna be those eighty percent prices for, for folks. So, yeah, I'm, I'm excited about this. I, I think you're a wonderful organization, I love what you do, and keep, keep it moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's great to have two champs in the room today. Our People's Champ, China Smith, who probably still can throw a pretty good punch when he wants to, and our great champion of affordable housing here in Manatee County, and we appreciate, Mark, what you and your family has done over the years. They have a project in my district, which is, helps a lot of folks that can't get to that next level of housing and need somewhere to be to just get part of their dignity back. And what they're doing in the Manatee County is just great, this is gonna be another great asset for Manatee County and for affordable housing, so great to see the whole team here today, who's the People's Champ and the Champ of Affordable Housing, so thank you all very much for being here today, and I a hundred percent support this project.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Turner?
Yeah, affordable housing, workforce housing is a serious issue in, in both counties, both Sarasota and Manatee, so I'm so happy that this is such a great organization that's doing a great job, happy to be able to be in a position to support something like this, so we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, that clears the board. We've held public comment. There's no one else on the board for discussion. The motion to approve is by Satcher, the second is by Ron. We can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it's approved unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right, thank you all so much.
Gavel to People's Champ.
Please, uh, yep. Do exit quietly, we're gonna move on with the meeting here. I'm gonna move us on to item number eighty.
Nice to meet you, my friend.
All right, so we'll go to item number eighty, which is Community and Veteran Services. Authorization to announce investment funding through Children's Services Dedicated Millage. Hey, exit quietly, please, while we wrap it up. Thank you. Authorization to announce investment funding through Children's Services Dedicated Millage in fiscal year twenty-four for the launch of the Sleep Baby Safely Initiative in Manatee County, and to accept applications to review and consideration through the investment process, investment process of the Children's Services Advisory Board. Who is here from staff?
Hi, I'm Kristi Hagan, Children's Services Program Coordinator. Commissioners, Mr. Clay and Mr. Bishop, I'm here to hopefully present this. I had Dr. Vega here this morning, he had to leave, and Mrs. Schingle Decker also had to leave, so I will do my best if you want to know more.
Do we have any additional, we've all briefed on this, do we have any additional questions? And it's presentations upon request. Anyone like to request a presentation? Okay, hearing none. We'll entertain motions. We have Commissioner Ron has made a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from, anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding item number eighty on today's agenda? Anyone for item eighty? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna close public comment, and we can cast our votes at this time with no one on the board. And it approves, is approved unanimously by a vote of seven to zero, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item number eighty-one, under Development Services. Adoption of Ordinance Number two-three-dash-one-three-one, amending the automatic sunset date for the Port Manatee Improvement District. Oh, it says it's been deferred.
Yeah, there's no need to take any action on that.
No action on that. I wish deferred was at the beginning, but that's okay. Property Management, item number eighty-two. Adoption of Resolution R-dash-two-three-dash-one-six-seven, vacating a portion of a platted right-of-way known as the two-hundred-and-thirty-seventh Street East located in Mayaca City, Florida, three-four-two-one-one. It is in District One. Would anyone like a presentation on the vacation?
No.
Okay, hearing none, we'll entertain motions. We have a motion by the District Commissioner Satcher, seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We'll open it up for public comment at this time. Would anyone like to come forward to address the board regarding item number eighty-two on today's agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment, we can cast our votes at this time. Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Item number eighty-three, Adoption of Ordinance two-three-dash-one-two-one. Updates to Parks and Recreation Ordinance, Chapter two-dash-two-four of the Manatee County Code. That is under Sports and Leisure. Would anyone like a presentation on this one?
No.
Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain motions. There's a motion to approve by Commissioner Turner, seconded by Commissioner Ron. We'll open the item up to public comment. Would anyone like to come forward to address the board on item number eighty-three on today's agenda? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. No one on the board for discussion. There was someone signed up for public comment, John Archer. Did I miss John Archer? Okay, just making sure. We can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. That was Turner with the motion and Ron with the second. We've already conducted item eighty-four, so we'll go on to item number eighty-five, under Community and Veteran Services. Adoption of Resolution R-dash-two-three-dash-two-zero-two, authorizing submission of the amendment to the HOPE ARP allocation plan. Would anyone like a presentation on item number eighty-five? Okay, seeing no one, then we'll entertain motions on item number eighty-five at this Is it frozen? Is anyone making a motion? All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Van Austin Bridge. We'll open the item to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding item number eighty-five on today's agenda? Item number eighty-five. All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Motion was by Cruz, seconded by Van Austin Bridge. We can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. We've already conducted item number eighty-six, so well, then we'll move to item number eighty-seven. This is under Natural Resources. Approval of the Manatee County Appropriation to Gulf Shellfish Institute for All Clams-on-Deck Project and Adoption of the Budget Amendment Resolution B-dash-two-four-dash-zero-one-four. Would anyone like a presentation on item number eighty-seven? We've already had a full presentation at a previous meeting. Hearing none, we'll entertain motions. We have a motion by Commissioner Turner to approve, it's seconded by Commissioner Satcher. We'll open item number eighty-seven up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward and address the board regarding item number eighty-seven on today's agenda?
I would, just briefly. I want to.
Are you, are you a member of the public, sir?
I, I am.
Please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you'll be allowed three minutes to address the board.
Stephen Hesterberg, resident of Hillsborough County. I just wanna say briefly that you have a tremendous natural resources department, and I wanna thank Charlie and his entire team for their hard work over the last year getting this executed, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Is that a twenty-dollar bill he handed you before you stepped up? You, you are correct, though, we have a great natural resources department, Charlie does a wonderful job. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and address the board? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time, and we'll conduct the vote, as there's no one on the board for discussion. Motion by Turner, seconded by Satcher, and it is approved, Madam Clerk, unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right, that concludes the regular agenda. Then we get down into Commissioner Items, Agenda Items, which by the way, Commissioner Cruz used to be called Commissioner Comments, but it is now on here as Commissioner Agenda Items. I thought the wording of that was better than Comments. We'll start with item number eighty-nine, I'll introduce it. County Policies Regarding Timing and Extent of Clearcutting. Commissioner Cruz, it's your item, sir.
Sure, this is something I talked to Development Services about, and I actually brought up a while ago, and didn't go anywhere, and then these past couple of months, it's seemingly gotten crazy around here. With clearcutting, developers are just scraping land, sometimes ten, hun, ten if not hundreds of acres at a time, for seemingly no reason. It's, it's just a cheap way of developing, it's a lazy way of developing, it's getting rid of all of the existing trees and vegetation, but it does it well in advance of when the stormwater protections are going in, and it's just leaving these barren dirt fields at, at almost no cost, 'cause our tree fund is basically like virtually free to cut down a tree. So, you know, we got, I started getting calls from people in waterline because the development- getting calls from people on waterline because the development just next to them on Stair Road 64 had clearcut everything and just let all the water flow out into these people's backyards over and over and over again. I'm guessing you probably got similar calls. You know the same person because of clearcutting. And then, we started getting calls about a project out west because they clearcut, and it was creating dust all over everyone's house and affecting their air conditioning. And then, I started seeing pictures and getting pictures sent to me on Bornside about people clearcutting around there, and you couldn't even drive down the road because it's getting out of hand. And we have no policy. I've talked to our Development Service, what policies we have. And then, I started talking to some commissioners in other counties. And for instance, Santa Rosa County just passed some new ordinance. It's very, like, rudder than we are county. And they said enough's enough with what they were seeing, which is very similar. And so, they like substantially increased their price per tree, especially on the grand oaks and the big, like, prized trees. They limited what percent of land that could be scraped. They adjusted how you can do it. Because right now, what you get is people who go and they clearcut it before they come to us for rezone, because if it's ag, you have a lot more flexibility. The reason for that is you're supposed to be able to clearcut to do agricultural work, like grow something. But what they do is they clear it as ag, and then they come to us and rezone it for some planned development the very next day and say, well, it's already cleared. No trees. Don't worry about that. Well, there has to be some regulations. If you're going to clear it under an ag exemption, it should have to remain ag for some five years or something like that. Better plant some corn on that thing if you're going to use a fake loophole. So, all I wanted to do with this motion was any discussion to the extent, but really what I wanted was just the board to allow us to authorize Development Services to look into some best practices and come back to us in the new year with some suggestions on things we can do to help minimize the negative effects all this clearcutting is having on neighboring communities in Manatee County.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as you guys know, where I grew up, West Texas, the sand blew, and we had habu, they call them habu, sandstorms, right? You couldn't even see the sky. I mean, it was literally just brown. Yeah. The, you know, the place where you see the movies where the tumbleweeds are, you know, going down the road. One of the things that we did was we had a sand fighter that would roughen up the ground so that if it did, it wouldn't, the sand wouldn't pick up, and it would blow in some cases. Now, out there, the wind blows 60, 70 miles an hour. You're not going to stop it. But that might be a solution that, you know, we could talk about in regards to possibly plowing, like, with a sand fighter to cause it from not, you know, dusting up and getting people's ACs and stuff like that. So, that's just a suggestion.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm next on the board. And, yeah, dust mitigation has been a significant part of my life for the past three or four weeks. I've learned an awful lot about it, and you're right. The policies just lack teeth for enforcement, seems to be the concern. And so, yeah, I would support a motion to instruct staff to, you know, like you said in all the previous items, they're the experts. So, I sort of turn it over to Nicole and Denise and say, hey, figure out what you want and what will help you. You know, they know what we're trying to achieve. So, whatever they decide, bring back to us for a suggestion anyway for sort of eliminating this issue, whether it's the amount of, you know. In West Braden, the issue we had was the amount of area that was cleared at one time. And then, we also all fell victim to weather conditions, extremely dry. If the wind had blown literally any other direction, we would have been in a different situation, but it blew right at the nearest homes. But again, what could we have done ahead of time, policies we've had in place ahead of time to prevent that? Because there will be times when the weather conditions are, you know, unfortunately perfect, and the wind blows the unfortunate direction. So, it does happen. So, yeah, I would support that. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I would support this also. You and I had to deal with the Oklahoma, Manatee County Dust Bowl for a while. It was, I mean, it blew so hard across Cortez, you couldn't even see across Cortez. So, I would agree that we need to have some type of policy, some type of moving forward where if they're going to clearcut or however they're going to do that, that they have, some type of dust mitigation, be it watering, haying, spraying, the...
Sprinklers, right.
Sprinklers are great. That's a great idea, too. So, I would be 100% behind this in moving forward, some type of policy that would make this a little clearer on what we're supposed, how they're supposed to move forward.
Sure. And an enforcement aspect as well, because we felt there was language out at the West Side there. We felt there was language that said that they had to dust to mitigate, but we didn't really have an enforcement tool. That was part of the problem.
A lot of trucks cost five bucks, so they were like, nah, I'd rather have my five bucks.
Right. And then, they were red-tagged, I believe, twice.
Yes.
But unfortunately, when you red-tag them, they just sit there and stare at dust. Nothing's getting fixed. Right. So, Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'm glad we're bringing this up and addressing the issue. I just want to say before, you know, just one concern that I have is unintended consequences. So, I just hate for us to make, you know, a super restrictive policy that ends up hurting the overall goal in the end. I'm not saying that we are going to do that, but I'd rather say that now before they look at it. And I'm reminded of Charlie H., Charlie Hunziger, talking about, you know, how restrictive the policies are on gopher tortoises. But overall, because of that, it seems like it actually hurts the goal of saving the gopher tortoise because there's a whole lot of financial incentive for them to not be found later on. So, anyway, I'd hate for something like that to happen, but...
Well, I think as long as Nicole and Denise come and brief us individually before anything is brought to prime time, get our feedback, then we'll have an opportunity to prevent that.
Great point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cruz, we're entertaining motions.
Yeah. Well, someone already made my motion for me and seconded my motion for me.
Oh, they did?
It's okay. I don't care. I'd rather get it passed than fight over who has a motion. I don't care. Yeah, I just, just to circle back on this, I'm just thankful everyone's on board with this. I think Nicole, we spoke about it. They'll come back with some good options, and we can get briefed, and hopefully we come up with some reasonable solutions that, again, aren't overreaching, but at the same time are helping, because there are a lot of neighbors complaining. And as much as private property rights is important on your property, it's equally important on their property. And we need to come up with a common good here that's not onerous, but has some real teeth to it. So, thank you.
Sure. All right. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ballard. It's been seconded by Commissioner Turner. We'll open the item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board regarding the motion on the floor, which is to authorize Development Services to reach options regarding the negative effects of clearcutting? Ma'am, please state your first and last name, your county of residence. You have three minutes.
Sure. Andrea Griffin, Manatee County activist. So, this is something that I'd like to see. This is, these are some of the things that I've got chips on my shoulder about. I have to be honest with you. It's things like this. It's affecting my mom. Like, I'm getting calls from my mother. I mean, we've got to do something about this, and it's happening more and more. But I also like, my messaging really needs to be, I just would like some of our developers to be courteous of their neighbors. I'd like to start seeing some of that, then thinking of the people that are around them when they're building these communities, and being more courteous to their neighbors. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And to be honest, I had similar conversations with that developer.
And how did you say to do this before? I'm Carol Phelps. I am running as a candidate. Is that what you wanted me to do this time?
I think it's appropriate, yes.
Okay. But we're going to talk about trees here. This is great, guys. I'm glad that we've brought it up, and I have great confidence that our Development Services Department will address it, because I think what we saw this year is with the amount of rainfall we've had, it's exacerbating the problem. But what we see out there, and of course, we're out east where a lot of the development is coming, I think is kind of interesting because it kind of came to a forefront because of Lake Flores, and that you're experiencing something in town that we've been dealing with out east for a while now. The problem with, there's two things, is the problem with clearcutting and with controlled burns. And the definition of a controlled burn is four hours of boredom followed by two hours of sheer terror. It's things that you have to do sometimes to get things done, but we kind of tend to overkill or lose control of it. The things that it saved us this year with a lot of the construction out east is because of the lack of rainfall. But one thing that, how this has been brought to everyone's attention is because it started affecting people further in town as well. But there's a lot of things that happen when these developments are going on out there that you don't see that we see while it's going on. The clearcutting happens. There's places where they're clearcutting and putting the debris out into the roadways where it's blocking our roadways out there. And we're thinking, well, you're giving away free firewood. The problem is that once we do something wrong, it's kind of hard to undo it. We can't, we can't go, well, we're going to try this, and we're going to clearcut, but then if we get a big rainstorm or something like that, it changes the whole direction. You're going to be dealing in mud. This year, we didn't have that. This year, we had the dust. There were water trucks out there on 64 and near Bornside. The water trucks were out there. They just weren't doing anything. And that's a problem. And we need to have maybe something that Development Services can help us with. We'd like to be able to monitor them. You guys can't come out there and monitor every development that's out there, and by the time it's clearcut or by the time it's burned off, we'd like to kind of have a hotline to where we can call and say, hey, why are all these trees being thrown out into the middle of the roadway and blocking our driveways? And it's because behind the scenes, there's a lot of things that are going on. There's sometimes it happens that it is easier to beg for forgiveness than ask for permission. And we see these things going on out there, and we need to kind of have a hotline to help you guys. You guys can't be everywhere. Code enforcement can't be anywhere. When something happens out there, we'd like to be able to help you help us keep those things in check. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And interesting, she brings up a hotline after our meeting yesterday. Mr. Bishop, would you like to discuss 311 and the 311 app that you're working on, which is quite literally that?
Yeah. Well, the app is already out there, 311. We're enhancing that app. We'd like to roll it out again March 11th of next year to celebrate 311. We're really putting our eggs in that basket to communicate with the citizens of Manatee County, let them, let us know what's going on. So, thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Okay. Anyone else for public comment? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. There's no commissioner on the board for discussion. The motion to approve is by Ballard. The second is by Commissioner Turner. We can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. All right. That's item number 89. Item number 90, I'll introduce. Update on Impact Fee Timeline. Commissioner Cruz, this is your item.
Yeah. This one needs Nicole or Director Knapp. I mean, this is more of a dialogue thing. It's more of an update. I'm just trying to figure this out. Again, I brought this up last time when I put this on the agenda in July, and I think I may have put it on the agenda in September, or at least informally mentioned it. We voted on April 18th to finalize the impact study. Whatever people want to vote. I mean, you can vote to literally do nothing, but you have to do something to do nothing. Otherwise, you're just kicking it down the road and trying to determine the outcome without actually voting on it. And I don't think that's the intent of the statutes and the rules that say every five years we're supposed to update this. It's been eight. So, April 18th, we voted to move this forward and finalize it. It was on the hearing list to come to us in August, and then it got moved to September, then it got moved to October, then it got moved to November, and then it literally disappeared, like, flat off. It didn't even get moved to December. They didn't even pretend it was getting moved to January. Just flat out disappeared off the hearing list, as if we'll never hear hearing. But we voted on it. That's the board's discretion to vote on something, and the board voted to bring this forward before the end of the year. That was a vote, a policy decision of this board. If you want to change policy decision, you need to vote to change policy. We can't just game the system by just not listening to us. What's next? I mean, what happens if staff chooses not to listen to a different policy? What if tomorrow, we go out on Lorraine and there's a roundabout getting built? Someone's going to complain about that. Why? Because we made a decision, and staff's ignoring it. And I'm not saying staff is, by any stretch. That's not where I'm going with this. What I'm saying is, we made a decision, and it should be honored. And this kept getting kicked and kicked and kicked down the road. And when we first made this decision, wetlands didn't even exist on the hearing list. Then, all of a sudden, it found a way to be on the list three times. Once on Planning Commission, twice on us. So, it wasn't for lack of time. It wasn't for lack of staff time. It wasn't for lack of availability on our hearing list. That found time. So, I'm trying to figure out the timeline. Why has this been delayed? When do we anticipate hearing it with this existing study, which is getting closer and closer to dangerously going stale, which requires a new study? I'm looking at the calendar. It has to go to Planning Commission first, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So, the next Planning Commission, unfortunately, is until December 14th. Our next land use meeting is December 12th, or December 7th, which is before that. So, that means even if we put it on the next Planning Commission, the earliest we could hear it is January 18th in the new year for something that we voted on this past April. So, what's the timeline here? Because after this December Planning Commission, the next one isn't until mid-January, before Planning Commission comes, before it comes to us. So, where's our timeline here? So, we can let the public know, because we opened up public comment and gave the public 30 days to look at this report and respond. And the public is supposed to be inclusive of everybody, regardless of your job. We opened that link. We closed that link. We took that link off the internet, so you can't even go on to it anymore. We've got the comments. We have the study. We've done the public comment. We've done the task forces. We prepared the presentation. There's literally nothing to do but vote on this at this point. But somehow, we haven't found time to do it. So, what's our anticipated timeline within the context of this study that we voted to use to finalize this?
And Mr. Bishop wants to speak, but I just want to add to your timeline that it was actually completed under Corrie, who never brought it forward. Hopes never brought it forward. Washington never brought it forward either. I'm actually agreeing with you on this that now we're into...
Yes and no. Sherry did technically bring it forward in '21, but then the state during that legislative session passed House Bill 335, which changed the rules so that the consultant actually grabbed it back and said, we have to fix this. Scott never brought it forward.
Okay. Yeah. But I get your point. All these administrators...
It's been delayed. The point is, it's an eight-year-old study based on 10-year-old data that we're still relying on. And all I'm asking is, we have it done. There's nothing left. You could bring it to us this afternoon if we didn't need Planning Commission. So, what's our anticipated timeline? So, we could tell the public, because I'm getting asked this a lot. Every town hall, people ask, when are we doing something with impact fees?
Yeah. Commissioner Cruz, I appreciate the opportunity. And you hired me in September, and I've been trying to get a better understanding of this impact fee study. You hit the nail on the head. It's a 10-year study with eight years' timeline. Again, you hired me to do the heavy lifting. Four administrators could have brought this forward. You just admitted it's stale. It's outdated. We performed...
I did not admit, I just want to clarify. I did not admit it's stale and outdated. It is a report dated this April. It's current. The old report is stale. Our current report that we're trying to vote on is current.
Yes, sir. And the data was collected July 19th through August of 2020. It was brought to the board in December of 2020. We completed the study. We have hired some tremendous staff, Courtney, DePaul, Nicole Knapp, Evan. We've got the personnel in place now to make these tough decisions, to bring an accurate study to you. I will tell you, this is the most important document I can bring to the board. It's going to be our fiscal responsibility for the next five years. It's how you fund the roads, the parks, more importantly, public safety. I would like my fingerprints to be on this document, working with this great staff. My commitment to you, sir, and the board, is to expedite a new study, to work with Jake, to work with this new staff, to get it on the street and bring you a more accurate study. We have been out there talking to the developers. It is slowing down. It may not show right now in our permits, but it's slowing down. We're hearing that. And this information is just not accurate. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the admin...
You can't make a motion.
I would like to recommend a motion that you authorize me to begin the process of a new study.
But we have, what? We have an existing study.
In my opinion...
This is, no. This is ridiculous. This is ridiculous. We have an active study. If anything, inflation has got, the study's based on data. We have, the study is dated April of this current year. You may say it's based on 2020 data, but it's not. They've updated the data. It was a current, recent study based on current, recent data, when it was presented to us April 18th, and it was dated April 7th. And they said it was a current study, and that they stood behind that study. This is not dated material whatsoever. And we're fortunate that the current Director of Development Services, which could have been picked out of somebody in Wichita or someplace who doesn't even know what an impact fee is, happened to conveniently be literally the impact fee coordinator. So, we couldn't have come up with a better person to continue moving this forward in its current format. We have a current study that the consultants are standing behind, with the impact fee coordinator also heading up Development Services. We've got an entire board who's been briefed on this and had discussions on this, and even the new person on the board is coming from Planning Commission. Even that's convenient. This is the most convenient opportunity to finalize this in a timely manner and a cost-effective manner, so we could put this behind us for the next five years. Starting a new study, paying for the cost of the new study, and way, way, way more importantly, because no one ever wants to admit this, our fees are so insanely low relative to what the study is. It's not the $250,000 of a new study. It's the all of the months that we're going to be still charging the old fees and not the new fees upon a vote that we're losing out on while we're... the new fees upon a vote that we're losing out on while we just bonded $170 million of current taxpayers' general fund to build infrastructure for the growth with their tax dollars, say, because we don't have the impact fees to do it. Otherwise, we wouldn't have needed to bond this in the first place. I do not disagree with running a new study. Well, we have an active current study, and all it takes is a vote. We've already done everything but vote on it. Why, why would we start this over again?
Well, sir, thank you again for the opportunity. I've been working with Courtney and Nicole on this issue for the last several months. Courtney, would you like to step up?
I was just going to say, back when the first, when this consultant was hired, it was before, I think, any of the commissioners that are currently on the board were on the board. It is also a difference in perhaps methodology of one consultant versus another consultant. And so, you know, as staff, we're going to do as directed. And if, and if the thought is that we want to go out for a resolicitation because you don't agree with the methodology, then that's a valid, that's a valid standpoint. So, I mean, we serve at the will of the board and we're willing to look at different things, but it, it may come down to a basis of methodology change. And I understand also Mr. Bishop's stance that he's a new county administrator. We've gone through several different administrators at this point, starting with one who believed in the methodology of Benash, and I don't know if that's where the board stands now. So...
I know one person in town who doesn't like that methodology.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board. The order of the board is Van Ostenbridge, Ballard, and Ron. I've talked to the administrator in the past, like, week, well, I guess it was last week, about this multiple times, and I'm hearing the same thing from Mrs. Knapp, Mrs. DePaul, and Mr. Bishop, which is essentially, they, they laid out to me like 10 different things that are, they cite are sort of holes in the, in the current document. And we can probably defend, maybe it's nine, maybe it's 11, but the point is, we can defend, like, these five over here. We think we can, you know, go to court, defend these. We think we have something to stand on over here. But these five over here, these are a real problem. These are a real issue. You know, they're not very confident in that. They don't agree with the methodology. They don't, they don't like the way it's written. And I see where Mr. Bishop is coming from. Like I said before, how many administrators wouldn't bring this forward to the board? Was it because they loved the study? Was it because they thought it were, that left us on, in great sound footing? Or was it because they didn't think it's left us on solid ground and it put us in a good place? You know, now you have an administrator who's a permanent administrator and understands the importance of the document and wants to be sure that what he puts in front of us is his work, and not just his work, but we have a new Development Services Department Head. It's under Mrs. DePaul as well. Both of them have come on since the study was commissioned. Both of them have issues with the study, as does Mr. Bishop. And, you know, we've set up here just today how many times that we rely on staff, we rely on their expertise, and when they're telling me they're not confident in this study, they don't agree with the methodology of the study, which they're trying to politely, they're trying to politely say, but behind closed doors, I get a more direct, you know, opinion, then I want to support them. And I want to support Carlos at the port when he's making decisions based on how he's going to run his port, and I want to support my staff now when they come to me and say they don't agree with this, they're not comfortable with putting this in front of the board for a vote, and they're not comfortable, comfortable with implementing it either. So, my inclination is going to be to, to support the administrator and to support staff. Commissioner Ballard.
So, I, I have a question, and this is either going to be for Mrs. DePaul or Mrs. Knapp. So, the, the data that we're relying on in, in this study, the most current, when is that from?
The study that's pending?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. The data would have been collected in, from mid-2019 till mid-2020, when this report was finished in the fall of 2020.
And do you, do you think that market conditions are significantly different than they were at the time that the data was collected for this study that we have right now?
I don't know the definition of whether they meet significant, but they're definitely, they're definitely different.
Okay. And so, are, so what are you seeing that's different now in the world of Development Services versus in, you know, mid to late 2020 when the data was, when you were, they were finishing up collecting the data?
Well, right, we were in the middle of, or starting a boom of construction, and now we're starting to see the beginnings of the plateau, and/or Sarasota's already seen the dip, the decline.
So, so we're seeing a plateau. When did that start recently?
In the last six to eight months.
And so, here it's plateau, Sarasota, we're, they're actually seeing a decline. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Can I ask you a quick question, Mrs. DePaul? Just a quick, in a chairman's privilege. Is there room to raise impact fees in the current study? Are we imposing them 100%?
So, that may be more of a legal question, but right now, we're collecting 90% of the recommended amount.
So, if nothing else, we can at least walk out of here today raising fees?
Could you collect 100% of the impact fee? Yes. We, it was approved at 90%, and that was prior to our time. But I wanted to also just mention to Commissioner Ballard's point, we've heard a lot from the development community, from the realtor community, that obviously, there's a decline. I think anyone that looks at the market right now and they see the open houses and things like that know that there's a decline. Many, we passed a lot of policy, the board passed a lot of policies last year having to do with building, like, I think we call them spec homes, right? Is what we called them. Track homes is what people call them as well. So, builders got a lot of permits to build a lot of homes, and, and you're still seeing those being built because they had them permitted.
Sure, it's a 12-month process.
Right. So, we typically see the slowdown before any other department in the, in the county. However, that is going to be seen after the development community and the realtors have already felt the impact. So, we're starting to get that kind of word now, and so, we're kind of, we're proceeding cautiously because we know what could come.
And since in 2019, what is the cost of infrastructure that this county is building? What has happened to those costs? Are they pretty much the same as 2019? Roads, bridges?
I mean, no, but...
That's another, that's another condition of the market that I think needs to be taken into consideration.
The market has been very volatile. I, I wouldn't even see the market necessarily gone up or down. It's just been incredibly volatile, anyone in the stock market.
According to the needs of Mr. Buzo's department, it looks like prices are up.
Yeah, and, and...
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Ron Cruz, Beard and Turner. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Nicole. Nicole and I have had, over the years, many discussions on impact fees. And if you've read through this study, I've been working on impact fees for well over 20 years. There is some flawed in methodology within this study, the current one we have. I was reading it before I even got on the board and when I was on the Planning Commission. So, I understand where this study is. There are some flaws in it. There are some methodology problems with it that I think are significant enough to where we should consider possibly getting a new study done based on more current data. This data was done in 19, and it was based on data before that. So, I do like the idea of the chair's question to Mr. Paul about can we raise the current level of impact fees to 100% to offset and move forward? So, I don't know what that takes, county attorney.
What's the process? Does it take commission, planning commission, all that?
It's an advertised public hearing and an amendment to the Land Development Code, like, like whether you brought a full study forward or just a 10% increase.
I mean, I mean, I would have no problems in making a motion to do that, to raise, if we're going to have a problem with this study and this, and it sounds like staff does, and have to go out and get another completed study done based on more current data, I'd have no problem in making a motion to instruct staff to, or instruct the county attorney to bring back to the board, well, I don't know, ordinance change or whatever, to increase the current impact fees that we have to 100%.
Is that a motion, sir?
Yeah, I'd make that a motion.
Second.
And the motion should be to staff and the county attorney's office. We'll have to...
The county, the county attorney's office.
Yeah, to both of us.
But I mean, I, I think we have to do something.
Yeah.
And, you know, coming from the building industry, I think we have to do something to help offset, you know, and take it from 90 to 100%. And I'd have no problem with that.
So, Madam Clerk, we have a motion by Commissioner Ron to instruct staff and the administration and the county attorney's office to begin the process to increase impact fees to 100%. The second was by Van Ostenbridge. Speaking order is everyone, starting with Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I'll start with, with that motion. Before anything comes back, we need to, and I believe it was Nicole, or maybe it was Courtney, I forgot who I spoke about with this. We, we need to look into HB 337. This is something I, a motion I wanted to make a while ago and didn't until I got better clarification because HB 337 specifically said that, because the state wants to preempt everything we do, that a county and municipality cannot raise impact fees more than once every four years. So, I guess the question to the county attorney, who has to be 100% correct in his answer when he does the research, is, are we increasing, is the existing impact fee the same and we're just taking 100% of the same number? Or is increasing from 90% to 100% going to be deemed by the state, and more importantly, by the developers who are going to sue us, that it, that was an increase in impact fees? So, enjoy your $1,000 a house, suckers, because you're not allowed to increase it again for the next four years, no matter how many better studies you do. So, we need to make sure that HB 337, that restricts our ability to increase impact fees more than once, is fully researched before we increase some nominal little 10%. That's about the motion.
Sir, we will certainly look at that when it comes back.
Yeah, because I think, once we have a new study, I, I don't think that's going to apply once you adopt a new study.
Not according to 337. It says you can't increase impact fees more than once every four years.
It does also give for extenuating circumstances where if you use a study and have additional workshops and hearings, you can adopt above 50% over...
But that's with a supermajority, so good luck.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, going to my actual stuff. One, I mean, just some of the comments, I was still on the board. Some of the comments about how many administrators didn't bring this back? One. One administrator didn't bring this study. Sherry brought it, and then we polled it. Lee brought it, because that was April 18th, Lee was still here, and that's it. Scott's the only one who didn't bring it. And going by anything of saying, well, Scott was the, the correct person is a stretch. I mean, everyone, everyone else brought it. And to say staff's not comfortable, that, that's, I mean, honestly, I'm concerned about that, if that's true. I mean, it got brought to us in April by the same staff, same people, and they seemed comfortable then, didn't have a problem. Otherwise, it wouldn't have been brought in front of us, or we would have had briefings. And then we voted to start bringing it back to us and finish it in August. It's now dragged for months and months and months. Not once has, has anyone on staff approached me and said, hey, we need to have a briefing and explain why we're no longer comfortable with this report. We're just going to keep pretending we're going to kick it down the road. We're not even going to tell you we're uncomfortable. We're not even going to tell you we're not going to do anything with it. We're just going to keep dragging this, even though I'm the one who put it on the, the agenda in July, and I brought it up in September. Now, I'm bringing it up again now. It's like, were we truly uncomfortable with this? Because my question is, are we uncomfortable with this based upon our uncomfort? Or are we uncomfortable with based upon the fact that I know for a fact that at least one developer's come up and basically threatened to sue us if we move forward with this and made us uncomfortable by pointing out their holes in the study? So, now we go, you know what? Those are holes that we should probably be uncomfortable with, too. Guess what? They're going to find holes in every study we do that requires them to pay one single more dollar. That's what they do for a living. Like, you're never going to find a study. What they're going to do is, we're going to end up having an impact fee done by Dan DeLisi, and it's going to say the impact fee should be cut 50%. Like, that's what's going to happen here. We have a real study by a real company that we were seemingly comfortable with in 2020, seemingly comfortable with in 2023. I just opened up that study while we're sitting here, and that study specifically says, yes, the data was originally from 2020, but it specifically says that the variables for the study were updated. Like, in the study dated April of this year. So, it's implying it's updated. They're standing behind it, saying it's valid. Nobody's ever told me they were uncomfortable with it until just now, only because I brought it up. How many more months were you going to go waiting for impact fees? We're, we're, all along, people were uncomfortable behind the scenes. Like, we need to move this forward. Like, yes, I'm very happy we're going, potentially going from 90 to 100 as long as we can. But someone mentioned, oh, 2019, 2020. That's why it's old. It's before inflation. Let's, let's think about this sentence. Inflation made things much more expensive. Do I look around this dais and am I concerned that the people on this board are worried that the fees are going to be too low? No. Know what's going to happen if you go to today's rates instead of pre-inflation rates? It's going to be even worse. And people are already complaining, it was like 200%, 250% increases. We're going, we're, the, the study reflected, we were only collecting 40 cents on the dollar from what we were collecting versus what the current cost of growth is. 40 cents on the dollar. It's 250% increase in fees on this study. Now, you're concerned this study was pre-inflation, and that means these numbers will be even higher? Do you really think you're going to charge even more than 250% increase? Based on state, we can't increase more than 50%. So, no matter what those numbers come out, that 10,000, call it, for a house can only go to 15. It can't go to the 25, the study says. So, what difference does it make if it was before inflation? Those numbers are fake numbers anyway because we're never charging it. We can't buy state unless we go through extra hearings and have a supermajority as board agree to jack these from 10,000 to 25 or to 30 post-inflation. That, that, that doesn't make sense. It seems like we're coming up with excuses to delay this because we know if we vote to start a new study, that study's going to take nine months, which is going to run us until June or July, right as we conveniently go into recess. We're going to come out, it may be best case, go to Planning Commission in August. Guess what? After August, primaries are over. Yay, we all win. So, that's what's happening here. This is getting delayed, and it's ridiculous. Nobody had a problem with this study until people decided to have a problem with it. I, I'm upset that people didn't come to me to say they had a problem with it, if it's true, that that's the real reason. We have a valid study. We know we can't go more than 50%. We know that 50% is not going to be affected by any future study number. We need to move these things meaningfully. We do not have money to fix the infrastructure we need to fix, and every single month we sit on this current study is costing us, and more importantly, the taxpayers, a ton of money. I don't mean a little bit of money. I mean millions upon millions of dollars by charging the 40 cents on the dollar instead I mean millions upon millions of dollars by charging the 40 cents on the dollar instead of the full amount. And if we're gonna start having permits going less and less and people are pulling back, we need to be capturing this money now because these are the houses that are being built now, that are pulling permits before we change the study, that are gonna be impacting our infrastructure that we can't fix.
Commissioner Cruz, I don't know how many times you've sat up here and you've said that no one told you this or no one told you that or you didn't know this was coming or that was coming. And then I talk to staff and they say, well, he didn't attend his briefing. He canceled his briefing. We briefed every other commissioner, but Commissioner Cruz canceled his briefing. He's never in the building. And, and then, you know, the perception that you put out of yourself as a commissioner on this dais is not reality, sir. You're never in this building. Let me finish, sir. I'll let you finish. We, we sit here for 20 minutes and let you talk. It's my turn to talk.
It still says seven minutes and you've been talking.
You can respond when I'm finished, sir. So you sit up here and you blubiate on this dais, putting out this persona of yourself that is not accurate, that is not true at all. You go and you do town halls and you blubiate there, but outside of blubiating, you really don't do anything as a commissioner. Instead of you're Mr. Anti-Development, but the truth is, we all know you're hanging out at Carlos Beruf's house drinking wine. It's in all your police reports. Everybody knows who your friends are and who you hang out with all the time, man. You, you're not the guy that you're put out there that you are. And all I'm asking is just be honest and be true about who you are. That, that's what I'm asking you to do. You don't attend briefings. You don't, you're not respectful to staff. You're not in this building. And then you wonder why they don't communicate with you. Go ahead, sir.
Okay. First off, I, I know, I know these are all anti-talking points because Ray literally told people, I don't attend my briefings at his lunch. And unless you guys are all sitting around having lunch down at Old Bricks with, with John Mast and, you know, I know, I get you. I apologize. I apologize. That was, that wasn't supposed to be. I, I don't even know how to respond. It's silly. First off, I talk to Nicole on a regular basis about these things. That's why I brought it forward and I talked to her about clear cutting before bringing it forward. The silliness of the briefings, as Charlie is well aware, if you wanted to talk to somebody other than Anthony to get your facts straight. I go to all my land use briefings, all of my CIP briefings, all my utility briefings, all my Peace River briefings, all my port briefings. The one I don't do is the regular briefings. And that's because Scott hopes changed it so that all 12 directors and all the deputy directors all had to be in a room. And I told him that was $2 million worth of salaries, taking up seven plus hours of their life briefing people on consent items that don't make sense. I read all of my briefings. So when there are items I need briefings on, I reach out. Like, I reached out to Tammy Parrott before this about the library ones. And I reached out to Charlie about some. I reached out to Chad about the roundabout. And I reached out to Nicole about the clear cutting. Because it saves everybody time and money and makes sure my staff can focus on where they need to be focused, instead of sitting around humoring me by rattling off 90 talking points on a briefing rather than actually reading it and doing my job. So that's the answer to that. And as for not coming in this building, it's because I go out to everybody else to have all my meetings. I go to the fire districts. I go out to El Conquistador to look at an intersection. I went out to Lakewood Ranch to meet at the intersection for the roundabout. I think these offices are a complete waste of time and I try to get Scott Hopes to get rid of our offices when the hurricane hit because we're wasting taxpayer money and space in this building, having offices just so we can put up pictures of ourselves in front of ribbon cuttings on the ninth floor and then lock it out from everybody in the public.
If you attended your briefings, you would have been prepared for this meeting, sir.
Well, have I not been prepared?
You just told us you weren't, that you didn't know anything when you got here. No one told me this, no one told me that. That's preparation.
You can start campaigning against me when you switch seats and file the running against me.
No interest in running against you. I'm simply, I'm simply pointing out the obvious. Commissioner Turner, you're next on the board, sir.
I absolutely don't want to join in with this, this kind of rhetoric. I think it's boring to the, to the public and everything, but I will say this one thing, Commissioner Cruz, there was an ambush plan based on your accusations of corruption and I was put in that bucket. And so I just questioned some of the things that you'd said in that meeting because in my debriefs, that was not the case from staff information. So I'm, that's all I'm gonna do on this. But you gotta know, I've been putting in the bucket of this accusations of corruption. And there was a coup and a planned attack at lunch and where they're supposed to just get to know me. And so if you heard something, it was from there. And look at the tapes. Anyways, because a lot of the stuff was based on you, what you were saying. Let's say this, though, in, in favor of what you're saying, though, five years versus eight years, it has been too long and to the point, the impact fees are, like, we do need to do something about impact fees. The methodology, the concerns about methodology, when I was on the planning commission, I caught wind of that back then, so I'm not sure how that didn't come to your attention, but I, I don't care about the semantics. So I'm actually in favor of if the methodology, if our staff is, is concerned about that and we do need to increase fees, I think what's on the table, at least do that with confirming the fact, are we tied to not being able to do it for another four years? Is there a way around that piece? I think this is a, is a good solution all the way around. We need the tax revenue. We should have the tax revenue. We're overdue for it. But let's not kick the can down the road, waiting for a whole new study. Is there something we can do in the meantime? Protect ourselves from being able to do it in the future, like we're saying. I think it's actually a, a win-win all the way around.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board. I'm gonna agree with, with what Commissioner Turner said. I'm gonna continue to support the administrator in this action and I, I'm thankful to Commissioner Ron for making the motion to move forward with 100% impact fees. And I'll leave it at that. Commissioner Satcher, you're next on the board, sir.
I'll defer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Ron, you're next on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's, there's no, I've never hidden the fact I am not a fan of impact fees. I think it's an aggressive tax. I think it's a taxation without people being here, without representation. I think impact fees are, what happens when we stop all development or we develop out, there's no revenue anymore. There should be a general revenue that everyone participates in. Because what happens to the, the elderly folks that have sold their three bedroom, two bath house, they never paid impact fee? And a family of five moves in there, three people drive and they've never paid, they're not paying any impact on what we're doing to the existing infrastructure we have in this county. So, I mean, and Pat Neal, Carlos Beruf, MI Homes, Taylor Morrison, you guys have never written a check for, a check for impact fees. It's written by the people that are buying the homes. So, I mean, I, I'm just trying to come up with a resolution here because it sounds like we were going and try to bring something forward that we all could possibly live with to while we try to fix, fix what the, the studies that we have now. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
So I, I like the idea of, of raising impact fees to 100% now in, in the interim. I do want to get some information about, about this HB 337, make sure that we're, that we're not hamstringing ourselves in, in the future.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Clegg.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Ballard, in response to that concern, anytime impact fees come forward, there's a lot of legal due diligence that goes on behind the scenes and we will do that with respect to that issue and some other statutory issues. The legislature has dealt us a pretty complicated hand in, in bringing any impact fee decision forward. And I, you know, this is, these are difficult fiscal policy decisions for elected officials and I respect, I work for all seven of you. I respect all of your views. But I do need to say, Mr. Bishop has just taken over in the last few months as county administrator. And these are decisions that, you know, he has to have his fingerprints on them whether he wants to or not because they deal with our regulatory approach and our fiscal approach to running the county. So I, I can understand, having been through a lot of these decisions over the years, why he wants to have the opportunity to have some input on this. He really hasn't up to now. I've been here through the whole history of it. I understand people have frustrations about it. But we can't go back and fix how things went over the last three years. We have basically a new board now and a new administrator now. So, you know, I, I just wanna, you know, weigh in in favor of understanding why he feels like he needs to have that opportunity. And that's all I will say, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm next on the board and I just wanted to speak in reference to Commissioner Ron's comment about essentially a, a tax on home sales, almost like some adding to like the doc stamp tax as, as a Realtor and a member of the Association of Realtors. We adamantly oppose that. It increases the cost. Thank you, Commissioner Turner, for agreeing. Increases the cost of home buying and takes, you know, just increases, it takes away from the affordability of people to own a home in this, in this county. Commissioner Bearden.
No, I was just gonna echo Commissioner Turner and Ballard. I echo those comments. I, you know, I'm, I'm all for raising it up to 100% and then allowing County Administrator Bishop to do his due diligence and bring something back to us.
All right. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since we're echoing, I wanted to echo Mr. Clegg's thought. I do think it's important that, you know, looking forward, we have that, that signature from our, our new administrator. And, you know, this entire board has, he's done a great job and we've all worked together with him effectively. I, I remember, you know, Commissioner Cruz put him out there to be the acting administrator first. And so, and I remember at that time, it surprised me. I think it surprised some others. I didn't expect it. But here we are. And so I, I do think it's important that, that we make good use of the people that we're trusting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't disagree with you and Commissioner Turner, both being Realtors on the board up here. And I am a, and I'm a mortgage lender, so I'm the one that has to get to fit, shoehorn your people into those houses. But I, I would say that the point that I was trying to make is that everyone should participate in the, you know, what we're having to do for infrastructure across the county, not just new growth, but current growth, the current folks that are already here. And there is a bill, there are two bills being run right now in the House and in the Senate to increase doc stamps. We're at 70 cents per hundred on a mortgage or on a deed that hasn't been changed in 50 years. If we take the thing to 10 cents or 15 cents, take it up to 85 cents, even a dollar, it's not gonna hurt home sales that much, but it will help us in a lot of things that we can do with the folks that are living here today. Because we know on new construction, unless it's a takeout, they're only paying on the lot, doc stamps on the lot, unless they're buying the exit, the house as a brand new house or as a track home or whatever, then they pay the full doc stamps on the total transaction. So I just wanted to let you guys, you know, I'm, I'm not discounting what you're saying, but, you know, we gotta come up with a better plan. Because doc stamps at some point, we will build out in the future and docs, I mean, and, and, I'm sorry, impact fees will stop at some point in the future. I mean, because we can't build all the way out past Caroline Phelps's property. I mean, that'd take forever. So, I mean, but it will at some point come to an end and it's gonna be an aggressive tax, you know, so.
Yeah, if I, if I could comment on that.
Commissioner Turner.
Yeah. You know, I, I think people maybe don't understand the doc stamps thing too. So, you know, you've got both sides of it. The buyer will pay on any mortgage, first mortgage, second mortgage, those rates. So when we have over 60% of cash buyers coming in, they're basically paying no transfer tax, $0 on a cash transaction. The seller pays the 70 basis points. So, you know, there, there's definitely room for improvement there.
Thank you, sir. All right. We have a motion to approve by Ron, seconded by Van Austin Bridge. No one's on the board for discussion. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on a motion to direct development services staff and the county attorney to begin the process to increase impact fee collection to 100%? Ma'am.
Andrea Griffin, Manatee County activist. Obviously, I am going to agree with this. It shouldn't have come to this at all. Attacking George is not fixing the issue. You know, I watched this, this dais, you know, tear Vanessa apart. I'm watching them tear George apart and it's a clear, it's a clear issue. I'm gonna talk.
Motion on the floor.
I'm gonna talk. This looks like, this whole motion looks like you guys were slow walking this and you guys are trying to slow walk this until after the elections. That's point blank. So I hope you guys get it right because I will be moving, if you guys don't vote for this before the elections, I'm gonna take it as if you guys voted against it at elections.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to address the board regarding raising impact fees to 100%?
Well, that was fun. Carol Phelps-Mayaca. Interesting, Mr. Ron, what you brought up about impact fees coming to an end, we can't bailed out. But despite all the spiciness going on out there, I'm really proud of you guys. Because, Mr. Bishop, I understand that you'd like to start this all over again, but we've been kicking this can down the road.